All right, good evening, everyone. We'd like to call the this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. The purpose of this meeting, this meeting of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711 dot 2 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22nd, 2020 through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the state current, excuse me, during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as it is statutorily required or necessary to conduct operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. A motion is in order for the approval of the closed session agenda. Anyone? Ms. Wall.
Sorry, I move that we approve the closed session agenda.
Second, anyone? Ms. Zaragport, second. All right, I'm going to call for the people at home. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Diana?
She's not doing it.
I couldn't see. Okay.
So your vote is five yes. This is a new one. Five yes, motion passed.
Five yes, motion passed. All right, thank you. Six, motion passed. Thank you, Ms. Simpson. Moving on, we'll have the motion to enter closed session. Go ahead and read the motion, it's a little long. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with staff the performance, appointment, transfer, release, assignment, and promotion of specific officers, employees, or appointees under Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A1. Two, to discuss the performance and goals of the superintendent under Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A1 and to dispense with his attendance under VA Code 22 dot 1 dash 69. Three, to consult with Division Council and staff regarding specific personnel and student legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice and actual or probable litigation under VA Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A1, 2, 7, and 8. Four, to receive advice from Division Council regarding specific matters requiring the provisions of legal advice, including the legal authority of the school board, any legal issues impacting possible pilot program for the reopening of schools, and the use of cameras in the classroom under VA Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A8 and 5, to receive information from staff and discuss health and safety matters involving the privacy of a specific student not related to public business under VA Code 2 dot 2 dash 3711A2 and 4. Second is in order. Ms. Zaragport, seconds. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Six yes, motion passed. All right, motion passed. With that, the school board will now convene for closed session. We should be back in approximately one hour.
Prince William County School Board will now enter closed, or I'm sorry, will reconvene in open session, we're now returning to open session from closed session. Closed session certification is in order. A motion, Ms. Jessie, or Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2 dot 2 dash 3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of November 4, 2020 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from opening meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do you have a second? Ms. Wall, seconds. Any discussion? As seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote? Ms. Jessie votes yes. Oh, Ms. Jackson, how do you vote? I guess I have to do that again, Ms. Jackson. Sorry.
Yeah, it, yes.
Ms. Jackson also votes yes.
So the vote is seven yes, when absent Ralston, motion passed.
Okay, moving on to the closed session action, closed session action item. We have one, 8.01. A motion's in order, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees as presented in closed session.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Zaragport, seconds. The motion, any discussion? As seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, when absent Ralston, motion passed.
Okay, moving to the public meeting. I would like to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. This meeting of the Prince William County School Board is being conducted electronically under Virginia Code 2 point 2, 3708 point 2 and the authority granted by the General Assembly on April 22nd, 2020 through Amendment 28 to House Bill 29, which permits the school board to meet electronically during the pendency of the current state of emergency for the purpose of transacting such business as is statutory required or necessary to continue operations of the Prince William County Public Schools and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. We'll be doing the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is over here. Ms. Manavar, our student, please, student representative from Woodbridge High School, senior, will be leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, wonderful. Next, we will go to the approval of the public meeting agenda. A motion's in order. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Zaragport, seconds. The motion, any discussion? Okay, as seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
The vote is...
Ms. Jackson votes yes.
Vote is seven yes, when absent Ralston, motion passed.
Next, we'll move to the adoption of the consent agenda. Motion's in order, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Wall, seconds. Any discussion? As seeing no discussion, please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, when absent Ralston, motion passed.
Next, we'll move to the citizen comment time. Due to COVID-19 state of emergency and legal restrictions on the school board's authority to conduct its meetings through electronic means unlike other public bodies meeting electronically under more expansive legal authority, all discussion at this meeting by the board members, staff, and citizens must be limited to agenda items. Citizens may speak on an agenda item for two minutes. When the board is able to resume regular meetings without the virtual participation permitted during the state of emergency, expanded citizen comment time will be resumed as provided by Policy 134. In the interim, citizen comment time has been reinstated on a limited basis in order to allow public comment both in person through electronic means during the state of emergency. Those citizens who have signed up in advance with the school board clerk via email no later than 4:00 PM Wednesday, November 4, 2020, may address the school board in person or virtually on agenda items. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium and/or speaking virtually. If you do not do so, you will be asked to step aside. Please state your name and address for the record. There are three speakers here in person, and then we will move to the eight people signed up virtually. The first person will be Ms. Oveda Scott.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Superintendent Walts, my name is Oveda Scott and my address is on file. First, I was disappointed in the tone of last week's school board meeting. For two months, school board members who were out publicly speaking kept stating they will wait for Dr. Walts' recommendation and will support what is presented for returning to learn. When Dr. Walts presented what he felt was the best option based on the current conditions, it was not aggressive for some of you. So you would rather have an aggressive approach instead of a staggered one that focused on safety for students and staff during a pandemic. I find that interesting. Second, I was numb at how some board members were trying to connect student suicide to virtual learning. Teachers are not the failure of virtual learning. Before the pandemic, teachers have been dealing with emotional issues of students, whether it ranged from school or home life. We carry home tears as we refer to guidance these students who have expressed suicidal thoughts. As leaders of our community, it's you that should support virtual learning and promote the good aspects instead of adding to the challenges of making it work. Lastly, I want to say that teachers were given three weeks to learn Canvas, the numerous applications that interface with it, and create lessons that will provide quality instruction. There has been many trials, but PWCS teachers worked from dawn to dusk giving it our all. I support teachers who've entered the building to educate our vulnerable and younger population, but it is disheartening to hear of those teachers who ADA requests are approved but are placed in a position by their principals to choose safety for themselves and family or the job that they love. I will repeat myself again, Mr. Chairman. COVID-19 is not going away. In fact, our numbers have risen, and to be aggressive will mean an increased rate of infection for this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Ms. Taliba Hassan?
May I take my mask?
Sure.
I'm a good 10 feet from now. My name is Taliba Hassan. My address is on file. My zip is 22193. So Honorable Chair of the Board, Dr. Latif, Honorable School Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Walts, good evening and peace to you. As I said, I'm Taliba Hassan and I'm Vice President of the Muslim Association of Virginia. We have two mosques, one in the county on Holy Road, Darrell Noor, and one in Woodbridge, Darrell Salam. I've lived here since 1980. My children attended elementary, middle, high school here in Prince William County. They both graduated from Garfield High School. I took my children out of school for our Muslim holidays called Eid. My children always had to play catch-up with their classes. Conveniently, the major Christian holidays occur during winter break and spring break. These students do not have to play catch-up with their classwork. The diversity of Prince William County has grown tremendously in the 40 years my family has lived here. It's time for the county to add to the school calendar the Muslim Eid as well as the Jewish holidays and the Hindu holiday. Let us reduce the stress on these students, and I know that the rest of the students will be definitely happy to have four more days of holidays. I leave it to your wisdom on how this can be done. Please recognize the Muslims, Jews, and Hindu students. They matter too. Thank you.
Thank you. Rhona Call.
I have to take my mask off and compete with your speed, Dr. Latif. My name is Rhona Call and my address is on file. I'm back again. It's been 236 days since my children were able to experience the choice of an in-person learning. Let me start by thanking those of you who take the time to respond to my emails. I also want to thank the teachers and administrators who are working tirelessly to close out their first virtually exclusive grading period. We appreciate you and your creativity, resourcefulness, and dedication. Last meeting, my son and I, along with several others, came to ask you to accelerate a return to in-person learning. I talked to you about a perspective that emphasizes the how we do it rather than the why not. I reminded you that a return to in-person learning is not a zero-sum game or mutually exclusive, but rather a key component of a modern, omnichannel learning portfolio. We're living in an era of data, big data, and its relevancy along with the need to qualify the abundance of data we're immersed in. I dare say the next four years of our great republic hang in a pendulum swing of data qualification. I heard some fantastic data validation dialogue last meeting, and I thank those of you who took the time for that consideration. I would like to add two more caveats to the mix. We heard Dr. Walts first cite the DOE and CDC data as the primary driver of the reversal of his commitment to bring our students back to a choice of in-person learning, and last meeting it became one of several metrics when pressed remained the foundational variable. But on a less red page, whoopsie, let me get to my, on a less red page of the DOE guidance is the following caveat. "Indicators serve as the starting point to make determinations on what to do in a school but should not dictate the decisions that school districts make to best serve their individual communities." And from the CDC data, if after applying the core indicators described in the table below, a school is at a medium, higher, or highest risk of transmission, it does not mean that the school cannot reopen for in-person learning, but that the risk of introduction and subsequent transmission of SARS-CoV-2 is higher and the school can consider alternative learning models. So nowhere does this data anchor us in a virtual-only model. It relies on strong leadership to interpret and execute wisely along with the data. So my ask of you is please consider accelerating a return to in-person learning, given the fact that it can be a choice for other students and greenlight a pilot at Colgan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Call. Mr. Stevens, we'll move to the virtual citizen comments. I have Laura Hazelton up first, and then I'll let you take it from there, sir.
Thank you. Your microphone is on, Ms. Hazelton?
Yes, it is. All right, we can start. So, good evening and thank you, oh, good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak. The clerk has my address on file. I would like to speak about the proposed calendar options for the 2021-2022 square. When the two options were proposed, I was genuinely ecstatic. As a PWCS employee and before that a PWCS student, it was the first time I felt seen as a minority of religion. As a student, I was never eligible for perfect attendance awards because my holidays were not deemed, quote, "major holidays," and therefore I had to miss three days of school every year. As a PWCS educator, every year I have to use all three of my personal days for my Jewish High Holy Days. While I appreciate the county allowing me to take my personal time for that, it does not seem equitable when I'm forced to take Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and many times Easter Monday off. It's frustrating that the county takes an either-or approach in recognizing minority celebrations. When going through the core modules and the required cultural sensitivity trainings, I feel defeated because PWCS is not always culturally sensitive to all of its minority populations. The 2010 Religious Census, conducted concurrently with the last U.S. Census by the Association of Religious Data Archives, found that 17,480 PWC, Prince William County residents identified as Muslim and 211 identified as Reform Jews. As our population has increased in the last 10 years, I feel pretty confident in assuming these numbers have increased proportionately. This does not include staff members that live in other counties who identify as members of these religious groups. These members of your community deserve to be seen. They deserve to have their holidays recognized. This is an opportunity for PWCS to not take an either-or stance on equity. I sincerely hope you rise up to the opportunity. That's it, I'm done. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cheryl Zapian. You can unmute your microphone. Ms. Zapian, Zapian, Cheryl. You need to unmute the microphone on your side. Or hold down the spacebar. There you go.
All right. You good?
Yes.
All right. All right, so, good evening. My name is Cheryl Zapian. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. My address is on record. I would like to speak to the 2021-2022 school year calendar option B. What I am sharing is tangential to option B but is, in fact, at the heart of it. There are many ways to be a minority. Minority status can be applied to race, low SES, color, disability, sexual preference, and religion. All minorities find themselves marginalized at one time or another. Marginalization is not only painful but is costly, costly to the society which is impoverished by ignoring its members and costly to individuals. In a county that has an entire curriculum devoted to culturally responsive instruction, it is pitiful that we are unable to take the concepts inherent in CRI and move them from ideals into action. Is this the example we want to set for our children? As a result of our school calendar, I must use all of my personal days yearly so that I may fulfill my religious convictions. There are other teachers who have these same struggles, struggles our colleagues of the Christian faith never have to face. We live in a diverse county, much more diverse than when the original school calendars were created. It is important that we respond to this diversity in a positive way. This does not have to be a zero-sum game either. Consider giving a day or two of paid religious leave. Consider removing some of the excess snow days built into our current calendar. Consider, as a last resort, allowing people to use sick leave. They should not have to, but it should be considered. I hope as leaders that you will contemplate leave options which allow teachers and students of minority faiths to follow their convictions without being penalized for doing so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Rabbi Liz Goldstein. You can unmute. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Shalom. So in short, I just want to express that Congregation Neir Shalom, oh, also Liz Goldstein, my address is on file. Congregation Neir Shalom is in, is in support of the proposed calendar changes that would close the public schools for the major holidays of some of our minority religious communities. But that said, I want to take this time to ensure that even if the schools are not closed on Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, speaking only for, for our community, I hope that this conversation has not been in vain. We at Congregation Neir Shalom are aware that Jews are a very small, though growing, minority in the, of the student population in the county and could understand why schools may not close for our holidays. However, we cannot understand why it is a struggle every year to have the schools acknowledge our right for religious observance. For the five years that I have been the rabbi in the county, I have had students and parents come to me every year with complaints that teachers have scheduled unit final exams, presentation assignments, class bonding after-school activities on our holy days, forcing Jewish students to choose between their religion and their education. I have heard complaints from parents who have had to argue with administrators to ensure their child's absence was excused to come to synagogue on those days. One year, our Yom Kippur evening services, the most solemn night of the year, was punctuated by the disrespectful loudspeaker commentary of a football game that had to be held at Hilton High School right across the street from our synagogue. As much as we would love the equality and recognition to have our holy days simply off, and we wholeheartedly support the right of our Hindu, Sikh, and Muslim siblings to have their holidays off without reservation, what the Jewish community is most hopeful for regardless of the outcome of this calendar proposal is that there is greater awareness that this proposal has brought to our holy days will mean we will rest assured that school staff will be mindful of our holy days in the future. Thank you. Whew.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Hifsa Khan. You can unmute yourself. Okay?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Thank you, yes. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening, respected board members. My name is Hifsa and my address is on file. I am so thankful that you are taking the time out today to consider the inclusion of new holidays to the school calendar. I would like Prince William County School Board members to strongly consider approving these holidays tonight. Prince William County has a growing diverse community. The holidays you will be voting over tonight are of significant religious and cultural importance for thousands of families. These holidays are a time for peace, spirituality, and togetherness. It is important for our children to have the day off from school in order to celebrate with their families. Although religious holidays are excused absences in Prince William County schools, students are often apprehensive about being absent, either due to a fear of decline in their performance or for missing a crucial instruction time or missing SOL practice or other extracurricular activities. The unfortunate reality is that the majority of students are not observing the holidays when they fall on school days. This can be detrimental to their sense of identity and self-confidence. Students and families should not have to choose between attending school and celebrating their important day. These two things shouldn't have to compete. Approval of these holidays tonight will send a message of inclusion to young children whose worldviews and identities are just beginning to form. School closures on these holidays will send a message to these children that, yes, you matter, and it's much more than just a day off. It's a chance for all these students to feel included, validated, and seen by leadership. And we have found many examples of school districts that have made this change in recent years. This is our, this is our opportunity to leave an enduring legacy and make history right here in Prince William County. Thank you for your time and commitment to nurturing a welcoming and inclusive environment that all our children deserve. Thank you and good night.
Our next speaker is Safana Ahmed. You're calling in with the phone. You might have to hit something special on your phone. There you go.
Okay, got it. Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. You have the floor. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Chairman Latif and honorable members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Safana Ahmed and my address is on file with the clerk. My husband, Dr. Nadeem Ahmed, and I have lived in Prince William County for over 40 years. After his residency in Pennsylvania, we moved back here to raise our three children. We have a daughter who graduated three years back at the top of her class on Patriot High School, a son, and a younger daughter, both at Patriot High currently. They're stellar students and actively involved in extracurricular activities. I am requesting your favorable consideration in hosing school each year on our religious holiday of Eid and hope the same is afforded to the Jewish and Hindu holidays too. We want our children to be happy on their most meaningful holiday of the year, and they should not have to choose between going to school or celebrating with family and friends and stressing out to make up the work. This holiday is of comparable importance in Islamic faith as Christmas is to Christianity. So imagine having to go to school on Christmas, even I can't imagine that. Our kids want to celebrate Eid and have fun together with extended family and feasting and exchanging gifts, visiting friends, and our houses of worship to pray. Having grown up in Manassas, I rarely missed school on Eid because I was always stressed out about making up the work, so I must admit I did not get to enjoy my childhood holidays, nor did my husband. We don't want our children or any other children to experience this, and I am sure you can understand our wish to serve the spirit of our holiday freely. We are active members of the growing community in Prince William County, and we would be very grateful for this acknowledgement. On a regular basis, we volunteer our time in support of the Haymarket food pantry we serve, at interfaith events, and other community service. We want to participate in allowing the children the time off on our holiday. To do such activities such as this would be wonderful. And by allowing observance of these holidays, Prince William County would embrace and recognize religious diversity and inclusion as other school systems have done. Our kids would feel like they're a part of the community. And so on behalf of family and others too, thank you so much for allowing me to share my thoughts, and I hope you consider our request for the near future. Stay safe and well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is James Martin. You have the floor. You can unmute your microphone. There you go.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is James Martin, and my information is on file with the clerk. I'm the father of two former Prince William County School students who are now homeschooled and one Prince William County student who continues to struggle with limitations of virtual learning. I come to you tonight to ask you to accelerate the return to virtual learning. They would be speaking to you as well, but they are all participating in extracurricular activities to include soccer, gymnastics, and church activities which have returned with appropriate precautions. By now, I assume all schoolroom members, Dr. Walts, and school leadership have sat in on virtual learning sessions and are aware of its limitations and challenges. The teachers are doing the best they can with the limitations placed on them by Dr. Walts and the school board. Many teachers want to go back to in-person instruction but are being misrepresented by their unions. The school metrics provided by Virginia Department of Health provide an inaccurate interpretation of the data that fails to account for increases in testing that produce an increase in COVID cases that do not accurately portray the situation. Positivity, deaths, and hospitalizations have not seen a statistically significant increase in the recent past. Just between today and last week, there was a 20% increase in case... Just between today and last week, there was a 20% increase in cases. I think we can all agree that there has not been a 20% increase in the severity of the COVID crisis in the past week. Prince William County schools should make a more progressive while still cautious return to in-person instruction than is suggested by the VDH guidelines. There is a significant amount of literature that supports the return to in-person instruction and identifies the risk of failing to do so. These include the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC. Finally, when school returns to the hybrid model, I encourage use of in-person and asynchronous learning because synchronous learning is taxing on teachers and confusing for students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Andy McCarthy. You can unmute yourself.
Okay.
You have the floor.
Hi, my name is Andy McCarthy, and my address is on file with the clerk. I've been teaching in Prince William County for 17 years, and this, of course, is the most singular and unique experience that I've had, along with all the other teachers that have been working their tails off and the administrators that have been digging in the trenches, trying to figure out and how this whole thing works. And I commend them. My two boys are in elementary school right now. Actually, I'm sorry, I have one that just went up to middle school, and they've been having a tremendous experience, and they're learning things I've never seen from students who oftentimes, you know, they may be technologically adept with their phones, but a lot of them don't even know how to attach an email. And there's a lot of great things that have come out of this. As a parent and a teacher, we're seeing benefits in the technology gap, the use of effective use of technology, and a lot of our disadvantaged students getting advantages of the technologies and the uses of those. Now, one of the problems I am seeing is going back to the site-based management. While site-based management is beneficial, it can personalize a unique culture and freedom for the principals and the culture of the school, it just leaves some students behind. And we see this not only in the facilities or the numbers of bathrooms or the numbers of computers. We're going to see this in preparation for this pandemic. We are passing the buck here and giving a lot of principals site-based management decisions based on a pandemic. Now, I understand what Mr. Martin was saying, that, you know, it's taxing and confusing for these students, but you know what? I think giving it another quarter at the height of the pandemic might be a fantastic idea, especially when we're looking at our diverse and disadvantaged students in the area codes of 22191 and 22193. Those students are going to come back in droves, and they have some of the highest percentage of the contagion, and according to CDC, are the most vulnerable. So rather than making these site-based decisions of how to deal with the pandemic, central office-
All right, for cutting you off, two minutes was up with some extra time as well. That was our last speaker, Dr. Latif.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Thank you to our IT folks for always putting together a good citizen comment period and the work you're doing as you come in here and continue to help us out with everything. Really appreciate it. Moving on, next to the annual school calendar, 1401, I have this on is Keith Emon, Deputy Superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Latif, Vice Chairman Williams, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. At our last meeting, the board received a presentation on the recommended calendar options. At that time, the board requested to see a third option, which has been provided. It is now in the board's hands for action and a vote this evening. Thank you very much.
Quick question, Mr. Emon. The third option is giving the four holidays and to extend the year, correct? And a two-week Christmas break. That's what that is, option C.
That is correct, Dr. Latif.
Make sure I don't make a mistake on that. Option C is that one, correct, everybody?
Yes, that is correct.
Ms. Argarpur, do you have a motion? Yes, ma'am. So turn the mic on.
Yeah, no, no, I got it.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I'm on the right page. So I move that we accept option C for our calendar option.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
A second.
Okay. Ms. Jackson beat you to it, Ms. Williams, but that's okay. All right, no, no problem. So the motion has been seconded. This is Ms. Argarpur is asking that we approve option C. There is a discussion now on the table. Anybody would like to say anything? I'll start with whoever's hands are up first. Ms. Argarpur.
I think it is important that we recognize that our county is growing and changing. The people who commented this evening, especially teachers, making the point that they have to take a personal day in order to be able to practice or take these religious days off is really significant, and it would benefit thousands of children who practice slightly different religions. And we made the calendar, we asked that the calendar accommodate those but also give the two weeks for the winter break, and I think that's a great compromise. It doesn't extend the school year very long, and I'm appreciative that this was seconded and that we are considering this for our children.
Anybody else? Okay. Okay, Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm excited by this option. I think it speaks to the heart of one of our citizens who just mentioned in our previous citizen comment time. We do, it just goes to show that we're a school division that is practicing what we preach, so I think this is a great calendar option.
Okay, great. Any other comments? Oh, Ms. Jackson.
I think option C offers a compromise between those who express the need for a longer break while being mindful of inclusive practices, so I remain in support and continue to promote inclusive practices. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, I ditto all those comments. I want to thank Dr. Casada for working on option C. Thank you so much in putting those in. Oh, and then we have Ms. Jessie.
I also want to say ditto. I really appreciate your coming up with an option C because we're looking at just respecting the holidays of various cultures in our school system and also the wish to have the holiday period, so thank you very much.
Excellent. I don't see any other hands, so I'll wrap up my comments. Again, Dr. Casada, thank you so much for putting option C up. I think it addresses the concerns in the surveys as well as the holidays that folks asked. I look at Mr. Emon and I say, Mr. Emon, this is historic. And I look at you with, I'm very excited about this, so hopefully this vote goes the way we'd like it to go. So I would ask the school board members to please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes.
So the vote is seven yes, one absent. Ralston, motion passed.
Motion passes unanimously. I'd like to congratulate Dr. Walts, Mr. Emon, and Dr. Casada. Thank you for the work. Thank the committee for all their work as they put this through, the survey folks, and all of the work that you've all done, and thank you all. We'll move on to the next item. Again, wonderful. We are up to 1402. Dr. Casada and Dr. Emon. Keith.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. Good evening again, Chairman Latif, Vice Chairman Williams, the members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. Tonight, we're pleased to share with you our annual report on the progress toward strategic plan goals. The report is focused on the 2019-2020 school year. As a result, the report will look a little different than in past years due to the school closure in March. Data will be presented for those measures on which data were available for the shortened 2019-2020 school year. At the end of the report, Dr. Casada will provide some introductory information about the new strategic plan to remind board members of the concept that was shared at last January's board training session. A great deal of stakeholder input has been captured in the development of the new plan. Board members will each be provided with the opportunity to give input and guidance into this new plan slated to go into effect for the 2021-2022 school year. The plan will then be presented to the board for approval later in the spring. It is now my privilege to turn the presentation over to our Director of Accountability, Dr. Jennifer Casada. I do ask two things of you first. Please remember that this is a report on the data and not on the steps being taken instructionally to address opportunities for improvement. And second, it will be greatly appreciated if the board holds any questions until the end of the presentation, as they may be addressed as part of the presentation itself. Thank you, and now, Dr. Casada.
Good evening, Dr. Latif, schoolroom members, and Dr. Walts. As Mr. Emon said, the purpose tonight is to present on our annual progress toward our strategic plan and to provide a little bit of a sneak peek for you for the future. Next slide, please. Okay, as Mr. Emon said, tonight, this report's going to look a little different and sound a little different than in previous years as a result of our current circumstances. First, we're going to go back in time and look at some 2019-2020 school year and some related performance indicators. As a reminder, when the governor closed schools for the remainder of the year back in March, it had an impact on how schools assessed progress in many areas. Virginia Department of Education waived accreditation for the 2020-2021 school year since standards of learning tests were not administered in the spring of 2020. In addition, the wellness tests used by Virginia Department of Education that are part of our strategic plan were not completed in the spring. After we look back, we will look forward into the concept of our new strategic plan and our next steps on that front. Next slide, please. Thank you. As a result of the school closure mentioned on the last slide, the accreditation, standards of learning, and wellness measures are not included in tonight's presentation since there are no updates. The previous report, as well as the Equity Score Card that I presented to the board back in March, are both available on the accountability webpage. For the remaining measures, we will discuss tonight. We're going to use the same key we used last year to highlight some areas of success and opportunities for growth. Next slide, please. Thank you. The first thing I'm presenting is the percent of graduates earning qualifying scores on one or more advanced exams. You're going to note that that percentage decreased slightly. It's important to note that on several slides tonight, you're going to see text that's in red. That's to highlight things that were impacted in terms of decreased participation as a result of the closure. So it's important to note that the number of exams taken decreased significantly in response to closures nationwide and worldwide. This measure does capture those graduates who had earned at least one qualifying score at any point before they graduated, which included for many of them, tests taken in earlier years. Just for context, the International Baccalaureate Organization canceled May exams. Advanced placement exams were modified, and many students opted not to take them. The College Board reported a 7% decrease nationwide in the number of tests taken. This impact last spring is going to have an impact on our graduates in 2021 and potentially beyond, as many of them were impacted by those advanced courses earlier in their high school career. Next slide, please. The next two slides are going to show you some college readiness or SAT and ACT performance. You can see this first slide is SAT. Again, fewer students in Prince William County took the SAT last year. There were some canceled test administrations nationwide, as I know you are aware. You can see that the performance decreased slightly. Prince William County's scores continue to exceed national averages and are slightly below Virginia averages. I will highlight that the scores for the black students in Prince William County continue to exceed state and national averages. I also want to note that this school year, as you're aware, but for the public, Prince William County provided an SAT school day opportunity for students that allowed some of our seniors who'd had to miss the SAT in the spring and summer to have the opportunity to take it during the school day. Next slide, please. This is a companion slide. This is for the ACT test, so we have students who took that as well. We did have a slight decrease in the participation of students for the same reasons. Performance on the ACT in Prince William County stayed level from the year before. Next slide, please. So our strategic plan is always included in attendance measure. We actually have two. This is the first one. We continue to meet the 95% attendance target in 2019-20. It is important to note that attendance was only captured and reported through March 13th, when the governor closed schools. Next slide, please. The next few slides are going to talk about the Prince William County on-time graduation rate. I know you've heard about this. This continues to increase each year. Recall that this is a cohort-based metric, meaning it captures the percent of students who graduate within four years of beginning ninth grade, with allowances for extra time for students with disabilities and English learners. This metric was adopted by the National Governors Association, I'm sorry, for use beginning in 2008. Next slide, please. Speaking of 2008, this slide shows the trend of the on-time graduation rate increases since that starting point. To put the growth in context, in 2008, Prince William County had an 83% on-time graduation rate. In 2020, we had a 93% graduation rate. If the class of 2020 had graduated at the 2008 rate, it would have meant 701 fewer graduates in 2020, and that growth outpaces the growth of the population. Next slide, please. Last slide on graduation. It shows how Prince William County graduation rates compare to the state and surrounding jurisdictions. For all groups of students, we exceed state averages. The differences are meaningful due to large numbers, both in Prince William County and in the state. Also, it's important to note, just for fun, that the on-time graduation rate matched Fairfax County and has matched or exceeded Fairfax County for four years in a row. The slide also shows some return on investment information. You can see in the last column the cost per pupil and how ours compares to surrounding jurisdictions, and as you're aware, ours is lower than many of the jurisdictions, and we have sometimes higher graduation rates. Next slide, please. The current strategic plan has a focus on providing students with opportunities to excel. Prince William County continues to expand dual enrollment opportunities for students. This slide shows you two ways that we look at it. First, in terms of actual dual enrollment classes, 21% of our graduates in 2020 received dual enrollment credit, up from 16% in 2018 and 20% in 2019. In addition, another way to look at it is to see the percent of students, I'm sorry, percent of graduates who earn either dual enrollment credit or receive a qualifying score that would earn credit. Those scores are taken from what Northern Virginia Community College accepts as a way to place out of particular classes. So 40% of our graduates achieved this in 2020, which was down slightly from the year before for some of the reasons perhaps that I mentioned earlier when we talked about the advanced exams. Next slide, please. The Virginia Department of Education is in the process of building a college and career readiness indicator into the accreditation system. It is slated to begin being included in 2022-2023 school year for our 2022 graduates, but it's not there yet. In the meantime, Prince William County has used college readiness benchmarks identified and defined by the Virginia Community College system. In 2016-17, they were redefined to incorporate changes made to the SAT and PSAT. The percentage of students meeting those benchmarks in Prince William County increased slightly in 2019-20 after having decreased, I'm sorry, decreased slightly, sorry, in 2019-20 after having increased the previous year. Some of the same context, again, is necessary because many of these benchmark measures are based on those advanced exams that fewer students took last spring. Next slide, please. This slide shows us the percent of graduates who received advanced diplomas for the past three years. Overall, 49% of graduates in Prince William County schools received advanced diplomas in 2019-20, down slightly from the year before. There is a good amount of variation in the proportions of different student groups receiving advanced diplomas, which is shown in the chart on the right side of the slide. Next slide, please. The next two slides are going to talk about the participation of traditionally underrepresented students in gifted and advanced programs. This slide shows two charts, elementary on the left and middle school on the right. Overall, and this is in gifted, overall, 20% of students in elementary school participating gifted and 19% of students in middle school. So this slide then shows you the breakdowns for different groups of students, our disadvantaged students, minority students, students with disabilities, and our English learners. And you can see how the bars change. Recall that all students in Prince William County schools are screened for gifted identification first using the Negliary Nonverbal Aptitude Test, that's a mouthful, in second grade, and then the cognitive ability test in third grade. Prince William County has expanded the screening to assess all sixth grade and ninth grade students using the Negliary Test. That full screening just started last year in 1920 as part of the division's efforts to identify more students. So this screening would have identified students for participation beginning this year. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This slide shows for high school, not just gifted, which is on the left, and, but also advanced program participation on the right. As a reminder, since this is the first time you're seeing our little yellow boxes this year, those yellow boxes highlight gaps between groups of students, so this is looking at things a little bit different. So if you're looking to see what the gaps are between disadvantaged students and non-disadvantaged students, for example, you'd be looking at the yellow boxes. To make it easier for you, the Reader's Digest version is that the gaps in gifted identification at the high school level for our disadvantaged versus non-disadvantaged students, our English learners compared to native speakers, students with disabilities compared to not, minority, non-minority, stayed pretty level with some modest improvements. And you can see on the right side, it's advanced program participation, the same thing. That means students taking any of our advanced courses. And you can see that the gaps across the groups are remaining steady. And those, again, the performance of those gets examined much more closely in our Equity Score Card, and the data for that, that will be updated and posted and shared once those analyses are complete. Next slide, please. This slide shows us the percent of each student group that has been identified for special education services. Overall, 11% of students in Prince William County Public Schools were identified as students with disabilities in 2019-20. That's what our little circle chart shows on the left. And then on the right, you can see the breakdown for different student groups. This varies slightly by student group when you're looking at ranging from 6% of our Asian students to 14% of our black students. National averages, according to the National Center for Education Statistics, show that approximately 14% of stations, students nationwide are identified for special education. In terms of the breakdowns, nationally, 14% of white students are identified for special education, 16% of black students, 13% of Hispanic students, and 7% of Asian students. So our numbers are, you know, just slightly lower than the national averages across the board. Next slide, please. This slide is similar, but it's focusing on, on discipline. And so this looks at discipline referrals by student group. Again, on the left, you're seeing overall performance, our overall. And again, 11% of students received one or more discipline referrals in 2019-20, which was continuing a slight downward trend we've seen for the past two years. You can see that downward trend in the chart to the right that breaks it down by student group. It continues to decrease, and you can see that there is definitely still some variability with the highest rates for black students and students with disabilities. It is important to note that the percentages of black students, students with disabilities, English learners, and Hispanic students receiving referrals all decreased each year over the past three. Next slide, please. I mentioned earlier that we had two measures related to attendance. The second one is chronic absenteeism. The Virginia Department of Education defines chronic absenteeism as a student missing 10 or 10% or more of the school days. And this is a measure that's part of the accreditation system, and even though accreditation was waived, we do have this data to share with you. So I said it's 10% or more of the school days. What's important to note is that typically, that's about 18 absences if our school year is 180 days. However, in 2019-20, there were only 120 days of membership due to the closure. As a result, it only required 12 absences to reach the 10% threshold. So overall, Prince William County had 13% of students who were chronically absent, up from 10% the year before, which had, which was down from the two years before that. So variation does exist across levels. Our high schools had been working diligently to reduce these percentages before the closure. It's also important to note that this chronic absenteeism includes both unexcused and excused absences, so any number or combination of those that get you to that 10% threshold. Next slide, please. This slide shows us some satisfaction survey results. They were conducted in January and February before the closure, or 2020, before the closure. Parent satisfaction rates stayed level at 93% from the year before. As a reminder from last year, when we presented during the year before, 2018-19, students and school staff participated in surveys required by the Virginia Department of Education rather than our local surveys. As a result, when you look at the trends, that's why there's a gap in the middle for each of those groups. All groups that we surveyed had a satisfaction rate at 90% or higher, except for middle and high school students, whose satisfaction was 86%. This year, feedback is being collected in a variety of ways throughout the course of the year, including surveys. Next slide, please. In order for our students to be successful, it's critical to have highly qualified teachers, meaning teachers who are trained and endorse in the content they're teaching. This graphic shows that the percent of students taught by teachers who were highly qualified in all of their classes was at 97% as it was the year before. It is important to note that it does still remain challenging to fill some of our positions. Next slide, please. This slide looks at National Board Certified Teachers and the number, and the number of those in Prince William County, and it's remained stable over the past three years with modest increases. And this count show includes all of, all teachers in Prince William County who have that certification. Our renewal candidates in Prince William County have, are extremely successful in renewing their certification, and this has become more complex in recent years, taking up to three years to complete. Next slide, please. Good news here, the teacher turnover rate in Prince William County continued to slightly decrease with this flip side, meaning the teacher retention increases slightly. So you see the stacked bars kind of show it to you both ways, depending on how you want to look, retention going up, turnover going down. They remain below 10%, which are lower than national averages, which tend to range between 12 to 16%, depending on how they're calculated. I was able to find the most recent annual report to the governor for Virginia Public Schools, and they reported a 10 and a half percent turnover rate for teachers last year at the state level. Next slide, please. The final data slide tonight shows just some data related to organizational alignment, particularly Strategic Objective 5.2, which deals with the equitable use of funds. We're concurrently meeting the goals and objectives in this area for this year. There's a 2.8% replacement value. We continue to budget, utilize budgeted funds for the ongoing reductions in class sizes, and funding ratios are reviewed yearly in preparation for each year's budget. As you know, we'll be moving into the next budget season very soon, and the internal auditor continues to conduct audits on a regular basis. Next slide, please. As I mentioned at the outset, the data reporting looks a little different this year since we didn't have all of the measures. It does, of course, mean a little shorter presentation for you. We can see from what we do have, as well as reflections on the past and understandings of our current present, that there are causes for celebration, as well as definitely the opportunity to reflect and grow. Another next step in terms of the data is to update the Equity Score Card that we shared with the board and the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity back in March. All of the data that were shared plus more are available on the Equity Score Card webpage, which can be accessed through the Office of Accountability page and through the Advisory Council on Equities page. The updates will be provided to the council, the board, and the public through that webpage. The remaining few slides of this presentation will focus on moving forward with the new strategic plan. We spent a lot of time during the last school year before the closure soliciting input from many stakeholders, including through a public comment site. Next slide. Now we get some pictures. For the current plan, Prince William County had articulated a 2020 vision for graduates because the plan was slated to end in 2020. The new plan instead uses a lighthouse as a metaphor. The strategic plan has been talked about as a guiding light for the school division. When you think of a lighthouse, you picture the tower and the light shining out in all directions. However, the light would not be nearly as powerful if, if it were coming from ground level. It's critical that the lighthouse be built tall to include the necessary foundation for the light to reach far and wide. As a result, in order for that light to shine and for student success to result, there are critical pieces needed. Board members might remember this graphic from your board training in December of last year. Input from many stakeholders led to the key pillars that are needed to support student success. The foundation is the organizational supports in place for schools and school staff. Next, it's critical for families in the community to be actively engaged in the learning process. And net, next, student success can only occur in an atmosphere with a positive climate and culture. And finally, the focus must be on learning and achievement for all. Next slide, please. So how do we bring this lighthouse to life? The input we gathered through focus groups in the public comment site allowed us to learn about the most important aspects people felt belonged to the new plan. Research showed us that we wanted to have the stakeholders identify and define some core values for Prince William County schools. These values will be infused, and these are defined and labeled and shown on the right of the slide. These values will be infused throughout the plan. The goal is for the plan to connect, guide and connect the work of the school division using the pillars of the lighthouse and these values as reference points. Next slide, please. One exciting way that this is already happening is in the development and implementation of individual schools' continuous improvement plans. Dr. Sheila Huckstein, our Supervisor of Strategic Planning and School Improvement, along with the support of administrative coaches for continuous improvement, has trained and worked with teams from every single school around the division on the continuous improvement process and the specifics of developing continuous improvement plans with that label and use on purpose. Plans are reviewed and school leaders are provided feedback before they submit their plans to the level associate superintendents. The work of Dr. Huckstein and the collaborative work with professional learning and others has allowed for a shift in which the school plan truly is part of the ongoing continuous improvement process and aligned with the focus and direction captured in the values and those pillars that we've just talked about. The process is also embedded in training for new administrators. Next slide, please. All of this work is laying the foundation for a new strategic plan. Dr. Huckstein and I have begun working with communications on the development, what will be a more interactive webpage that will help connect initiative, division initiatives and efforts to the identified Prince William County core values, the lighthouse pillars and specific goals and objectives. These connections will allow stakeholders to easily see how specific efforts, such as the new sustainability initiative and the work of the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity, connect to those established values. Specific indicators of success will be identified under each of the different pillars. As I discussed on the last slide, individual school continuous improvement plans are aligned with these new themes. Board members will be provided with the opportunity to provide individual input into the development of indicators of success for the new plan beginning in January. The plan will then be provided to the entire board for approval later in the spring. Next slide, please. And that's it. Thank you all so much for your time tonight.
This time, we'll take questions. Mr. Stevens, if I could see everyone at home on the screen, we'll start with questions here. If anybody has any, please let me know. Okay, I see Ms. Jesse's hand first, so I'll take Ms. Jesse.
Hi. Hi, Dr. Casada.
Hi, Mrs. Jesse.
You know, I always have lots of questions. My first question is, Dr. Iman said this is not the night to talk about what, how we plan to improve or looking, you know, there are, in our professional learning communities, we talked about before questions, which is our children learning, how do we know? What are we going to do about the ones that are not, and what are we going to do about the ones that already know? So my question is, if we're not going to talk about, all we're going to do is share, because I've been here a long time, and I've watched these plans shared, shared, shared. Is there, so, Mr. Iman, I guess, if tonight is not the night to share, what we're going to do about some of our areas of improvement or opportunities for improvement? When is the board going to get that type of report? Is that going to happen with the Equity Report Card, which was on Slide 24? When do we get to talk about these areas of growth that we need to? And what are the, what are your plans to, what are you going to do about the, there are several areas that I could cite on this report. What, when do we get that as a board? Will we ever, can we get that?
This is Jesse. Those are all good comments, and there are multiple ways we can address that. I might suggest that if board members have, at least as a starting point, that if you have questions related to instructional improvement opportunities or operational issues addressing those concerns, if you could provide those to me in writing, then I can work with staff on responses for you.
Well, I, I'm suggesting that you consider down the road or sometime where you look at the strategic plan and show the board what you've done to improve specific areas, because I've looked at this plan for so many years, and I haven't seen a report for the board, not specifically from individuals. I would just like to see that, and I'd like for you to consider it. I don't expect an answer tonight, whatever. But I want to get back to some questions. You know, and want you, Dr. Casada, you said that the tests, that the test scores were affected by the SAT, the COVID. When were, were SAT tests taken earlier? Or are you talking about SAT tests, tests taken after COVID?
So, Mrs. Jesse, the data that we reported was for graduating seniors SAT scores. So some of them took them earlier before the closure, but fewer students took the SAT. And one possible reason for that is they had opportunities taken away by the closure. That's one possible opportunity. It's also the fact that many colleges are moving toward test optional, so that's impacting things nationwide in terms of counts. So SAT, because students can take them at various points throughout the year, but one of those points was in March, and right as things close, March is always a big testing time. So there weren't dramatic decreases in the number of students taking the SAT and the ACT, but the numbers did go down slightly, so it was important.
Yeah.
Context, but that one's a, because it's a rolling, and that's going to have an impact on our students this year, which is one of the reasons that Prince William County offered the SAT School Day for our current seniors, to make sure that they, they weren't left behind before they were doing their college applications.
Ms. Jesse, what, what, Ms. Jesse, if I can just add on to your question here, just for clarification on Dr. Casada's answer. Dr. Casada, as I look at the SAT and ACT, it is the, you're only reporting the 12th graders, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So these numbers are 12th graders from last year. I mean, they would have all taken it by March. I mean, there's very few 12th graders taking them after March. I mean, they're already graduated.
Yes, many and most of them have taken it by that point, but some of them do slate to take them in March.
I mean, I mean, that, very few seniors would take it after March. I mean, that is almost, I mean, I, I don't even know what that number would be, almost insignificant. Why would a senior take it after March? I mean, there are, all college admissions have closed by that point. Why would a senior take it in March?
I can't speak to that other than I know that there, there are, traditionally, we've had some, not, you're correct, it's not large numbers, but we did have a decrease in the number of seniors taking the SAT from the previous year.
Yeah, so, so in my opinion, I mean, I, what I'd like you to look at is, I mean, that decrease would have happened in the fall or the year prior, if we're only looking at 12th graders. I don't see how the pandemic would have affected that. Now, moving this year, that's going to be a real problem, right?
You're correct. The impact will be greater on this year's, this year's students. We can certainly look to see when, when thing, when students took the SAT that were seniors last year, we can certainly look at that. I just was providing that as one piece of context.
Sure, sure. I mean, and I don't mean to interrupt you, Ms. Jesse, but we made this a priority last year in the fall. We talked about it. I know you guys had put a committee together to get more students to, whether, you know, to try to raise our scores. So it seems like we, we had less people take it last year, and I, I can't believe that the pandemic had any real impact on if this is only the 12th graders. If you're telling me this is all SAT students, of course, but this is only 12th graders.
That, that we compare to what the College Board releases, which is the report of graduating seniors. So we can certainly look into when, when they took and where the counts were and how they dropped. And then, again, moving forward, it'll be more impacted by the cancellations that occurred in the spring, summer, and early fall.
Right, thank you.
And Dr. Latif, I also wanted to say that, and again, I don't have the numbers, but I am, I do know for a fact that some seniors retake in March to get higher scores.
Well, I, I'm not sure you were talking about the retake, but if, Dr. Latif, do you mind if I move on to the next question?
Please, Ms. Jesse, my apologies. I just wanted clarification on that data.
No problem. Tests optional. What are we doing to promote this test optional situation that, I know that there's some universities that are piloting it, some are, is a temporary measure, others are permanent. And in the county, what are we doing to make sure students understand this? I've gotten some parent concerns that they're, they're, they're test optional, but that the transcript with the SAT is still with that application process, and that the only way that you're going to have that removed is a parent has to ask for it to remove. So if I'm going to go test optional, then I don't want my SAT score, but it's a part of what Prince William County School says. Is that correct?
Parents can opt out of SAT on the transcript.
But it's on the transcript. I think my, one of my consultants who works with this talked to UVA in various, and if you test optional, they don't necess, some school systems are not putting an SAT score on the transcript, but the kids are, just check into that, would you?
Yes, I can answer that. We're putting them on the transcript unless the parent opts out.
But the parents don't know that they can. I think we need to educate parents because the parents don't quite know that, and they have to ask. And if the students test optional, why would we put? And if the students test optional, why would we put their SAT score on the, in the information that we send it to the colleges? Because you just checked that?
Sure.
Okay. The, what, in, in the SAT, again, help me understand at the high school level, Algebra II seems to be a main factor in SAT performance. And although we say SATs are not important, many of the parents are telling us that when they look for scholarships or merit, that, that the standardized test scores are really an option, is required. So tell me about, I know Fairfax has a plan for Algebra II. What is our plan for Algebra II? How early are kids taking Algebra II in preparation for this type of test?
Ms. Garz, would you like to respond to that one? If not, we can get back to Ms. Jessie.
That's, that's fine. If you can't, that's fine. The other thing is that when, in the slide that you had, the college readiness and on-time graduation and a college readiness, you're using Virginia College, the community college system. And why are we not using the Virginia Department of Ed, which use, which uses the college boards SAT because the gaps? And I know, and I don't know if you can see this on my screen. I hope I can put it up. If you see this chart, this is a college board, and we look at our preparation to whether they're ready for college. And in the state of Virginia, Asians, 79% are ready, African American, only 22%, Hispanics. So are we, Mrs. Casada, can we get the same chart for Prince William County?
Yes, you can, Mrs. Jessie. And we have that information, and I can tell you that the numbers are pretty similar for Prince William and Virginia, slightly lower in many of them. Higher are the black student meeting the benchmarks, is 32% is one that's higher. But we can certainly provide that to you for that and for the ACT.
See, that, that's what I mean. What are we going to do about it? Because we, we present these charts every year. African American kids are, 32% are readiness, are ready for school based on this criteria, which is used by the Virginia Department of Education. But I don't see where we have a plan. We're, we're kind of, I'm not saying that we're a good, good school system, first of all, let me say that. But I think that in some instances, we're flatlining and I'm not seeing a change. And I'm wondering is because we present the data, but we never present a response to the data. Do you see what I'm saying? Here's the data, this is what we're going to do about it, and bring that back to the board. Last year, we were here, and this year, we're, we're there. Does that make sense? Did you understand what I'm trying to say here?
Sure. Let, let me just say, and, and again, we can, we could have specific examples of this, but basically, we disaggregate the data by school. And then the level associates work with individual schools on their, on their data and their school improvement plans. And then if they have specific issues that are reflected in that data, then that goes into the goals for that school's improvement plan and that principal's goals.
Okay. I, I know that. I know that each one of us had a plan at the building level. I'm just saying, as a board, it would be good for us to see, this is where we were, these are areas for growth. And I don't know if your task force is going to do that, the Equity Task Force. I know they do the Equity Report Card, but in that Equity Report Card, does that include, what are we going to do about our deficits? What are we going to do to improve? And here's some strategies, and this is what we're doing. So as a board, we know where we are as a school system. Okay, was that just a statement on my part?
I'm not sure. Did you, they might not.
I was unclear, but your point is made.
I think I'm saying the same thing over and over that I've said for seven years.
So, Ms. Jessie, I, I, I think I would agree with you, and I think maybe we should just put this on, let's, let's chat about this, about an agenda item for this. Now, part of our strategic plan will definitely be around this, but we hear you.
Okay, thank you. And the other item, I'm going to, I have a lot of questions, so I'm just going to move on to one other one. On-time graduation rates. I know that we talk about the on-time graduation rates, and the state of Virginia has a 92.3 graduation rate also. And that, help me understand how, when I look at, I think it's, I'm not sure what slide is, the slide, this on-time graduation slide. And I'm looking at all these groups, and I'm looking at the performance. When I look at the actual performance, S, when we look at SOL performance of a lot of these groups, English learners, student with disabilities. Explain to me, because I'm not a high school person, how we have a 94% graduation rate for, or an 89% in that graduation rate, or a 90% graduation rate for students with disability, when we have a gap where maybe 40 or 50% of those kids are actually passing SOL? How, how does that work?
Sure, Mrs. Jessie, that's, so the on-time graduation rate is based on the students meeting the state's requirements for graduation, which the SOL tests are part of that for certain classes. That's when they have what they call verified credit. But one of the things that is a focus is that students, in order to meet those graduation requirements, are given the opportunity to take those tests multiple times if necessary. So it kind of fits in with the concept of, you know, standards-based and focus on mastery. So students in any given cycle may not have the same pass rate as some, as students in some other groups, but students are given multiple opportunities to reach the finish line, as it were. And the SOL tests are one part of the graduation equation. Students have courses, all the courses and the various distribution, of course, requirements they have to meet. And there are also alternative ways for students, even with the verified credit requirements, and the state makes adjustments for that. And then last year, for example, there were changes because there were not SOL tests in the spring. But graduation rates reflect much more than just test performance because it's the students cumulative for their, their career. And as I mentioned, our English learners and our students with disabilities are afforded additional time by, by law to, to meet the graduation requirements, and they have things in place that way. So I understand your question, and it can seem strange that you'd see, you know, a pass rate of something on an SOL test and then a higher graduation rate, but they get multiple opportunities to learn, relearn, and then demonstrate mastery. So each time you see a pass rate, it doesn't include all of the times that a student had.
Jennifer, they had, I'm sorry, Dr. Casada, I'm sorry, Jennifer, my daughter's name, Jennifer. So, but you know, what, what concerns me is that are these kids really graduating with the skill sets that they need? When I look at the performance of these subgroups, and then I look at a graduation rate that's extremely high, it just concerns me a bit as an educator and as a citizen of whether or not, because I've done some disaggregation and looked at data of very low performing school systems, very low, and I won't name them, but some of them have a 95% graduation rate. So it just, it creates a problem, a question for me. And then I think finally, in my questions, the slide on participation gap, the participation gap, slide 15? Can you put that one up? Yeah. This, this really concerns me a great deal because we've been, we've been at this, the participation by these various groups. It's, it's so very low. And when you look at middle and high, I think there was a slide before that, Jennifer, wasn't there a slide prior to 15?
The slide right before it was for elementary and middle school, and in that slide.
That's a good slide. But when you look at the slide, and you look at the participation rate for, in these programs, as, as the task force, that's your Equity Task Force, I really would like for them to address, what are we going to do to improve the participation rate of kids in advanced studies and various? Because what I'm learning about colleges is that you may not have a good, you may not show your, you may be test optional, not show your SAT. However, they are looking at your performance, and they are looking at, are you in advanced courses? And some by minority kids and special ed kids, the participation rate, this, we have to improve in this area. So when you get with your Equity Task Force, or however you're going to bring this back that Dr. Latif talked about, we've got to show more. In my, in my mind, we have to show that students are learning and that when they're not learning that we're, definitely have a program that we can share with the board of how we plan to improve. And I'm sorry, I took up so much time. I had other questions, but you, you're lucky, Jennifer. I'm not going to ask along. Thank you very much. And as usual, you're doing a good job of presenting. Thank you, because I know you do hard work. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Chairman Latif. You can keep the same slide up or put it back up because I'm following right behind Ms. Jessie. My question, the first one is, when we talk about high school gifted program participation by student group, is that, are those, are we talking about students who are enrolled and gifted and participating in the program? Or are we talking about high school students who are enrolled in courses that could be considered as gifted courses? And if you don't have the answer to that right now, that's fine. But I know that there are courses that qualify as gifted, but, and they may be full, but there may not be a gifted student in that course. So I'm, I'd like a little bit more information on that. And then also, when it, when we talk about the slide 14 with the program participation, if we could get more information, some, some more drill down information and background as to why those numbers continue to be flat, especially at the elementary and middle school level, when we have done such a significant job of reeducating our elementary and middle school teachers on gifted and what gift it looks like. And I mean, I've even seen new program literature for parents. I'm really interested as to why we're not seeing any change in those numbers. And if we could get some information on, on what we think may be the causes of that or just, just more information, period. I just, I struggle with this every year when we talk about this. So, and I think that's important as we look at the strategic plan. And then my last request is, since we have a board that is comprised of majority new board members, if the division could take some time to walk not only the public, but each board member or the board itself on the process of the strategic plan, not just saying that we're going to get it in January and then it'll be voted on in the spring, but a little bit more detail on what that process looks like, what the board should be thinking about, what our responsibility is for the strategic plan, also so that the public is aware. I know myself and Ms. Jessie have a little bit more knowledge on this, but I don't, I don't know if Mr. Wall does or not, I don't remember, I'm sorry. But like, you know, the majority of people on this board have no clue, other than now they're going to look at it in January and we're going to have to vote on it in the spring. And I, and I think that it, it would really help move things along if board members and the public can understand a little bit more about what the board's responsibility is and, and how detailed that gets into the strategic plan. And also, hopefully, we'll be able to schedule at least a work session on it, because I think that's helpful. It tends to be a lot of questions revolving around strategic plan. And I know we just have a love affair with meeting here until 3 o'clock in the morning, but you know, if we could kind of break that streak, I'm sure everyone would greatly appreciate that. And then also, if we could get an updated Equity Scorecard presentation and the information that goes into that prior to January, I think that would also be especially helpful as well. I noticed that there's a website, but you know, having a presentation for the board as well as the public, I think will, will also be helpful as opposed to just sending people to a website to gather information. And I think that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Williams, thank you for, for that input, and both Jennifer and I have been taking notes. Just one quick comment in that, if you may, you, you might recall that at the school board's training in December, Dr. Casada gave the board a starting overview, knowing that there were new members at that time regarding the process for the strategic plan. That's not to imply that that's all that needs to be done, but just a reminder that it did take place.
Thank you, Mr. Emon. I, I think that's helpful because I needed that reminder. I just think it's also helpful if we kind of go over it again, just doesn't have to be word by word, but I think it's helpful for all of the new members again. And so the public understands also as well what our role is and our responsibilities. Anytime we can do that, I think it works best for everyone. Thank you.
Ms. Wall?
Thanks for this presentation. I have a couple of just specific questions, more clarifying questions that I would like to ask. The first is, do we know how many fewer students took the SAT? I mean, either a number or a percentage? I, I suppose then, I think we resolved that the data was representing 12th graders, but do we have a number for that or a percentage?
Yes, we do. It was, I'm sorry if I cut you off. We had three, just over 100 fewer students, 36, 3,618 down from 3,720. And then for the ACT, it went down by about 50 students from 886 to 849, I'm sorry, about 40 students. Or so the numbers of our students, high school students who took the ACT is smaller in general, and they just were slight decreases.
Okay, thanks. My other question is, the SAT School Day that we held this fall, which I'm really grateful for that we enabled that for our high school seniors. I have a high school senior, so that was really great. How many students took advantage of that this fall? Do we know how many we were able to accommodate across the division?
Ms. Wall, we'll have to get back with you with that number.
Okay, thank you. One thing that is always a tension in, with the advanced diploma, I can't remember which slide number it was, is that we have such great specialty programs that allow our students to kind of double up on advanced courses that might not meet the, the advanced diploma requirements. So I was, it would be really interesting for, I think, to look at the data for those who participate in those specialty programs and really dive into it and take additional classes, but yet don't meet the advanced diploma requirements as a, as a result. Do you see, do you see what I'm saying? Because I know like, you know, advanced, I have, I have high school students, so I know about this, how it is with the advanced diploma. It really locks them into really traditional coursework. But then if they want to dive into a specialty program and they want to take like two or three computer science classes or something like that, it almost disqualifies them from being able to meet the stringent requirements of the advanced diploma. So not that it's bad, you know, those are just choices, and I'm glad we have those choices for our students, but I would be really interested in looking at, kind of diving into that data and just comparing, you know, of those kids who don't receive an advanced diploma, how many of those children are actually participating in a specialty program where they're gaining a level of expertise, something like that. I think that would be interesting.
We can certainly look at that.
Yeah, thank you. I had a question about the gifted information. Just for clarification, from my, my understanding, do those numbers represent those identified for gifted services? Or do those numbers represent those who agree to participate in the gifted services program? Because I know some students will be identified, but they won't participate for various reasons. Maybe their parents don't want them to, or they, they think it's going to be extra work or, you know, lots of other reasons. But do those number, numbers represent the number identified or the number who participate?
So I'm going to confirm that, but I believe that it's the, it's, we focus on the identification and the, the participation at the elementary and middle school level. Those numbers are a lot closer. Ms. Williams questioned earlier about people taking the gifted classes and things like that. So we'll be able, when we provide that breakdown, I'll provide that additional information.
Okay, thank you. I have one last question, if that's all right. Okay. I was curious, because I'm new, how do we define a highly qualified teacher? What, what is that? What does that mean?
Okay, that's a great question, actually. So what that means is, so teachers have training in particular subject areas, and they have licensure and endorsement requirements. And so a teacher, I'm going to take And so a teacher, I'm going to take a high school example, like a teacher who's a biology teacher would have science certification and endorsements. And if I get any of this wrong, Dr. Eagle, you can help me out. But if the teacher's teaching all biology classes and all their training and their endorsements and everything from the state line up 100%, then they're highly qualified to teach all of their sections. However, if that teacher also teaches a section of something in physics and they don't have that endorsement, for example, then that section would count as not being highly qualified. Does that make sense? It's where the teacher is, not only has the degree, but has the proper licensure and endorsement to match the courses that he or she is teaching.
Okay, yeah, that does make sense. So we, how closely do we align our teachers' qualifications with the classes that we require them to teach?
Yes. And then just to make sure that the number, as I cited, the number that we said that you could have a teacher, it's not an all or nothing proposition. A teacher could have six sections or five sections, five sections of classes and four of them could be a perfect match and one might not be because we can't fill a particular need. And that's where it's that 90, 97% of student sections really are taught with that perfect, highly qualified match.
That's a, that's a great number. Thank you. My last question is, do we keep track of SAT data for our sophomores and our juniors? How many, how many kids take it at those earlier grade levels and how they do and they're tracking their progress? Do they improve? Do we have ways for our students to improve upon taking the SAT, you know, get that higher score? Or do we just, you know, I mean, what are we doing? I guess, do we keep track of that data? And then I suppose this is a question for Dr. Amon or Mr. Amon later, but what are we doing to actually assist students to gain that higher score?
To answer the first question, we can definitely get the, we have like our own local information for non-seniors. We can't do comparisons to other, to the state and the nation because there was only released at the, for the graduating seniors, but we have local information. And I, and I do know there are efforts because of the PSAT that we have in place in Prince William County that provides students with the opportunity to learn those, those tests are aligned with the SAT. So students, when they take the PSAT, they get a score and they get access to resources through the college board that allow them and the Khan Academy allow them to do targeted work that can help them improve their PSAT score the next time they take it as well as their SAT score. That's, that's what I can speak to, to it. I, I know others could speak more.
Okay, that's great. I mean, my, my comment just would be that I know since I have high schoolers that, you know, they take the SA, they take the PSAT and then if they're, they have time and if they have the initiative, they'll, you know, go on Khan Academy and try to, you know, do practice math questions or something like that. But I wonder if we had, I was wondering if we are a little more proactive in the sense that we like enroll children in a, an SAT improvement plan or something like that, you know, where we kind of reach out and kind of motivate and encourage and give a little bit of accountability to our children to increase their scores. I mean, I also know there's a counter trend for SAT scores, et cetera, where we're kind of, colleges and others are moving away from these standardized tests and looking at more authentic work product as evidence of mastery. So I also know there's kind of a countervailing emphasis on, or a de-emphasis on the SATs, but I feel like as long as they are being given and required, if we can find ways to hold or help students account, be accountable for actually improving on their ability to take these tests, that would be something I would be interested in, as long, along with the questions that Ms. Jessie raised, I have a lot of interest in this topic. So I want to thank you for this information. Thank you very much. I don't have any further questions.
Ms. Wallace?
We can get, we can get that information to you, but yes, we do have proactive initiatives by high school, various test, test prep programs that they can be in. I know this because my daughter took one at Colgan, but we'll get that information to you. But the answer to your question, short answer is yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Dr. Qasada, I have a question. On the SAT, Ms. Wall brought up the good point about students taking it their junior and sophomore years. When you tell us the average score for the year, is that based on the score they took in 12th grade or is that their best of all scores, regardless of when they took it?
It's the best score, that's the way that it's, it's reported. The college board used to report most recent, but they've done now their best scores. We have the information either way, but that's the way that it's, it's reported to be consistent with how the college board releases it.
So the college board tells you what our 12th graders average, what, you're not coming up with that number, the college board tells us that 12th grade number?
Yeah, we're reporting the, the numbers that are, what the college board gives us in their, their report. We can look at it any which way with the data that we have, but we report, we use their analysis for this presentation so that we can compare apples to apples with the state and national averages. But just like with Mrs. Wall's question, we do have 10th and 11th grade, whatever scores and can break them down whichever way the board would like for local numbers.
No, 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 that, that's great. But so, so it is fair for me and it is, it is accurate for me to understand that the score that you, we are submitting or we're getting back is the best score the student gave or got, correct? That's what's included in the average? Or, or another question would be, are all their scores included in the average?
I, I don't believe so, Dr. Latif, but the, let me, I'm going to confirm with what the college board's done because they've changed course a couple of times and I will, we can share with you their definitions of what they include in it. But it's not, it's not ever been, they used to do most recent and then they moved to best. It never had been multiple, but before I, before I go on record with saying exactly what the college board is, it does in their reporting, I'm going to confirm and I can share with you their definitions.
Yeah, and then, and that would be the same for the ACT. That, that would be good to know. So we really understand that, okay, this average that we're reporting out to the state or we compare to the state is their best score and, and not their average, right? So like if a kid took it three times, the college board is not telling us the average of their three as one score. They're telling us what the best was. Or are they telling us all three? And they're, they're not giving, they're not including all three, right?
They, and I've never seen them do anything where they're saying they're including multiple scores. Again, they used to include a student's most recent score years ago, but then their technology got more sophisticated and they were able to do best score. And now that they do super scores for students when they report to colleges. But I can get from the college board and from ACT their definitions because it's, we're pulling from the same things that the state uses for their press releases, just at our local level, we get that same reports from them. And then there are different ways, if you want to then see it a different way, we can do this, do it, but only for our local information. We don't have access to the raw data clearly for the whole state or the nation.
Right, right, right. Okay, great. And so just because this was brought up in the presentation, I know the, the, the question of moving forward with this year and what's going to happen and this test optional idea. Again, and Ms. Jessie brought up the, the good point about parents calling and, and I want to remind the board as well as the public, we went over this in, in, in September and it was, I know there was communication that went out in the SCOOP communicator and all sort of avenues that reminded parents and if they need to remind it again, that you have to opt out to have it show up on your transcript. And, and as your, our seniors are looking at that, they need to remember that. That is absolutely critical because if you tell University X that you didn't take it and then you submit your transcripts without having it pulled off or you didn't want them to see it, it's there. And so that's a real problem. And so we need to send out, I, I think it would be a good idea to send out constant reminders to our seniors and I hope our guidance counselors are, I know they are probably staying on top of that, but we want to make sure that that's happening. And the other concern is, I, I would really talk to your guidance counselors about the word test optional and the deans of those universities. You know, it is, you know, test optional is a very, you know, if you have student X and student Y and they're exactly the same as far as grades and coursework that they took and student X took the test, student Y didn't, the admissions officer cannot unlook at the test. So the idea that, you know, deans of admissions are advising students to consider taking the test in those places that are test optional, but that's something you need to talk about with your guidance counselor and at the universities you're planning on applying. So it's really important, this test optional is not a, a, you know, get out of free, you know, whatever that is, get out of free, get out of jail, free, whatever. You know, it's, it's something that needs to be, you know, every student, every family needs to have a, you know, a discussion with their counselors and with their deans of the schools that they're applying to for the deans of admissions. Lastly, that I have right now is on slide 22, Dr. Qasada, on retention. Are there schools that we have that have higher problems of retention for teachers and students that are, that teach schools that do better with retention, that, that regularly are consistently a problem or, or it just varies year to year? I know we've never seen a breakdown of retention issues.
I would have to look into that, Dr. Latif, but I can get with HR and we can look at that information for you.
Because you would assume with site-based management, that is going to differ, right? I mean, it's, it's going to change. It's going to be different at every place.
Well, there definitely would be, there's definitely variation. I just can't speak to specific trends or anything right now, but we can definitely pull that for you.
And, and if there, I mean, so do you look at that, by the way? Like, would a school look at that and say, oh, we're trending at a higher, you know, a rate? Maybe we're not the kind of place people want to stay and work or, I mean, are we, is there someone monitoring that?
Well, Dr. Latif, the level associates work with their principals.
So they have access to that data of retention problems at certain schools? They would know, like, if I went to an associate superintendent and said, tell me which of your schools has the highest retention rate issue, they would know that or not? Would they know that, Keith?
I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Latif, I didn't realize I was muted. I, I think what I'll do is I'll call on one of the staff to give a response. Mr. Erickson, are you able to do that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Amon. Dr. Latif, we, we get updates from HR. Anecdotally, we would know the, we would be able to say which schools would have different retention rates, but we, we typically get updates from HR, in particular with schools that are, that we might have more turnover in. Schools also, you know, you mentioned site-based management, but there are also other things like, in, in particular, if you've got a school that's got a lot of veteran teachers that are going to cycle through, there's, there might be a higher rate of retirement, for instance. So there, there are, you know, multiple factors involved.
May I add something?
Ms. Jessie, sure.
My associate always knew my turnover, so they, they generally know, but I think that you also want to look at turnover in terms of the types of schools. Title I schools, for example, do, and middle-class schools. My preliminary observation was that very few of my teachers left my school to go to another low-income school or from a middle-class school. They would, so you need to look at retention in those title I schools and whether or not there's turnover there. I don't know what you would find, but I think it would be very interesting because it's very difficult to retain teachers in schools. I have a good retention rate, but it's difficult to retain teachers in schools where you're, with the accountability, you know, the SOLs and everything, it's very hard to retain teachers in those schools where the test scores are not exactly where, you know, the other schools are. I hope that makes sense.
Sure. I mean, I, thank you, Ms. Jessie. Did anyone else? Okay. Ms. Jackson, let me, can I see the screen, Mr. Stevens? Any further questions from? Yeah, Ms. Jackson.
I have a really quick question, Dr. Qasada. Thank you for the presentation. I think I missed what you said. Can you please go to slide eight really quickly? And it said, I think, I don't have it in front of me, the 92.4% of students with IEPs graduation rate, is that?
It would be the next, two slides from now, slide 10 has it broken down by the, there we go.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so, so just to clarify, I, because you said it really quickly, is that 92.4% that is, that could, for students with IEPs, that could go all the way up to the age of 21, right?
Yes, and so what, what happens for them is they start out in one cohort and if they're continuing and they're under 21 and they're continuing in school, they roll to the next cohort. So students with disabilities are afforded that time up until they either will graduate or they would, you know, age out. And so that's where, that's why those graduation rates might appear higher than people might think, but because they've got that time built in by, by law.
And then that includes all the diploma options ranging from standard to applied to advanced studies, the 92.4%?
It includes, it doesn't include the applied. And so, because students then can come back from that to earn a standard or advanced diploma. So it's evolved over time, but it does, students of course can continue in school through 21 and, and continue to come back for a standard diploma if they've earned something other than that beforehand, students with disabilities.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, wonderful. Seeing, oh, Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you. Just super quick, I know we're looking at a plan that's supposed to go over a number of years, but I'm wondering, with COVID and, and everything that's going on right now, are we going to, are you building any, I don't want to say wiggle room because it's not really the right intent, but are you, are you going to be able to pivot from things if we need to attend to graduation rates for some, for some reason? What if they dropped? Are we going to be able to pivot and adjust really quickly? And what considerations are you, are you giving to how COVID might be affecting these plans? A super fast answer is fine too, by the way.
Okay, so the, that's a great question. And so that's definitely context for the development of the plan and figuring out a way to balance flexibility with setting targets. And so I don't have a full answer to that, but that's definitely something that's being considered and will certainly be in the discussions that would engage with board members about how you want to proceed, superintendent staff and board members about how to proceed with that. As we've learned in the last eight months, that everything has to be able to be nimble and agile and adapt. So that is something that's not just related to COVID, I think is going to have to be built into the structure of the plan at the same time with the maintaining high expectations. So figuring out how to do that is definitely something trying to be figured out at the moment.
And Mrs. Zargarpur, as you know, that when needed, we've been working with the board on flexibility to the strategic plan. By example, the fact that we have, in a sense, delayed the implementation of the new plan because of the flexibility needed around the COVID pandemic. So collectively, the administration working with the board has actually implemented some flexibility and that was, this is not the first time during other strategic plans in the past when the state may have changed some requirements. We again come to the board and we work collectively on that flexibility.
Wonderful, thank you. Dr. Qasada, outstanding presentation. Mr. Amon, thank you so much. Dr. Wall, thank you. We're going to do the student representative time and after that, the board, we're going to take a 10-minute break, if you all don't mind. We've been meeting since four or five today and so we'll take a 10-minute break after the student representative before the superintendent's time. So we'll go with Ashley Menavar, who is our senior from Woodbridge High School. She is our student school board member with us this evening, our representative who, well, she's our alternate actually, filling in for Caroline Silveira tonight. So anyways, Ms. Ashley Menavar of Woodbridge High School, please.
Good evening. One of the main concerns we noticed on the student survey that, that we released in September were workload concerns. I took the data from Woodbridge Senior High School and I've worked with my principal, Mrs. Agnew, to work on these concerns. Two weeks ago, I was a part of a faculty meeting where I was given time to express my concerns to teachers. As we're entering the second quarter, Woodbridge Senior High School has made changes to make sure students are given enough time in class to work on their assignments, as well as encouraging asynchronous days to become more of a workday for students to catch up on missing assignments. I'm confident that this will positively change how students feel about virtual learning and encourage other high schools to follow this route. Students and parents of high school students, please pay attention to any announcements that your school administration may have about any virtual town halls where you can express your concerns. The Prince William County Student Senate has worked hard in making sure that there's a virtual town hall at each high school this year. And I'd like to say thank you to all the teachers in Prince William County as they have adapted to this virtual learning environment and have made it exciting for students. An example of this is in my government class, we've made group podcasts, which are really fun to make and allow us to gain information from our peers. Students, please reach out to your teachers if you need any additional support with any lessons or assignments. There's There's a lot of resources that teachers have made available, such as office hours and links for AP classroom, for AP classes. Also, if you're, please pay attention to the high school specialty programs and CTE programs if you're interested in joining. Earlier this week, I had a meeting with the specialty program coordinator, Ms. Whistlehoff, and applications opened on November 1st, and the deadline is on February 1st, 2021. Please check out the specialty program section on the Princeville County website. On behalf of the student representatives and I, we'd like to say thank you to Princeville, to Princeville County for hosting a free SAP School Day on October 27th. This was a great opportunity for seniors. Thank you.
Okay, the board will recess for 10 minutes and meet back here at 9:20. Thank you. All right, folks, everyone grabs their seat. Do we have the folks? We have Dr. Waltz at home, we have Ms. Jackson, we're waiting for Ms. Jessie. Ms. Jessie, you want to turn on your camera? Okay, wonderful. We are up to 15, I'm sorry, 16:01, superintendent's time, Dr. Waltz.
Good evening, thank you Chairman Latif and members of the board. During a pandemic, it's always great to receive some good news about the school division. Prince William County Public Schools has earned the Virginia School Boards Association Green Schools Challenge Award. Congratulations to our school board, Associate Superintendent Al Charokey, Director of Facility Services John Winley, Brian Gorham, Administrative Coordinator for Energy Management, and his team for the outstanding work dedicated to energy management and sustainability in our schools. Also related to the pandemic, I would like to highlight the work of Chris and Sarah Enick Road, teachers at Featherstone Elementary School, who have built and donated over 35 desks to students. Please roll the video.
We were watching the news one night, and there was a family in Maryland that was building desks for kids in the community, and so I turned to Chris, I was like, I think that's something that we should look into doing, and so we reached out to Beneath our vice principal, and one of our teachers that works with the students with autism found that one of her students needed a desk and had reached out to the vice principal and not knowing that we had talked about making desks, and it just started.
We've been making 35 to 45 desks so far.
And I thought it was really awesome that he was willing to come and be a part of this.
Dr. Waltz ended up helping us finish the book box that goes on the side of the desk, ended up nailing it together and then screwing it onto the desk. He also putted and sanded it. And then we also have their names that they can have put on the top of the desk, so he was able to go ahead and put the name on the desktop for her.
We have had a couple kids who I've either had a personal Zoom with them, or I've gotten a little note that they sent to their teacher saying how much it meant to them and how much they love their desk.
To see the smiles the next day after they have received their desk brought home, you see them on a Zoom, and they're sitting at their desk, and they're nice and proud of it, and that's the feeling that I'm looking for.
All right. Thank you, everyone, and stay healthy.
Outstanding, Dr. Waltz, we can have you, I mean, that desk work was outstanding. I don't know what to say, that's fantastic. Thank you so much for sharing that with all of us. That is wonderful. And next we'll move to Board Matter 1701, Mr. Charokey. Second reading, I guess, and this is on for action, I guess, correct? Please. Okay, so I guess I need a motion, and then if we have questions, we have Al, Mr. Charokey here for us.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the adoption of the new policy 411 menstrual supply products.
Do we have a second? Ms. Waltz seconds a motion, any discussion? Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just really excited that Prince William County Schools is proposing and hopefully adopting this new policy for all of our, all of our female students. I think it's amazing that we are able to provide these products free for our students, our young ladies, and that deals directly to the heart of having an equitable school system for our female students, so I'm really proud of this.
Okay, any further discussion? Excellent, who? Oh, Ms. Jessie.
I also wanted to congratulate you on this. I mentioned last week that a young lady in Prince William was instrumental in this, and I'm very, in talking to her mom, she said that elementary students really need this service also. So I think there's opportunities for elementary students, am I correct on that?
Ms. Jessie, you are correct.
Okay. It's a little bit different from high schoolers, I think they have to go to the nurse, am I right?
Correct. The products are kept with the nurses at the elementary level, but they are in the actual bathrooms at the middle and the high school level.
Thank you.
Outstanding, please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, unanimous, one absent, Ralston, motion passed.
Motion passes unanimously. 1702, approval of nondiscrimination policies. We will have a motion as an order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve proposed legis, legal res, can't speak. I move that the Princeville County School Board approve proposed legal revisions to policies 060, 063, 501, 507, 512, and 701.
Do we have a second? Ms. Zargarpur seconds motion, any discussion? Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just glad to see that our policies are being updated to reflect what the law, what is currently in the law, and I know that both our students and staff will appreciate that.
Is it Appreciation Day? Okay, great, everyone vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Jackson, did you have a comment? I'm sorry, did I miss your hand?
No.
Okay, okay, great. How do you vote, Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Jackson votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, unanimous, one absent, Ralston, motion passed.
All right, motion passes on 17, on 1702, right, unanimously. Okay, next is 1703, motions in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I am excited to move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointment of Brandon, Brandy Reeves as deputy clerk to the school board conditioned upon a satisfactory background check and other prerequisites to employment. The Prince William County School Board will require a corporate surety bond in the amount of $10,000 for the deputy clerk to the school board, conditioned upon the faithful performance and discharge of her duties, with the premium for such bonds to be paid for by the school board.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Ms. Waltz seconds. Excellent, any discussion? Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am really excited about this appointment. I think Ms. Reeves will make an excellent addition to our school board clerk's office, and I also think that she will pair very well with our current clerk. I'm excited to bring her on board, and I think she will be definitely a value out, value add to our system.
Great, please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
What?
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes.
I am thrilled to say that the vote is seven yes, unanimous, one absent, Ralston, motion passed.
Fantastic, Ms. Simpson, yes, throwing you a lifesaver over there. 1704, approval of December 17, 2020, special meeting, emotions in order. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board hold a special meeting on December 17, 2020, for the purpose of receiving a report on the superintendent's search process.
Second? Ms. Zargarpur seconds motion, any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
What?
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Motion passes unanimously. 1705, history, social science, September 11, we have Mr. Wilk, emotions in order. Oh, I'm sorry, information, sorry. Sorry, I was on a roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 9/11 was an unimpress, excuse me, unprecedented event, tragedy, that was seared into the minds of every American who was alive during this time. I still remember where I was standing in my high school when I saw United Airlines Flight 175 crash into the south tower between the floors, 77 and 85. 9/11 became a central theme of the events that unfolded in my senior year of high school, as I can imagine the event was for millions of other Americans at this time. Two years ago, I watched the last class of graduates who were born before 9/11 cross the stage in our 13 high schools. As time passes, the tragic events of 9/11 are becoming more and more a distant memory of the past. As our school division approaches the 20th anniversary of the attacks next September, I believe that it is critical that we expand and provide the necessary curriculum resources to teach and discuss grade level and appropriate lessons next year. I would also like to see our division strongly encouraged that all of our English and social studies classes incorporate at least one lesson or activity in the week leading into 9/11. In my humble opinion, I believe this, that this heavy encouragement next year is a no-brainer. At a time when our nation is deeply divided, reflecting on a time when we were all Americans first would be very appropriate for next year. I feel like we owe this to the families in our county who lost loved ones that day at the Pentagon. We owe this to our many military families and veterans residing in our county. Finally, we owe this to the nearly 3,000 victims who perished in New York City, the Pentagon, and Shanksville, Pennsylvania. I ask the board to witness and watch this presentation and seriously consider supporting the committee and moving forward with developing a 9/11 task force.
Dr. Basset.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, school board members, and Dr. Waltz. Tonight, by request of Mr. Wilk, we will be sharing how the division will work to plan for next year's somber remembrance of the 20th anniversary of September 11, 2001. At this time, the supervisor of history and social science, Mr. Jeff Gervin, will share preliminary information on the planning. Mr. Gervin?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Goss. Good evening, Chairman Latif, school board members, Dr. Waltz. So when Mr. Wilk sent this request to Mr. Basset, I was excited about it because I totally agree with Mr. Wilk's motion here that the school board...
Hello? Jason, any luck? Did we lose him?
Well, the last thing he said was he agreed with me, so we're good.
Yeah, that's fine, that's outstanding. Justin, you want to, you want to give this, or Mr. Ms. Goss, do you want to continue with this?
School board, if the school board so wishes. The task force will be asked to consider, but not limited to, the following, and you can move to the next slide, please. So basically, possible projects that we're looking at implementing and working with teachers on to develop would be oral histories, student-led service projects, commemoration events, and work with some of our partners, for example, the National Marine Corps Museum. We would like to get our students involved in as, you know, much as possible to work with community members and, you know, their fellow peers and teachers to commemorate this event. Next slide, please. So some of the considerations, and again, not limited to, but what we're looking at is to have sort of grade band-focused lessons that would be age-appropriate, and, you know, cognitive level appropriate for the students that we would create these lessons and performance tasks for. Mr. Wilk even mentioned, for instance, language arts classes, and that's exactly where we were looking as well, but also to include, you know, art, music, in different areas of the fine arts possibly. Students could write music, write poems, and or, you know, do some type of oratory contest to commemorate this, you know, creation of mini documentaries, you know, we have a lot of students that are very tech savvy, and so getting them to be involved in this type of work is authentic work in the social sciences, creating, creating these type of things. So the grade band-focused lessons look at K2 for everyday heroes and how people in the community can rise up to occasions, even tragic occasions, and can show that together, you know, we can persevere through, through this terrible type of situation. Third grade through fifth grade, Patriot Day, to talk about, you know, you know, how that has been, you know, Congress has nominated that as Patriot Day and why that is, and what does that mean exactly? And so those students would explore that. Grade six through eight, basically, how do tragic events like 9/11 bring communities together? Mr. Wilk mentioned it, for instance, in a nation that seems, you know, divided, it's these type of things that can bring, can bring people together, can bring communities together, to look at our great democracy and realize that, you know, the great country that we live in. And then for nine, grades nine through 12, just as, again, Mr. Wilk said, you know, this is, these, these are the kids who are, you know, post-9/11 generation, and so we would, we would look at lessons and performance tasks that would ask the students to engage in, you know, what can, what has been learned from a post-9/11 generation? And next slide? And so that is our presentation, and thank you.
Mr. Wilk. Mr. Gervin, that was outstanding, thank you. That was perfect, I love the bands that you were saying, and this, how we're going to do it by grade level and the topics, I think that's outstanding.
I'm sorry, the boardroom lost connection, so you guys are muted in there right now.
Oh, they can't hear us at home, Jason?
Yep, we got you now, thank you.
Oh, okay, Mr. Wilk, start over, please.
I know, I was just saying, that was a great, that, I'm sorry, I'm like, where am I going? Mr. Gervin, that was outstanding, thank you, great presentation, I love the topics, I love the idea of forming the committee with the community members and the board selecting someone from each of our districts to serve, with the outstanding educators of our district. Mr. Iman, thank you for speaking with me early about this and kind of formulating ideas. Dr. Waltz, thank you for supporting this, Ms. Goss as well, so I appreciate all this, and that's my feedback, so thank you.
Okay, seeing, okay, Ms. Walt.
I just wanted to add, I think this is a great idea, Mr. Wilk, and a good opportunity for us to engage in some cross-curricular learning and to connect students with real-life events in a meaningful way, which I always love to see what students come up with, the creativity, cross-curricular, connect with your real-world life events, it's super important, so thanks for this idea.
Okay, great, move on to 1706. This is on for action, Ms. Williams? Isn't it? Oh, Ms. Walt, I'm sorry, Ms. Walt, 1706, resolution.
Okay, I move that the Prince William County School Board adopt the attached resolution and appoint Lori Williams as representative and Lily Jessie as alternative representative to the Racial and Social Justice Commission created by the Board of County Supervisors on October 20, 2020, sorry.
Hold on, do I have a second?
I have to...
Or do you want, do you have to...
There's a resolution.
Okay, she's got to read the whole resolution, outstanding, great, great.
And this is the resolution. Whereas on October 20, 2020, the Prince William County, Prince William Board of County Supervisors created a Racial and Social Justice Commission to examine the state of racial and social justice for people of color, to include public education, subject to the establishment of a partnership with the Prince William County Public Schools. And whereas the Prince William County School Board recognizes the importance of providing, or providing racial and social justice for all students and employees in the Prince William County Public Schools, and to that end, the superintendent has previously created an advisory council for equity charged with making recommendations to the school board to assure equity within the school division. And whereas under Virginia law, the Prince William County School Board retains exclusive authority over public education in Prince William County and sole control over the policies and operations of the school division. And whereas any partnership with the Board of County Supervisors shall in no way diminish the exclusive authority of the school board over public education in the county schools, and the school board shall retain its independent and exclusive authority to determine what actions, if any, will be taken based upon any findings or recommendations of the commission. It is therefore resolved that the Prince William County School Board agrees to partner with the Board of County Supervisors for the purposes of participating in the Racial and Social Justice Commission by appointing a member of the school board and an alternative member of the school board to the commission, which representation constitutes the extent of the partnership with the commission, and which shall not bind the... the commission and which shall not bind the school board to any particular course of action, recommendation, or decision of the commission. Any recommendation, finding, or decision of the commission relating to the Prince William County Public Schools shall be referred to the Advisory Council for Equity for further study and possible recommendation to the Prince William County School Board.
Okay, Ms. Zaragpur, do I have a second?
I second.
And seconded by Ms. Zaragpur, any discussion? Ms. Zaragpur.
So, I love this idea, generally speaking, but also want to note that the Prince William County Schools has been working on equity for years now, right? We have training for our staff, and I think that there's a lot of local experts within our school division. I love that there is the Advisory Council for Equity within our school division. So, I know we've been making some great progress on that front already, and I hope that these people will be excited. I'm excited about this work, so I hope they're excited as well to continue this.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Wall?
I just want to add, I think it's important that we maintain our independence as a school board. We're happy to work with the Board of County Supervisors, but also make sure that we are clear in retaining our exclusive authority over public schools because that is our constitutional right and responsibility as well. And I feel like in laying this out in a very clear and transparent way, that we will... that the partnership will succeed.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. Ms. Williams?
I'm excited to, of course, depending on the outcome of the vote, participate on this. These are topics that are near and dear to my heart. I know myself also, I'm excited to have Ms. Jessie be the alternate representative. I'm sure I can count on her attendance to each and every meeting. We've partnered well before in the past in working with the VOCS. I also agree with Ms. Wall, it is very imperative that we are able to maintain the separation of powers. And serving on this commission, I think it is exciting in the fact that we have taken the lead as a school division, looking at some of these issues in relation to equity. So, I'm excited to see how we can grow this partnership for the benefit of our community at large. So, thank you.
Hi.
Ms. Jessie?
I also would like to thank, I thank the Board of Supervisors really for creating this particular group of individuals. Of course, equity and social justice has been my life, and I'm honored to serve on this board. I think that the separation of the two entities is important, but I think it's also important to understand the importance of the collaboration because this Board of Supervisors have been very supportive of very many initiatives and supporting us with not just funding, but supporting ideas and concepts. I don't think that there's going to be any problem along that line about whether or not we're separate entities. So, I think, am I right, Ms. Williams, that Ms. Franklin was instrumental in creating this particular group of individuals? Am I correct about that, Margaret Franklin?
Yes, Supervisor Franklin was instrumental in creating this Racial and Social Justice Commission. There are still members to be appointed, but it is definitely her idea and her baby.
Yeah, and I just want to compliment her for... There are some very bright people on that board, and they're very new, so they're trying some innovative things. At the end of the day, student learning and whether or not our students are ready to learn and whether or not there's equity and access to learning, access to employment opportunities, it all comes back to whether or not our kids are literate and have the mathematical skills to be successful. So, what we do as a school board does impact the Board of Supervisors and their work. So, I thank you for the opportunity to work with you.
Okay, seeing no further hands.
Do you all F5? And I want to see if that corrected the issue.
Please, everyone, F5, for those of you at home, F5. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it would be a good idea if we add a standing agenda item as needed for updates on this commission as we have on other meetings and, excuse me, other task force or organizations that we, as board members, participate in so that the public is aware of what we're doing, what the focus is, and the direction it's moving.
Okay, excellent. Please vote. Ms. Jessie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jessie votes yes. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, unanimous, one absent, Ralston. Motion passed.
Okay, 1707, update to the school board on the high school virtual learning program. Dr. Walz?
Yes, this item was placed on the agenda by Ms. Zaragpur, and we have Mr. Mogru and the high school principals to assist. Mr. Mogru?
First, just for the folks at home, I'd like to welcome, I think it looks like almost all of our high school principals in attendance. Thank you so much. It gets lonely in this room here, and in the middle of the pandemic, it is fabulous to see some folks live. Thank you all for coming tonight. Really appreciate it.
Good evening, Dr. Latif, School Board members, and Dr. Walz from the High School Principals Group. My name is Michael Mulgrew. I'm the associate who supervises all of the high schools in our district. As you can see, the high school principals are in attendance tonight as we prepare to answer questions about the virtual model, where we've had success and things we need to work on as we prepare for the 50-50 model. Please display the next slide, please.
Good evening. My name is Rich Martinez, and I am the principal at Forest Park High School. I would also like to introduce my colleague, Ms. Inez Bryant, principal at Freedom High School. Beginning in February before the pandemic, all high schools built master schedules for 100% in-person learning, as we have always done. After the shutdown on March 13, we were still working to help students graduate and gain credits necessary to advance in their education. We assisted our seniors in having a graduation ceremony different from any graduation ceremony in our county's history. It is very important to note that we are very proud of our graduation rate, which increased again to 93%, which is the highest in the history of our county.
Good evening. The introduction of Canvas as a learning management system was a positive thing and vital for the board's decision to utilize virtual learning for the first quarter. We appreciate the board's decision to delay the opening of school for two weeks, and the subsequent opening was better than anticipated. Now, I'd like to introduce my colleague, Richard Nichols, the principal of Unity High School. Please display the next slide.
Good evening. I am Richard Nichols, and principal at Unity Reed High School. Training teachers and students to an entirely virtual platform is a challenge. Additionally, in order to move to a virtual platform, we had to purchase or had supplied to us thousands of computers and instructional devices, which required multiple days of distribution and continues to this day. This required teachers and students to be trained on the virtual platform. We are still adjusting to the virtual model as we recognize adjustments are required for students and staff to implement this model of instruction and are making multiple adjustments as we proceed. We are basing this feedback from multiple focus groups conducted by principals of their students, instructional staff, and parents. The adjustments we are taking include, but are not limited to, the following: ensuring health and safety guidelines are in place, PPE equipment, staffing issues, and COVID-19 mitigation, providing retakes and remediation for students and the review of assessment practices in a virtual environment, learning and adapting virtual instructional practices as well as preparing for concurrent instruction, monitoring and adjusting both students and teacher workloads in a virtual environment, providing mental health support for students on-site with counselors and social worker availability during the day, and counseling teams are providing social and emotional support to meet the needs of our students and families, providing students with supplies such as art supplies, engineering materials, and textbooks on demand to support student learning, and assistant principals continue to observe teachers' support and mental health concerns and meet with individual students and families to provide support and get students back on track. Ms. Bryant?
At this point, we think it is very important to publicly commend our teachers and staff for their incredible work over the past few months. Teaching content virtually while still trying to cover all the learning standards is a difficult task, and our teachers have and will continue to make adjustments to assist students in their learning. We also understand we are committed to fulfilling the desire of the board. To move to the 50-50 model, our goal is to support students and teachers in any learning environment as directed by the superintendent's staff and the school board, as we have always done. Please display the next slide. Mr. Matheson?
Good evening. My name is Matt Matheson. I'm the proud principal of Garfield High School. I'm here with my colleagues Brandon Bowles, the principal at Potomac, and Michael Bishop, principal at Patriot High School. As a high school principals team, we understand some of the challenges this pandemic has brought forward, and we, along with the superintendent, have taken steps to assist in this area. First, we applaud the superintendent's decision to drop the minimum number of graded assessments from 9 to 6 during the first marking period. This allows staff to devote more time to teaching and less to assessing and focusing the items assessed to the most important instructional topics during this timeframe. We have reemphasized the historical practice of spiraling backwards, which teachers have always done and is especially important this year due to the March 13 shutdown. When teaching new content, there is a possibility that students, because of the shutdown or being new to the system, may not know previously taught information. Teachers are cognizant of this and spiral backwards to teach and assess content. Mr. Bowles?
Thank you and good evening. We've also begun sharing instructional videos and collaborative learning teams, or CLTs, for students who may benefit from seeing another teacher's teaching of a concept that could supplement their own teacher's teaching of the same concept. All high schools have developed and implemented additional supports for students. Some have moved to dedicated virtual office hours by department. Students who need assistance in math, for example, would have dedicated time to interact with their teachers. This should avoid students having to choose between office hours for different teachers to receive assistance. Perhaps most importantly, we've been adjusting pacing guides for teachers to focus on the most important instructional objectives needed for students. These power standards are being emphasized due to the loss of instructional time both this year and last year. Dr. Bishop?
Good evening. In the previous couple of years, Dr. Walz, as part of our commitment to standards-based education, has given our teachers the professional discretion to raise a student's grade if the student improves his or her performance over the course of the school year. As principals, we have reemphasized guidelines on assessment duration and workload in order to assist our teachers in gauging how long an assignment or assessment should take for students. Although some students may take appreciably longer than other students, we have reemphasized these guidelines for teachers. For students who are having difficulty, we are using student performance data to provide targeted supports and communications for families. Counselors, secretaries are calling parents, along with administrators, when they see students are falling behind in particular classes. High school principals continue to meet weekly to collaborate, share best practices, and support each other throughout this situation. At this time, we would like to share with the board a video regarding virtual instruction in preparation for the return to the 50-50 model. If you could please start the video.
Hi, my name is Tricia Wheat. I'm a special education teacher at Patriot High School, and we've been doing in-person and virtual learning since day one. Happy Tuesday. Got what we call Mike, our funky-looking camera. We think of Mike Wazowski, so we have him here that kind of shows us around the room. So, this way, the students can see you and your kids that are virtual can see you as well.
It's been very successful, especially in the ID classroom, because the teacher's able to wear the headset and able to control voice modulation on the device and doesn't get any feedback and is able to interact with the students at home as well as the ones in the classroom. She's found it to be very successful.
When the kids are on their Zoom meeting, the social aspect becomes very real, and it becomes more like a normal classroom.
That's going to... Those chairs are going to represent the student bodies that are actually going to be here, so it will not be a full room. We can always use a small-group mentality when we're thinking about how we're going to structure a hybrid learning environment. We might have students in the classroom, working together with students who are not in the classroom. And of course, we already have Canvas, which we've been using virtually, that's going to really help with this transition because Canvas isn't only for virtual learning, of course. A good learning management system should be used even when we're back to full capacity and we have students all in the building together.
We measured out six-foot squares, so each student can have their own area. To make it more fun, we created the cars in the front of the desk with their license plates, so they knew that was their desk area. And then eventually, plexiglass could be included as well and kind of create the windshield of the car. At the front of the classroom that goes to the door, we have a road with poly dots on there that are spread out six feet apart. So, for dismissal, I'll say, "Student A, you should go to the red dot. Student B, go to the blue dot." And that way, we can manage the social distancing during transitions as well.
We're always lifelong learners. As teachers, we're always lifelong learners, and that's what we have to do. This too shall pass, but in the meantime, let's do right by our kids.
What type of end tech you're using or what kind of cool camera you have, all of that is great and all of that is support, but those are just the tools. We are the educators. We know what we're doing, and we've got this.
Okay, is that the end of the presentation? Okay, so I think we have questions. Who would like to start off with some questions? Do I see any takers here? Mr. Wilk?
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Definitely want to recognize Principal Martinez and Bowles from the Potomac District, the Bruins and the Panthers. Thank you both for being here. As all of our principals are here tonight very late, apologize for the late start tonight. There was a lot to take care of in closed session. First, that was an awesome video. That was very inspiring. We got to get that around on website and stuff like that. I think that was great. I think for people to see how it's going to work and look, I think that was great. My question, I guess, for the principals in the room, I'm going to be very general, maybe it doesn't have to be exact number, but I said, "What are three things the board can do to support all of you with the phased reopening of our secondary schools?" Any takers, anyone? Dr. Bishop?
Somehow I knew that was going to be the case.
Do you need me to come up there or just stand?
Yeah, you can do it.
I'll have to come to the mic for the folks at home that can hear better.
Can you repeat the question again?
Yeah, I was just saying, sir, what are three things the board can do to support all of you as the principals and leaders of your building with the phased reopening of our secondary schools?
The number-one thing I think all of us would agree on is the support for our teachers and the support for our staff to learn the technology and be able to be comfortable with it and be able to be in the building. Number two is to make sure that we have the PPE available so that we can make sure it's available for our staff, and then that we have the logistical stuff worked out, transportation, buses, those types of things.
Great. Okay, I'll go to Ms. Williams next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The video was great. A small portion of it was high school. A lot of it was Niabsco. And just to remind people at home, it'll look different at every school because of site-based management. I did like the dots, though. That was really creative. So, I'm curious because some of the presentation touched on with grades, and I noticed there's a reduction from 9 to 6 graded assessments. What I didn't see in there, and I'm curious to... students participate in classes for two different high schools. So while it's not all of them, it's a small sampling, what are we doing to support our teachers with the live lessons, like less videos, more live interactions, more time for working in class on their assignments? I know our student representative spoke to that specifically to her high school, but I'm really curious on a broad scale how that's, those changes are being made at all of our schools, if they are being made at all of our schools. And then in addition to that, how are we supporting our teachers with grading? Because I know it's like some teachers, Canvas is new, right? So this is, I'm not saying any of this is like picking our teachers, but more from a support angle, because they had three weeks to learn, school's starting, now we're going to a 50-50, and I recognize that it's challenging for our teachers, too. And some of these things occur, they're just technology issues, right? Like teachers putting in NHIs instead of NAs or whatever, and that affects your student's grade point average, right? So if you're a parent, you're looking at your child who may be an A student, and now they have a D in a class because there's an NHI. Or, you know, how are we helping to assist our teachers from a building standpoint and at a division level at the high school level, because that's where we seem to have the most concerns at with some of these issues?
There's, let me take the first one about the, first of all, I thought Dr. Walts's decision to extend, or the superintendent's staff to extend the week to give kids a chance to catch up on some of those NHIs and not handed-ins was a very good one. I think it eased the stress that many of the students were under. It's very difficult in a post, we're still teaching 180 days' worth of standards. The federal government has not relinquished some of its accountability standards, nor has the state said anything about graduation. So the reduced time that we've all understood that we've had puts a little bit more pressure on students and teachers. So that's one issue. I think whatever's happening at one school, and thank you very much, Ashley, for that, but these principals meet weekly, sometimes twice a week, even with me in the Zoom and with me out of the Zoom, and they share all the strategies that we're trying to do. Taking the number of graded assessments and putting them down doesn't mean that we're just, the assessment will count disproportionate and will harm the student. What it means is that if there's four parts to, if there's four standards being taught, and Lori aces three of them, she has a chance just to redo the one part that she didn't ace. So it's like going to the doctor. They're going to give you a prescription just for the part of your blood work that was not good. They're going to leave the good stuff alone. So that's what we've been trying to be able to get them to do, is to decrease it on the grading aspect, to make the grading. And we've been doing that for some period of time as far as standards-based grading and working. The technology issues, it is going to take a little, it did take a little bit of time for people to get used to it. Canvas has a grading, but I think Mr. Guilfoyle mentioned to me that they now have an app that alerts the parents when the student has the NHI. So that's a benefit to many of our parents who want to stay on top of this, because some of the students are, it's more the time-management issue sometimes with a lot of them, because it's, it's asking a 14-year-old in ninth grade to act almost like a college freshman. And that can be a little bit different, because they have to keep up with things, which sometimes 14-year-olds can have, can struggle with. So it's taking care of some of those aspects that we do as far as the grading. We've been very forgiving, and I think we give teachers the professional discretion. If Lori wasn't an A student at the end of the year, but she is at the beginning of the year, I'm sorry, but by the end of the year, she's demonstrating she's hitting it out of the ballpark, then give her credit for what she knows. That's been consistent over the last four or five years. But the adjusting the pacing guides is going to help us a lot as far as what we're doing. We're just going to focus on those types of things. It would be nice to have some of that relinquished from some of our teachers and our students. But until that takes place, we've got to do what we've got to do, and that's focus on the most powerful standards.
Thank you. I think that's very helpful, because a lot of parents, I think, still are in the mind frame or the mindset of pre-COVID learning and grading and testing and interacting with teachers. And I get a lot of responses from parents that say, especially that, you know, "There's too much work, and I don't understand why my student is getting this grade, and I can't find this," or "I don't understand how this works." So I think that's, that's very helpful. I also, while I have the opportunity and all the principals are here, I just want to say that I really appreciate all of your efforts. I think you have done an outstanding job, because again, I recognize that we don't reach every parent, no matter how many languages and ways that we communicate out to our public, but just really being attentive to our, our high school parents and letting them know that the changes and the things that are going on, as well as our students. We have virtual clubs. We have almost as many things as we possibly could have during virtual learning, and all of the work that's going into preparing to bring our students who have chosen to come back in the building, back in the building. And the learning curve has been tremendous for you administratively as well, and I don't think you get enough credit for that. So I just wanted to take the opportunity while you're all here to say thank you very much for everything that you're doing and your responsiveness. And then, just sort of along the same lines as Mr. Wilk, is there anything you would like as principals and administrators, maybe Mr. Mulgrew, you would like maybe answer, because we have quite a few principals here, that parents should be thinking about in that same notion of now that they're virtual and how to perceive maybe their students' grades or the reporting time differently? You know, I like to remind our, our parent community, we've only been in the school less than 30 days, so it feels a lot longer, I think, to some of us than our 30 days. But if there's any advice you could give to parents, or a principal wants to share anything, I think that would be very helpful while we have the platform and the time.
If they would like to, that's fine, but I will share with you, I think, taking advantage of virtual hours. When a teacher says, if I'm teaching a concept on the Supreme Court on how cases get there or the limitations on it, and I tell the kids that I'm, or the students, I'm available from eight to 8:30, it would be really terrific if they would, if they had difficulty understanding the concept from the night before or the asynchronous, if they would be able to available during that time period. I think dedicating that and having teachers, students take advantage of those virtual hours. We have a lot of teachers who say, "I'd really like to see Lisa at this time period." Sometimes I think, you know, I tell teachers, "Then tell her." Do you know what I mean? "I'll see you at eight." Be a little bit more forceful to the teenager and say, "I need to see you tomorrow. I need to see this, or I need to see that." But if the teacher goes ahead and says, "There's virtual hours," and they're sitting there waiting on students who need assistance, it's terrific to put that assistance with them. That's, that's the view that I've heard from talking to a lot of parents, I mean, from a lot of teachers, is that I'm available, but there's nobody on the other end of that Zoom or the other end of that message, because it's very difficult in some of these, especially in AP and College Board. The College Board has not reduced its number of standards. At this moment, it's still asking us to do the same things that it was doing in a pre-pandemic world. But if you go ahead and you take a peek at it, and the first time you see the economic implications of a tariff, if you just sit back and it doesn't quite kick, the next morning at eight o'clock, there's an opportunity for that teacher to reinforce it. Sometimes it's just the second bite at the apple, and the student won't be successful. It's not their academic acumen, it's just seeing it a second time. Sometimes they might be tired the night before for something other reason. That's the one that I would think would be terrific for them, for parents to be able to take advantage of. I don't know if anybody else has anything else they would like to. But that's the issue that I think is along the lines, is those virtual hours are there for a purpose. We're going to do our part to try to communicate. We want parents to do their part and the students to do their part and take advantage of a great opportunity. If four or five kids, if four or five students are there, and you're going over this very difficult concept, and it's the second time and it's in person, it's good. And you can read faces, and you can get a little bit of information.
Thank you, Mr. Mulgrew. And my last question is, how, I don't see independents here, and I'm always asking about them. Have we been able to utilize some of what they were already doing with their online coursework? How, how does independence, not traditional, factor into when we're looking at high schools as well?
I believe he, Mr. Icorn-
Maybe I just don't see, because I'm short.
He's a member of the high school principal group. He's always at the meetings. He might be here already. I don't know. But they use computer-based instruction, and they tend to have semesters, so it's a little bit different, but some of the concepts are the same thing. And that's the, taking the attention and to take it and almost individualize on how much time does Lori need on this concept, Mickey might need a little bit more, and then just working with it. So I think some of the things that Mr. Icorn, I'm not going to say Bob, but Mr. Icorn has done over the last 10, 15 years, we're incorporating a lot of those right now, and I think the virtual hours are one of them. That's what he does, is he makes flexible time for his kids.
Mr. Mulgrew, I don't want to interrupt, but Mr. Icorn had a medical situation tonight and sent an email out.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that. Thank you for telling me.
Okay, we'll go to, I think Ms. Wall was next, and then we'll go to Ms. Zargarpur.
I just want to thank everybody for being here. It's really great to see all of the principals, and I'm fairly new, so most of you I don't know, but it's really wonderful. I just can't even say that enough, how wonderful it is to see you here tonight. So thank you. I know it's late, and you have other places you'd probably rather be, but I have some questions. One question is regarding the grade book. I understand that the way that we have grades in Canvas, and because we were planning for the 50% return, we have, each teacher for each class has multiple grade books, and I know that is probably a giant headache. And so I guess my question is, what are we, I don't know if this is for you, Mr. Mulgrew, maybe it is, what are we thinking of doing to, to address that? Is there something that can be done? If there is something that can be done, are we looking at it, and when would be, we'd be looking at maybe trying to leave it? Or maybe there's nothing that can be done? I don't know.
I'm going to, I'm going to let somebody else handle. Anything that has a lot to do with technology, I usually let one of them handle.
So while, while we're getting someone to approach the podium, let me just say that probably what you're hearing is they're entering the grade in Canvas, and then they have to transfer that over into the grade book. So much in the same way that they would normally put a letter grade and other information on a student's paper and then have to enter that in the grade book. So they've always had to enter, they've always had to make two grades, but it's just the fact that now, instead of doing it on the authentic work, they're doing it in Canvas and then transferring that to the grade book. But Mr. Mulgrew, if there's a principal who might want to expand on that a little bit?
Yes, sir. One of the things, in high school, teachers teach five classes, so I could conceivably teach two U.S. history, one world history, and two government. In the case of some of our teachers, because there are students in the grade book that are virtual, 50-50, have special education needs, or are in a co-taught classroom, those grade books are separate, but they're all the same content. So the numbering could be different, or the course sequencing could be different. So for instance, one of my biology teachers, she has three sections of biology. The grade book for biology, hers has 90 kids in it. They're all the same kids, they're all in biology, but it could be first block, third block, or seventh block. So that's one of the things. In that first-block class, there could be co-taught. So there could be 10 kids that are in that section of the course, because it's listed differently in a master schedule, and there could be 20 kids that are in the regular course section, but they're taught in the same timeframe. The 10 that are in the co-taught, the co-teacher is responsible for. The 20 that are in the regular class, the regular teacher is responsible for. And that's pretty much across the board at the high school level. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I know that's complicated. I mean, I know for teachers, you've got like multiple grade books and, you know, and of course, there's always the thing of where you have the actual grade, and then you have to enter it in and make sure you don't transcribe it incorrectly and everything else. But I guess, I guess my question is more a technology question, but is there a way to simplify that grade book? Or I guess it needs to be that way, is what I'm hearing. It's just complicated, because we have kids that are either House A or House B, or all virtual, or special ed, or concurrent, or whatever.
Right. There's four masters within the regular master schedule.
And I don't know if there's any way that we can alleviate, like lessen that burden on teachers. That's, I guess, my question. But maybe technologically speaking, it just has to be that way. I don't know.
The one thing I'll tell you that we, as high school principals, have done is we've brainstormed and shared best practices. For instance, something that Mr. Martinez says works at Forest Park, then we've tried something that Mr. Matheson says had worked at Garfield, we've tried. We've all shared those, those concepts and ideas and kind of tried to be the same across the board.
Thank you. That's great. Should I keep going if I have more questions? Thank you for that answer. One thing that I have noticed is, it has to do, I think, Mr. Mulgrew, you alluded to it, but it's when you take a ninth grader or a 10th grader who maybe doesn't have great time-management skills, and you put them in Canvas with seven courses and all of the different alerts and emails and notifications that are coming out. You know, I have a 10th grader, and he's like, "I get 100 notifications from Canvas a day. I can't keep up." You know, and I totally believe him. And so I wondered if we are looking at council, like some training or time-management skills, because, I mean, I know, I mean, I was a college student a long time ago, and I had five classes that I had to manage. And here we have kind of this virtual environment, you know, it's, it's a lot to manage when you're 14, and you got, you know, you got to keep track of all the things that are due on different days. And even though you're getting notifications, there's just a lot. And I, I guess it's just one of those things. It might, the answer might be, it is what it is, but what can we, are we brainstorming on the principal, you know, principals on how to help kids be successful with that really tricky time-management piece? I don't even know if, you know, should we buy them a desk calendar, a day planner, a dry erase board on their wall to keep track of it? I don't know. Anybody want to speak to that? Because I think that's part of the challenge that I'm seeing with children, you know, in the high school level, not getting assignments in on time, not quite knowing what they're supposed to do.
Sure. I shared with the high school principals something that my administration has worked on. So on our website, we created something and actually borrowed it from Ms. Kane, and we call it the Bruin Tracker. So it's an organization, graphic organizer type of thing, that on the 10th, we're going to be, we spoke today to the staff about it, and we're going to try to have them speak to their students to try to organize their dates. A lot of students are thinking that Monday's a free day and that the virtual, you know, I get up at 10:10, but our teachers are there. We're waiting. And the Zoom rooms are, they're open, and we're just sitting there waiting for somebody to appear. So we're trying to organize them as to how they can approach Mondays, and we're going to speak to them, "What are your assignments? What teacher do you need to speak with? When are they available?" So we're going to try to have our teachers try to help them with that organization, and there's three forms that we have on our website. So it's, it's a link that, you know, staff members can guide the students to, to be able to utilize. Another thing that we're working on, on the assessments, is that, yes, it's, it's a lot to grade, and the Canvas reads one way, and then parents are looking for it to show up in the grade book. And I've been dealing with one situation where the grades disappear. We've been working with SIS, trying to figure out what's going on. We think we finally got that solved today. But we need to encourage our parents to make sure that they're connected to their child's Canvas page, so that they can see what's happening there and understand that the final grade is really what's showing up in the grade book, but it takes some time for that grade to transfer over, so that the parents have a better gauge of where that student is. On assessments, one of the things we're looking in, in the area that you mentioned about NHIs, there are due dates, there are deadlines, there are points that the teachers have covered the material. So what we're doing is, we're looking, okay, you weren't able to get this formative, but we're now at the summative point. So we do break them down into targets, and we're going to see how you do when you take that summative. And when you get that summative on that target where that formative was measured, and we don't have a grade for you, that grade for that portion, we'll put it there. That's what you have. That's where you are today. And if the student still feels that that wasn't strong enough and they want to reassess, in the syllabus we have put down, what are the guidelines for that reassessment on a summative? Yes, it may mean that you're going to have to go back and demonstrate that you understand this. We're not going to give you that grade, because we've already reviewed that formative, and that's like asking a teacher to keep creating assessments after assessments. But when you take that reassessment, if you perform better, we'll go back and change those grades. That's what standards base. It's an accurate reflection of where you are today and not keep going back to, to, two weeks ago or three weeks ago, which creates more pressure on this, on the teacher to be able to, to, to keep moving forward and prepping as, as they go forward. So I hope that gives you an indication, and that's, that's a document that we worked on, and I shared it with my colleagues, and some of them say, "Hey, I like what you put there." And same thing, I've borrowed from them to help situations in my building.
I love that. Thank you. That's awesome. The collaboration is fantastic. Can I ask one more question? Okay. How is the scheduling going as far as getting ready for the return for the second semester? I mean, I know right now it's on the calendar for like week two of the second semester Okay. How is the scheduling going as far as getting ready for the return for the second semester? I mean, I know right now it's on the calendar for like week two of the second semester for the 50% return. But I know one of the challenges that Dr. Waltz talked to us last month was, you know, how complicated it is, the scheduling is for the teachers and the courses and everything else. So I just was wondering if we could, if somebody wanted to speak to it. How is that going?
I think I can give you a demonstration.
I'm assuming.
It's the master schedule of our high school.
Okay. That's a big binder. I mean, I know.
I shared this to Mr. Wilk one day, I think his job, and I went down. He's seen what, how it puts a master schedule together.
That's a great meeting.
Yeah, it was, it's, it's very, the average sized room, let's say, is 600. That's very generous, 600 square feet. 80% of that can be occupied. So that puts it down to, that take away 100, now you have 480 square feet. Every student that goes in there, you're going to give them six feet. That's 36. How many 36s can you get into that? 480. Well, you're going to get about 10 or 11. But the teacher also is a person. So you mean to count them in the 36. So it's, it's trying to master that aspect and then be able to fit the graduation requirements with very strict guidelines on how many students you can put into a given room. And not all our rooms in our county are created equal. Some high schools have larger rooms than other high schools. I'll give an example. I taught at, I think it was room 243 at Potomac. It's a very small room. We got to know each other very well during that year we were together. You can't put as many in there as you can put in other classrooms. So the scheduling challenge is enormous. And that's one of them that we have. And making sure that we can, make sure that our teachers feel comfortable and safe too. Because without a staff, we really don't have a high school. But that's part of the challenge that we have in. There's a lot of math that goes in there. And making sure that we put things, in the video, you'll notice they put tape down at Patriot. That's like the no-fly zone, a bubble. So this teacher feels safe when they're in there. And the only time that you invite Dr. Latif in as a student. This teacher has their own space and that space is, is secure. That's one of the strategies we're using to try to make sure that our teachers feel secure and so do the students. And they'll have it in every, every high school.
Okay, thank you. So I assume that at every school, at the high school, even though you have time still, those schedules are being worked out on a regular basis. So that when we, if and when we go back, well, I'm not going to say if, when we go back, you'll be ready, right? I'm assuming that's, because you have to start now, obviously.
Yeah, this is, I know, Ms. Zargarpur, you spoke to a director one day. It's a very, this is a monumental task to put those together. Lunches become a challenge. Because when you come down there, that 50 requirement not to have more than 50 people inside of a room or the guideline not to have more than 50 makes lunches a challenge. So they might be rolling lunches. We might just keep serving lunch and just, you bring your class down at 10:10, he brings, Justin brings his at 10:13, Dr. Latif at 10:16, and we just keep rolling them right through. That's a challenge. So there's, there's plenty of them on how you would do it. But the scheduling aspect, and I, and I have great faith. Most of them have taken master schedule training. We have quite a few. We have very good guidance. We have very good directors of school counseling who take that very seriously and work hard at it. This is not an easy task to put that together.
I have no doubt. It is one our most gifted students would struggle with. I have one more question. Ideas for how we proceed next year? We know that the pandemic is going to be with us for a long time. We know at some point we need to figure out how to get back in our buildings and, you know, kind of get educators in, in, you know, connection with our students. This is the trend across many school districts, even the large ones. A recognition that, you know, we kind of need to figure out how to move forward in a kind of a longer-term strategy. Are, is this something that principal, this, this powerful principal team here is talking about for, you know, what does education look like? What does our educational model look like next year, next fall, next 2022? I mean, I, I think, I'm assuming this is something that's happening on a strategic level, that principals are thinking about this. We have a brain trust right here, which is wonderful.
Yeah, I think they work, and they talk about things that have a lot. And the collaboration, I mean, there's never anything good about a pandemic. One of the benefits, and I think to a person they'll tell you, is the amount of collaboration that has taken place between them and the sharing of ideas. Instead of a culture of competition, it's a culture of collaboration. Because there's no way you can do a high school job anymore. It's impossible, even before the pandemic. The only way you can do it is when you have a group of people that you can work together and you can take the load off each other. That's, that's been, that's been their strength over the years and I'm continuing. I believe that that's a positive that has come about. I also believe that this technology and many of the things we're going to see here are going to be very good. I mean, when I was a principal, one time a student wanted to take a class that was at Hilton High School, but she didn't have a car. I mean, you could foresee sometime in the future, that student being able to go to the library, perhaps put the headset on and zoom into a classroom. And that could be an option for that child taking that rare class. Now, we've done that a little bit, but it might become more acceptable. Where she can be able to take the one class that she could need. And I can't order a bus for one kid during the middle of the day. And there was, there's a problem, sir. Usually when something negative like this has occurred, and it has, you're going to find there's some, some positives that will come out of it. And I do think that that's one of the things is that we've had a culture with this group. I mean, they, after I get off the meeting, they continue to talk. Maybe that's better when I leave, I don't know. But I'm just saying, in that particular case, in the technology, the more comfortable they become with it, the more comfortable we all see it, the more options are going to be available. Because this is, this is not going away as far as the technology and the technological aspects. I love the fact we were putting in Canvas and the learning management system before March 13th. That was our plan way back and to improve the infrastructure of the, of the, whatever that's called where you're allowed to have more access to it. That was being done before we ever had any knowledge of COVID. So the foresight of our technology people and our superintendent was positive because that was, we wouldn't have been able to just pick up Canvas on March 13th and be able to put it in. Those people had already thought that through long before and saw the benefits to it.
I agree. That was, that was some great foresight and very wonderful. Thank you so much for answering my questions and thank you, everybody, for being here. Really appreciate it.
Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. It's, you know what? It's what it was like when you all walked in. It's like you all turned your screens on. It was great. There's like an audience all of a sudden. So I feel a little more energized with your presence. I'm going to ask some questions that my constituents have passed on to me. So keep that in mind. I'm also grateful to see Mr. Cassidy's here and Ms. Kane. And I don't know if anyone from Colgan is here too.
It was unfortunate. We got a last minute. We couldn't, but we understand.
Yeah, that's all good.
They're going to excuse absence.
It's an excused absence. So these are just questions all over. They might even seem a little in opposite of each other. But my first one is, how do you know if you're ready to go? Are your teachers feeling safe? Do you feel safe to open? First question. I mean, do you feel like you have a plan, ready to open, ready to go? I mean, you might not be here tomorrow, but how, how are you going to make your teachers feel safe? I know that one of you came up here and said PPE and, you know, all this other stuff. We're checking in with our teachers. I just want to know, how are you going to make sure that your teachers are ready to go? It comes up.
I got it.
Yeah.
I think we are ready to, we know what our challenges are and we've identified those quite a bit. And those are the issues that we're going to have to get answers for so that our teachers and our students both feel safe. It's not just one or it's not just the other. They're not, it's mutual.
Right.
In those particular, what do you do when, if a teacher has to quarantine? What's the answer? What do you do? How do you handle that with a calculus class? That, that can be a challenge. Getting the PPE is getting the right, and I use the term poorly. Because everything to me that's COVID-related, I put up as PPE. So do I need to put, buy art bundles for every art student? Because I don't want them sharing exact of.
Right.
To me, that would be almost under the PPE category. So I have to be very careful when I say stuff like that. How do you blow band instruments? You know, I'm watching college football now and I'm looking at the band to see what they have over top of their trumpets instead of watching the game because I want to see, we need that to put over top so that the, the propellants are safe for our kids. How do you do that? And that's where it gets a little bit more complicated at high school because one of the great strengths of Prince William County is we offer excellent courses. We've given people unbelievable choice. And it's very hard to have, how do you do an electricity class where the kids can't share, you know, the pliers? How do you do that? So how, the instructional model will dictate what we have to try to prepare for. We do know those challenges. We know the lunch challenge. We know the bus challenge, those types of things. And those are significant. But that 50 number is big. If everybody would wear masks across the county, maybe we could get that number and we can get into a better phase. It'd be terrific.
I just, I think it's, there's a lot of stuff that goes on. We have the, social media is great, except for when it's not. And so sometimes what happens is we get information from Facebook or Twitter that may or may not be what we're looking for. So I would love it. I mean, as an education professional myself, I have already checked in with my principal and I know all the reasons why going back for me is going to be okay. So I would, just as a teacher, just please communicate to your staff in all the ways that you know you're going to be able to keep them safe. Because that, that's a big, huge, huge deal right now. Another question I have is, now, some of these are coming out of constituents. Has there been any, a lot of people who, when they write to us, they will, they will be expressing their biggest frustration. So I never hear what goes really well because they're happy. But the people who write to us are often telling us that their kids are spending way too much time in class. They're spending way too much time doing extra work. And I know you've already covered some of this. So I'm, I'm going to assume that that's starting to get better. And, and I know you can, you already were proactive in your school. So I know that there's, there's things going on. Has there been any surveying? Has any, have any of you done, even like little ones just within your own school, asking how parents and students feel about the work? Ah, he's like, "Yes, I have, I have, I have." So surveys, just to be able to, to check in with, with the parents and the students to make sure those workloads aren't just the one person who's complaining, or maybe there are things across the board that need to be addressed and how you can adjust and pivot from there. You talked about CLTs. So I imagine this is stuff you'll cover in your CLTs. But I'm just curious if you've done any surveying in your schools. They're all nodding.
So let me add to that. During my pandemic update, which I think is the next item on the agenda, I'll be discussing a survey that we'll be doing to speak to those very things division-wide. So we're getting the same information across our school division from all of our schools.
Oh, good. Thank you, Dr. Waltz. Then I guess, then secondarily, there were some people who reached out. And I know, Dr. Waltz, you gave the gift of time, a little extra time to get some grades in and get some work finished up. But what's going to happen to the students who didn't quite get there? Do we, do we have a plan for that as well? Look, you're nodding. You should tell us these things. Come on up. So, yeah, so there are some parents who are very concerned. There's, they're parents of kids who are getting like A, B, F, you know. And so it's that one class where somehow that kid's underwater. They're not that kid. But what, what's going to happen so that we can catch people up or whatever?
Yeah, absolutely. I guess I learned my lesson to make eye contact with the speaker, right? Just teasing. But no, absolutely. We, you know, not speaking in specifics. I know every, every one of my colleagues will implement a little differently in their building, but certainly we all pay attention. We monitor data. So at the end of this first marking period, we'll be looking at, you know, students who are struggling in one or multiple core classes so we can target supports and additional assistance and, you know, utilize not just teachers, counselors, other support staff to connect with those families and see what additional supports they need. Is it more structure, et cetera, to help, you know, access to office hours and whatnot? I know that myself and along with some of my colleagues have conducted either like surveys or student focus groups to kind of understand, you know, what's going on, what are the needs of the students and to kind of make kind of big picture understanding of, of, you know, what might be some good next steps. But we are very much all thinking about, talking about, how do we connect and support the students who are struggling? Especially as we get first marking period data. So we'll be looking at that. And then I'm sure it'll be topic of conversation among us about what supports, you know, are working and how we're, you know, most effectively assisting those students.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a bunch. Just hang on. So has there been any looking, and I know you, it's not really apples to apples, but have you been able to look at like last year at this time, we only, we had this many kids struggling? And this year, I imagine that number's a little different. So they're not, people can't see they're nodding when I asked, I kind of asked that. I had a constituent who was curious as to whether you're going to look at the data from last year and the data from this year and how that's going to inform decisions moving forward. She's worried that there's a little more negative going on right now currently. But it sounds like that's kind of what you're already looking at. Okay, another question. Mr. Mogru, you and I've had these conversations, but I have parents who continue to ask. We do have sports. I've been invited to watch Hilton's football team and they look amazing. So, and, and they look happy and, and one day they were just kind of self-organizing. It was great. But, and I know there's a number of 50 kids. We can't do more than 50 people. If I were a marching band director, I'd be like, oh, let's do flutes and clarinets. I don't have 50 of all of that, so we can go out. So is there being, is there any talk about adding other extracurriculars that can meet in person or in that sort of hybrid model where some people zoom in and some people are there, using concurrent activities or something? For not just sports, but for also maybe academic groups, maybe musical groups or something where, where the, you know, the teachers are going to make really great decisions about how to spread all this stuff out and run it. But are we able to do those things? Because if we have to wait until the second semester to get our secondary kids into the buildings, one of the, one of the big concerns from parents and students themselves is that they feel like they don't have the same level of social interaction. Online's great, but I told you, when y'all just walked in, I was like, "Oh, be still my heart. I'm so glad you're here." So it does matter to some people, right? So are we able to do any of those things? And when can we and how can we?
We, we were even just.
Mr. Mogru, if I could just interrupt for just a moment. So I'll be speaking about that during the pandemic update as well. Athletics in particular, and then about some of the clubs starting. But Mr. Mogru, if there's anybody that maybe wants to share how some of this is beginning, I'll cover the athletics piece. But if there's somebody that maybe wants to talk a little bit about some of the clubs that are starting up.
Richard, you got something?
Thank you again. So we have, obviously, in a virtual environment, done a lot of virtual activities. Some of the things the students have done, and you can see some of the videos that kids have done, may require them to come into the building. Our SALC has painted our rocks outside because obviously with the name change. And we are getting you all gear for Unity Read, so it should be coming soon, if it already hasn't arrived. But most of it is virtual, obviously. But we're looking forward to starting to bring back some of that. But we have things like Key Club. We have a Student Law Club. We have, like I said, the Leadership Class and a number of other organizations that are currently taking place. And students are eager. I know I meet with focus groups. As Mr. Mathon said, you mentioned ask about, I did a parent survey, student survey. We're doing planning council, advisory council. So we're getting a lot of good data from our teachers. And obviously, first marking period, we're going to be looking at our struggling students and seeing how we can support them. We are also starting at Unity Read, two hours each night for each subject area. Like one night, English, one night, math, science, so, and evening study group so that students can get additional help if, so a teacher would be live at night because many kids work or many kids may need that extra time in the evening. So we're eager to get some things going when we can safely. So thank you.
Thank you. So really, the last big thing I wanted to just find out a little more about. Mr. Mogru, you mentioned power standards. And I know, listen, I know we aren't getting any breaks from Betsy DeVos at this point. And we may or may not get any breaks from the state leadership on what we can do with testing moving forward. And I know that your content is this big, but our time is this big. That's, that's already going to cause a problem. So I'm interested in a couple, because it's going, she's going to ask a question real quick after it's related. So we planned that. So I'm curious about, and I know that's, that's, teachers are professionals, the principals, everybody's going to be working in these CLTs to make sure that this stuff is being covered. But with, with that in mind, since we're already sort of in this weird place with, with standards and how all of this is, is working inside this COVID space, as we move into a 50% model, I'm not, I'm not so sure anything's going to really change. I'm not, I'm not so sure anything's going to really change in terms of that, right? Are we still going to kind of have to deal with, there's some time issues and things like that?
We've never done a 50% model before, but I, to be honest, it's, um, but I would, we're going to prepare as though we're going to have to make sure that we teach, quote unquote, the power standards. And this work is being done also in conjunction with the Office of Student Learning and Accountability. I mean, the math department's already adjusted the pacing guides for our teachers and it was very well received. We're appreciative of that. Because sometimes when you're a brand new teacher, you don't know what the most powerful standards are. If you remember your first year teaching. Yeah. So it's i- in that particular realm, which are the, the items that maybe you don't have to spend as much time on, but you really need to emphasize on this. So, uh, that's something that has already taken place and we're very appreciative of that. Because to do that in three mains, main areas, it has been significant. And it's very good work for our teachers. And it's, it's a great assistance to them.
So we'll, we'll have Ashley Menavara, the student. She has a question that goes along the lines with Ms. Zargarpur. And then Ms. Jessie, I know your hand's up. You'll be after Ashley. And then Ms. Jackson.
Okay. So it was mentioned that, um, we can't cover the entire curriculum this year. But do you know how this will affect AP classes since we do have those AP tests at the end of the year?
The College Board has not relinquished at this point. I know that our superintendent is very interested in, in maybe the College Board doing that. But I, it would be, and that's the elephant in the room, is if you still have to teach all the way up until Barack, the election of Barack Obama in a US history course, and that's, you have to get there by May 10th, then you got to move through the cur, through the content. That makes it a challenge. It would be great if they would adjust. But we're going to prepare as best we can. One thing I will tell you though, is if you know some of the content exceptionally well, you're going to be very good on the written part, the DBQ part, those types of skill activities. The Trivial Pursuit aspect of it, of knowing that particular aspect may not be as much. But on those content, if you know the skill level and you have in-depth knowledge, you'll be in good shape.
Okay, Ms. Jessie.
Hi, um, first of all, I, I want to thank you for coming in. And, um, you know, when we talked about this 50-50 model and special ed kids and the vulnerable students, the vulnerable people. For me, I see the vulnerable people being principals. And I think that it's important that, you know, everybody say, are you ready? Are you ready? Are you ready? When, all the principals I've ever known have just gotten in there and gotten done. And I know you guys will do the same thing. And I think the teachers will get in there and they'll get it done because that's what we do. But I think that it's also important to realize that, um, and that your teachers realize that, I guess it's, there's a healthy fear for this virus. And I was an elementary person, but the thing that concerns me about high school principals is the number of kids that you have. And the fact that they really can carry the virus and they can pass it on. And I guess my question is that two, there are two groups of kids that I worry about. The kindergartners who love to hug you and they're going to hug you whether you want to be hugged or not, because they forget that they're not supposed to hug you. And they just love hugging you. High school kids, on the other hand, how are you going to handle these social beings who not like kindergartners, but just love to socialize and be close to people? And protect your staff and protect them? How does mitigation? I just see the whole mitigation of keeping kids apart, physically apart from each other as a challenge. And when I looked at the video and saw that this teacher had this ingenious idea of putting the dots on the floor. But then that's what teachers do and that's what principals do. So tell me, what's the magic formula for keeping high school students away from each other, not long distance away, but safely away from each other? What, does anybody have a magic formula or, or what kinds of strategies do you have to keep these kids safely distanced?
Ms. Jessie, it's a good question. I don't think there is, and I, maybe somebody wants to jump in. I don't think there's a magic formula anywhere in any one of those things. The thing that, that, and we've visited different high schools that are doing this type model. I personally went down to a high school near Richmond. And I know Dr. Bishop and a couple others went to a high school in the, more in the western part of the state. And the way they did, it's the old fashioned way. And that's they have good relationships with their kids, the teachers. High school kids get a bad rap sometimes for not listening, being this, and some people are scared of them. If you talk to a kid and you have a nice relationship with them, they're going to abide by what you were saying. It's what I saw when I went down there. I saw teach, students walking on the right. They didn't congregate at lockers. They, they were respectful of their teachers inside of, of the classroom. I believe in our kids and I think that they will, whatever we get to. Now, are there going to be some that are going to be a challenge? Yes, obviously. But I think we can get them to, to, to respect what we did. If you know, if they know you have your best, their best interest at heart, they will listen.
So each, each one of you has a plan to keep them apart, going to lunchrooms and where large groups are not there. So that's, that's part of the plan and there's an orientation process for that, I'm sure.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be having to teach them that you have to walk down to the lunchroom. You have to sit at a table with your class probably. Maybe that's the mitigation. You can't go sit with your girlfriend of three years if she's in a different class. You know, you have to go down there and do that. You can't congregate at a locker. We'll move them through. That's what we saw. Mr. Shiroki was with me. I think you can attest. That's what we saw when we were down there, that the kids, and they understand the seriousness of this. They, they get it.
Yeah. I think the, uh, for me, the difference between Prince William County Schools and other school systems is the number of kids. What is the largest, what, what do you anticipate as, as the largest number of students you're going to have in your building at one time?
Probably Ryan is going to be. I think Battlefield has, do you have 3,000?
Good evening, Board. Ryan Ferrer, Battlefield High School Principal. Yeah, we, we have, uh, 2,900 students at Battlefield. We would expect to have, um, you know, right now we're about 60% who chose virtual, 40% who chose in-person. I'd expect that as we move to the third quarter, it would be, it would shift a little bit and be at least 50-50. So if, if you figure, uh, we'd have about 750 students at a, 1,500 at a time. Or 1,500.
750 at a time.
750, yes. Thank you. Yeah. So it's 750 at a time. We've already done things like looked at our lunches and, and discussed how many lunches that we need. Uh, we do the, we have these meetings with our SSO, with our school nurse, with our admin team. Um, and kind of plan out how many lunches we need, how will we move students? Will we have some kind of directional hallways? In some cases, would we have, um, a staggered release from a class? Where you might have to leave a couple of minutes early so that we can make it happen. But there are, there are several options that we'll be able to implement as we have an exact number. But like for us, we're using that 750 number and that probably would be the highest, uh, in the county. And it, but it is, uh, doable, looking at our different, um, areas that we would have.
Thank you. Uh, I guess my other question relates to the, there was at one point, uh, there was a policy or regulation about letter grades. If, if a student, and it may not, may not be a regulation at now, at this point. But I'm getting concerns from parents where the student was an A student and now he's become an F student, which means he's dropped two or three letter grades. Are you going, is that still a policy? Are you going to be looking at these kids who are just not responding to this virtual model? And I've asked the superintendent about this, that if it's just not working, no matter what, are you going to be looking at those drops in letter grades as student performance? And those students, and are there, uh, do you have some plans in place, strategies in place to deal with that grade drop?
For the superintendent or for me, Ms. Jessie, or both?
Whoever can answer the question. I, I don't know.
We'll look at grades the whole time. I think Dr. Waltz made a great adjustment last year. Um, when we had the pandemic, took care of the grading issue and handled it well. We're going to look at our kids this year very much like some of them have said. And we're going to make the adjustments that are necessary. We've always given credit as the student gets better as the year goes on. So what you look like in the first quarter, it's not who, how you start the, the year. It's what you look like at the end. That's very important. And we're going to give credit.
So Mulgrew, I'm, I'm not sure that, I may have missed, uh, stated that question. The question I'm asking is the child who was a straight A kid and suddenly his grades are dropping from, a parent sent me a copy of the grades and grades dropped from A last year who was a straight A kid, now he's an F kid. Or he's, he's just not responding. You know, we have after-school programs for kids and is there anything in this model to deal with kids who are just not responding and they're, they were excellent students, but they're dropping drastically? I think that was the question.
So, yes, there is an expectation that those students are monitored and that we reach out to them. Uh, Mr. Mulgrew, if you could ask a principal who maybe has some firsthand experience of, of helping some families like that. And again, Mrs. Jessie, I would, if you have a constituent that is in a situation like that, please encourage them to contact the teacher or the building principal or their child's counselor, which all those email addresses are available on ParentView. Certainly if that, if it can't get resolved at that level, you know, let us know and, and we will follow up. But Mr. Mulgrew, if there might be a principal who could speak directly, uh, from, from doing the very thing Ms. Jessie is concerned about?
Yeah. Dr. Waltz, I don't think it's just, I have, I have a, a person that sent that to me, but I think that when parents were in that room, that's what they were telling us, is not just one or two parents. What I heard from parents is that they feel that their kids are just not responding at all, and they're concerned that they were a great student and they're dropping off the side of the earth, maybe, maybe because of the work, maybe because of the technology, but maybe for emotional reason. But I would be glad to listen. And by the way, I'm not going to ask any more questions because I know that I've been around this county for a while and I know you guys are going to do whatever it takes. And even if you are afraid you're not going to tell the superintendent, because I wouldn't either. But I know it's, it's okay to, to say that you're fearful and create an atmosphere where your teachers can come to you saying, I'm just really afraid and can you help me? Thank you. So if you could ask, I'm done.
Sure. While somebody else is, uh, coming up to the microphone, let me just also say how much I appreciate the, uh, high school principals who all have students in their buildings being here and taking this much time. Um, you should be so proud as a board of the leadership of our high school principals. I mean, all our principals are amazing. You've heard from, uh, different levels, but tonight you get to hear directly from the high school and you know, I, uh, it's been interesting. I think, uh, I've appointed all of these, uh, individuals and to their positions and, uh, we've got a good relationship. And I agree with you, Mrs. Jessie. People need to say how they really feel about these things and, and not be afraid to be honest about it. And in fact, these high school principals are so great, they occasionally invite me to their offline meetings just so that they can give me, uh, their direct input. So, uh, much appreciated principals. And Mr. Mulgrew, do you have a principal who might want to respond?
Sure, I, I'd be happy to. I think I can confidently, and thank you, by the way, Dr. Waltz and Ms. Jessie and, and the whole board for your comments tonight has, have been really nice to hear. I think I can confidently speak on behalf of my colleagues when we talk about a culture of standards-based grading and standards-based assessment that we are, uh, building, uh, in our high schools. And what that really means is although, especially in the virtual environment, it's useful to collect, to pull the data at the end of the first quarter, um, and look at, you know, number of Ds and Fs and compare. I think that's going to be very helpful. But at the same time, in a lot of ways, our teachers have, uh, moved beyond, have kind of evolved beyond the quarter system. And, and what I mean by that is if you're learning something and at the end of this quarter, you, you, you're usually an A or B student, but you're at a D or F point. That's not done forever. We don't just move on from the first quarter. And I wanted to share an example that just happened this week and I didn't even have to do it. One of our amazing, uh, teachers had to do it. There was a parent with that exact concern. Kid was in an AP chemistry class, was really struggling. Doesn't usually struggle. And, uh, the parent copied me on the email, but before I even needed to do anything, uh, our teacher, uh, wrote back and said, kind of explained how she looks at assessing students and how assessing student work. And said, don't worry, like, we're going to keep working on this even as we move forward. And I, if I have to go back and do a grade change, I'll do a grade change. And I think, I, 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 you know, said I would come up because I don't think that's just a Battlefield thing. I think that's, um, part of what we're trying to do in all our schools is give teachers the, the ability to, um, not just look at a student's grade and say, that's finite, that's done. So absolutely, we are going to be looking at students who struggle. Whether it's, whether it's their typical work or not, and trying to meet with those families, meet with those teachers, counselors, students, and figure out how do we get this back on track? And the grade is not something that just has to be static and, and set in stone. That can be worked on as the student, uh, gets what they need. This is all new, so some of the strategies are going to be new than when we're in person. And I just want to also add, um, when, when I'm talking about this work, we have some amazing assistant principals who sometimes have some of the hardest jobs in the school division because, you know, a lot of times a principal will get something and we send it to an assistant principal to be kind of the first to uh, really look at the situation. So, um, yes, that work is happening. To kind of make it short and make it brief, that culture of standards-based grading and the work of our assistant principals does make it possible as we are, uh, taking on those situations that Ms. Jessie described.
Thank you. I'm done.
Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. Um, a lot of my questions were already asked. And I know from speaking with principals that they're responsive, reflective and collaborative. And in additional, I think Dr. Waltz is going to answer some of my questions about the clubs during his pandemic update. I just have two follow-up questions. Um, Mr. Mulgrew, could you please explain just really quickly to the public how, um, how powerful standards are determined? Especially how it relates to standards of learning?
The Standards of Learning test has a, it gives you a blueprint for what's being on the test. One of the things in standards-based assessment is it should never be a secret. The assessment should never be a secret. So they tell us, for example, that statistics is going to be this component, this amount of the test. So the teachers would be wise to make sure that they're teaching proportionate. They're teaching, making sure that they cover statistics if it's this amount of what the test would look like. So that's what we mean by that particular one is the powerful. I, I, I think I heard that from Dr. Lane on one of his webinars is where we got the term from. And we do work with our curriculum supervisors who have the expertise in that area. I mean, if you want to know about science, Julia Renberg's pretty, she knows a little bit about science. She does very well. She does very well. So if you ask her those particular standards, she's going to be able to tell you, emphasize these, these things that would be the most powerful.
And then my second question is relating to the delay between Canvas and ParentView. Since we have a public forum right now, maybe we could offer advice to the parents on how often they should be checking ParentView to kind of help with a lot of the concerns regarding grades?
The way I understand Canvas, it is, it is where they place assessments, but the grade book is separate. I, I thought what, what Mr. Guilfo told me yesterday where Canvas has an app, and maybe he wants to exemplify on that. But I shared that with one of the parents that you and I know, and said, "There's an app here that when the student doesn't do his work, you get pinged." To me, as a parent, I would have been very appreciative. I wish they would have had that app when my boys were, and freshmen in high schools. But that, to me, was a very, a very valuable asset.
So you would recommend checking it daily or every other day? I'm just like, to avoid focusing too much on any missing grades? Because I know that, you know, there's also delays sometimes in putting in grades.
Yeah, I would check Canvas as, as often as you can. And to be honest with you, it depends on your child. I have one that would be absolutely up to date on everything. I have twin boys, and the other one I would need to check every 10 minutes. So it's just, it's the nature of what the child and what they do. And they're both equal academic, but it's just the nature of the personality. I think all parents know that kids come in different flavors sometimes.
Okay, thank you. And thank you to all the principals who are here so late. And I'm going to echo what Dr. Waltz said, that, you know, I'm very proud to be part of your team. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, wonderful. So I have some questions, so you'll be here a little longer. But thank you very much for coming, in all seriousness. You all have performed, and your teachers have performed, a Herculean effort to get virtual up and running, and its success, for those it's working for, is, is fantastic. And, and, and the work you're doing on monitoring where we're struggling with it and how we can better it in its continuous improvement, I'm, I'm very excited to hear about tonight from all of you. And so I, I can't tell you how optimistic I am about moving forward with, with our work. I do have some questions, and, and as Ms. Argarpur points out, and please recognize, as chair, I get the brunt of the beatings from all sides, and I get a lot of emails. And so the questions that I have are, you know, theme, thematic from the, you know, the hundreds of emails I get. And I'll start with something we've addressed a little bit, but maybe you can help me with this some more. And our students have consistently on the board brought this up, and that's the workload. And the reason we had this tonight was the concern about workload. And, and I know it's challenging, you have AP tests and you have to get ready for that. But one of the problems I'm having, and my constituents are having, and, and I also have two students in high school like Ms. Wall, is how do I resolve, and parents resolve, the fact that we feel like our children are working much harder, on the screens a lot more, doing a lot more work, but getting worse grades? And I, and I think that's the question that I get drilled with every day. I can walk through a grocery store and they accost me on this. And this is the, it's a real question. How do I watch my child, not just me particularly, do a lot more work at the high school level, on the screen seven, eight hours? Because the work that they're required to do is required to be on the screen as well, over and above what the screen time is with teaching, and then they still do poorly? It's a good question. It's a one that we'll work with the kids. I don't know, if it's a freshman, if the student you're describing is a freshman? It's, it's across the division, as you heard Ms. Jessie point out. And, and we want to make it clear, you know, it is not a one child off one problem one of you can fix, right? It's a theme of emails that we get and we hear from parents. You know, it may go to the heart of, somebody asked earlier, "How many Fs are we giving out this year compared to this time last year?" And I've heard from a number of folks that we're giving out a lot more. I think in some cases, the answer is yes. Freshman transition is very difficult. It's not just freshmen, but, but yeah. Freshmen didn't transition to a building with 2,900 kids is difficult in a non-pandemic year. So we do understand that we have to treat our freshmen, and we have to watch and guide them and try to monitor how they're doing. That is true. In the other cases, it is, it is just, that's the avenue that the student is going to have, and he's going to have opportunities for the virtual tutoring. I'll be honest with you, I think it has a lot to do with time management. I do. I don't know. The old rule applies. If I'm teaching a class and I, it takes me 10 minutes to do the problem in a history class, I'm going to give the student 30. He's in an AP class, 35 or so if he's a sophomore, and maybe 40 minutes if he's a freshman. Now, that's how I'm guiding the, the workload issue. Because I take my own test, I take the problems, I do the homework, and I figure out how long does it take me, and I give them four times as much or three and a half times as much, and that's how I guesstimate. Some students are taking a lot longer to do that particular aspect. And that's the part that we're working on right now. Because I would tell kids, when you gave a test in AP, it took, you know, it took me 20 minutes to knock this out, I'm going to give you one hour. That's just a guide on what it would look like. That's my estimate on how long it should take you to be able to accomplish that task. That's the oldest rule, it's been around for a while. It may vary, the, the times may vary. But some students are not having problems with it, but some are having astronomical issues with it. And somewhere down the line, that might be where the issue is. It's that some are just having a disproportionate amount of time. If the teacher says, "I took this and it took me 10 minutes to do the homework, but it's taken Mickey Mogru an hour and a half to do it," then we're going to have to figure out what that issue is. Is it a lack of knowledge in a particular, on a standard, so you have to spiral back and make sure he understands it? Is it just that he keeps having difficulty and he needs the reassurance of a teacher or reassurance of the face in his eyes? And he needs that reassurance and that nod to keep moving? Some 14-year-olds need that. That's a good question to ask, it's a very good question. But it's going to be on an individual basis, because I might have a class of 25 and 20 are hitting it, and they're doing it within the reasonable amount of time, and some are having more difficulty with it. Yeah, I mean, and so that's fine, and, and, but I, what I'm hearing, again, on the individual basis, I understand, but I'm hearing regularly, the class average was 50%. Class average was 70% on this test. And so that, that's where I have some real concerns, you know? If they're spending this much time and I'm watching them, and, and parents are telling me they're watching their kids study harder and harder, and they're getting worse and worse. And I think, you know, you don't necessarily have to answer this tonight, but that is something, as you all sort of, you know, mentioned earlier, that is something that, you know, I'd, I'd love to hear more about, or, or as you all think about this. The, the, you know, the screen time they're on is three, four hours a day, whether synchronous, asynchronous, they're watching modules, they're learning lessons, they're doing this. Then their assignments are requiring them to be on screen time. How, how can we have more teaching and learning happening during the class time so that students don't have to do the extra hours on the screen? I mean, have we, have we given any thought, is there, you know, can there be more breakout room sessions, which work great because you get to socialize a little bit too? There's some more interaction? Can those, can we have project-based learning sort of, you know, that doesn't require screen time, that maybe project, you know, may, maybe it's interactive? But, but are we looking at ways to reduce screen time? Yes, we look at all of it. Project-based learning is going to be what the future's going to look like and how the student can, it's already being done on these. These SOLs nowadays look nothing like what they used to look like. These are much more, they're application, multi-step, that's what the children are doing. That's where the, everything's heading for. So we understand that aspect, and we can encourage them, we can demonstrate. Sharing instructional videos is a great way too, because the, the biggest problem with project-based is the teacher having time to set it aside. But if, if you can help me teach a derivative, and I don't have to spend time doing that, I can spend more time trying to develop these project-based lessons that you're asking for. So just the sharing of the, of the videos and the asynchronous stuff is, is important. But yeah, we're going to look at everything that we can possibly do to make it better for students on the screen time, and that's what, and, and there's no question. And the assessments that you can do, and you can say, put kids into a breakout. At the beginning of this, we even worried about putting kids in breakout rooms. Because a student could go in there and Dr. Latif could act inappropriately. Do you know what I mean? And I'm not there right with him when he does this. But we've tried, we've jumped through a lot of those hurdles trying to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do to make it as best as possible. We've been doing this for 35 instructional days? I'm thinking 40? Right. I don't even know if it's that many. I'm sure you probably know. Yeah, so, so any, any best practices you guys hear about or you're working on, or that maybe folks here around the country on reducing screen time? The mental exhaustion that comes with being on the screen that long? You know, as a physician, I'm getting drilled with complaints on screen time. I'm an eye doctor, so they're, they're coming. They want IEPs written. You know, they, they're telling me, "Look, I, I can't be on the screen like this." As Ms. Jessie pointed out, no matter what the kid is doing, he's spinning his wheels, and it's just not working. It doesn't work, virtual's not working for me. Whether it's screen time, whether it's the exhaustion. And, and so tho, those are the concerns we're hearing. You don't have to have answers tonight. But those, those are, those are the reasons why we're really concerned about the workloads. And, and again, it goes down to the heart of, like, I'm watching him do more work and he's flunking more. And that's the concern. And, and I don't know, you know, how we resolve that. That's not a permanent condition, Dr. Latif. I hope, I hope you're right, Mr. Mogru. I hope you're right. Let's go to, one of the biggest criticisms that I received even from some of your own folks is that there was no training for the concurrent teaching model. You showed us a video here where there's some type of training. Can we tell the teachers at the high school level there will be training for concurrent teaching? I do believe we have that scheduled. Yeah, I mean, but so, so I won't, I won't receive any emails from, from teachers telling me they're not getting the training they need for concurrent teaching.
So let me just add in there, and I'm going to give Ms. Goss an opportunity, because we have state-of-the-art training that is available and is being rolled out. Ms. Goss?
Absolutely, Dr. Waltz. Dr. Latif, we've had training that's been going on since our, actually, our summit that was held on October 12th. We've pushed out a number of training sessions that teachers can take regarding the concurrent model, and we continue to add more, more sessions to that. In fact, we've hired well-recognized experts that are helping our teachers. They're not only from higher education partners, but also folks like Caitlin Tucker and others who are or will be providing additional training to teachers. So that, that training is available right now in the professional learning catalog, and folks can access it and sign up for it there. They can also access a number of courses that are also in Canvas. So teachers can go into Canvas and access professional learning directly from there. We've held, I believe we've advertised 47 sessions for our teachers, and so that, that training is readily available. If, if a teacher is emailing you now that they do not know about the training, we've sent that out in a number of ways, in the communicator, in the admin instant. It's been posted on, on Canvas. So we're certainly happy to assist the teacher who's been unable to find those courses or take advantage of those courses. And if you would forward those emails to me, I'm happy to have my staff work with that individual teacher to support them further.
And the principals are all aware of the training that's available, correct?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, excellent. So I don't have a too, too many more, because there was a lot answered. Counseling, college counseling, how are we doing with that with our students? This is college admissions season and application. Yeah, the, the senior checks should be done. They should already begun the process of having college admissions. It's, it's a different animal doing it virtually, but that was already done. Usually within the first 30 days of school, we have senior checks done. And then we find out if you're early admission to a particular school or if you want to go regular admission. Obviously, early admission is going to be somebody we're going to jump on right away because we need their stuff faster. And they work with it very well on getting those things taken care of. Excellent. And, and last, you know, I, I think Dr. Waltz, I know, is going to talk about this during the pandemic time, about the sports and the clubs. Oh, and then, well, let me, let me go to Ms. Jessie, and then it'll come back to me. Ms. Jessie? Unmute, Ms. Jessie.
I've got, I want to piggyback on your concern about the concurrent training. Are you saying that something that is going to be required for every teacher in Prince William County, the concurrent learning, they have to go to a catalog and get the training? Or it would seem to me that there would be some type of a rotational schedule to ensure that every teacher in this county who is required to do concurrent teaching is, has a day of training or, or half-day of training? So I'm a little bit concerned that, because teachers, the thing that teachers are telling me, that they're very concerned about it, they think it's too much. And so I guess, Rita, Ms. Goss, when you said there's a course, you can go to a catalog, I just assumed that every teacher in the building is a new thing and we're all required to do it, that they're all going to be trained in a systematic manner. Am I, am I wrong on that?
No, they are going to be trained, Mrs. Jessie, but we're offering sessions at different times, and we're offering them in different ways. So, so we have, we have different courses, and we have different instructors. And we're offering, like I said, we've had over 47 sessions. We have a lot of teachers, they can't all take it at the same time, so we offer it at different times. And where they find that those sessions are in the course catalog, that's the normal way that we track how, that, and we can verify whether folks are getting the training and taking it. And that's how teachers get credit for their recertification and, and other pieces. And then we've also put it in convenient places, right? Because we are in this virtual setting, we're offering the training to teachers in a variety of formats so they can work it around their schedule and the way that they learn best.
So I guess my concern, Ms. Goss, is that when something is required, everybody has to do it, it's a non-negotiable, and the training comes to you. So I'm just wondering, and it's not a criticism, I'm just wondering, why are we not going from school to school and making sure that every teacher in Prince William County has had this training and that they're ready? So why are we not taking the courses to them or a day of training and overview and, or something at every building level? That's what, that's my question. Is that happening?
So we have provided training like you're talking about. So we've, we've trained the, the principals, and we've provided that at the recent level meetings for, for elementary and middle, and we will be providing that training to the high school principals as well. And then all of our teachers are expected to take this training, and that's why we have so many different sessions that we have pushed out for folks to take advantage of. And so, yes, the, there is an expectation that teachers will take the training, and we are attempting to provide that in a way that all of our teachers can access that. As you know, our schedules are different at different schools. While we have Mondays that are for professional learning, we also have other business that takes place on those Mondays. So certainly, principals can have their teachers all take it at the same time on a Monday, but also teachers can take it at different times. Like other professional development that is expected for teachers, that would be part of the, the supervision of teachers at the building for principals to ensure that those teachers, that all of their teachers are getting that required or expected training.
Ms. Goss, I'm, I'm going to stay with this because teachers are very concerned about this. We're requiring them to do this new type of teaching. And I'm just kind of wondering why every, yeah, I remember back, you know, back in the day, I guess, when there were certain things that we had to do, all of us were scheduled to go to a building. I remember going to Garfield for Pat Donahue. Was it Pat Don, remember that? Every one of us had to go to Garfield and be trained in that eight-step process. So I'm wondering why we're not taking the training to them and ensuring that every single teacher is trained in a systematic way instead of saying, "Well, we're going to leave it up to you." I just, I'm just concerned about that. Because I think- I just, because I think Dr. Latif is right, that teachers are saying they're not trained. And are principals being trained to train the teachers? Are they training us to, no.
So Mrs. Jessie, uh, like about the equipment, so just speaking about that. Every school has an ITC, an instructional technology coach. Um, those, those instructional technology coaches are being trained around the cameras and the other equipment that's going to be used. Um, and they will be, um, turnkeying this training at the school. So all, all teachers will be getting that training. They will be getting assistance in setting up this equipment and working with it in the classrooms. Uh, then additionally, you know, the type of, uh, professional development that I'm referring to is also around the planning, um, for instruction in this environment. The, the classroom management, right? Managing the groups of students, the virtual and the in-person students. So, um, there's really kind of three-hundred-and-sixty degrees of training, uh, relative to this. Um, there's the technology piece. So you're right, um, around Pat Donahue. When she was, um, working with instructional technology at the schools, um, everybody got training. So that also will be happening. So those instructional technology coaches will be supporting teachers in that way at every school.
Uh, Ms. Goss, I think that's really important because Dr. Latif is correct that they are concerned, and at elementary, I've seen a lot of middle and high school people with these cameras that they're playing around with. I, I'm hearing from elementary, or am I wrong, that they don't have the cameras in their building so they can play around with it. Is that true?
So, Mrs. Jessie, yeah, um, I can't actually speak to who actually has the cameras. Maybe one of the level associates, the elementary level associates can speak to that better. Um, I haven't been on the ordering end or, or that piece of it. But, um, certainly probably one of the elementary level associates can speak, um, about that.
I'd like to pivot to Mr., pivot to Mr. Gilfoyle, who has the timeline on the camera arrival. Let's remember that, uh, we just got authority to order those more recently. Mr. Gilfoyle, please?
Yes, good evening. Um, as you know, we did get authority just about three weeks ago to do that. Um, and at the scale at which we're ordering, obviously, we're, we're competing, um, to get those as fast as we can. Um, for the elementary schools, we are having, they should all be in hand by the end of this week. Um, we have prioritized K-three first, um, and, uh, all schools will have all of them by the end of next week. Um, so in total, we will be delivering, um, close to, um, well in excess of eight thousand, um, cameras and headsets. So there'll be plenty, um, in every school for the instructional staff. Um, we recognize for the kindergartners, it's a tight timeframe. Um, but again, they will have it this week. And then obviously for those that are phasing in, they'll have more time to be able to get accustomed to those tools as well as, um, all the instructional pieces that Ms. Goss was talking about.
So they don't start getting those cameras until later? Am I, didn't we say at one of the meetings, Dr. Walz, or one of you, that they actually don't start the concurrent teaching until second semester? Or am I right? Or is everybody starting at the same time? I'm sorry to take up this time, but it's just.
So, the concurrent technology will be used by those that are going to be in person. So that, at this time for starting next week would only be, uh, pre-K and K. And then moving forward, it's the timeline that Dr. Walz, um, has worked out, um, with you all that I know, um, that you all voted on last week.
And it will also be the students who are in person now. That, that equipment will be available, uh, to them as well. And I'd like to call on Mr. Bixby, uh, because he, he's got a couple of success stories on the training. Please. Mr. Bixby?
Thank you, Dr. Walz. Mrs. Jessie, um, you know, at the middle, at the middle school level, we're, we're working, um, systematically to put in place and scale up all the training our colleagues from student learning and professional learning have already developed and identified. In fact, tomorrow at three o'clock, my, my nineteen principals are meeting. Two of those principals, I have put together a presentation, um, pulling together all of the great things that student learning and professional learning have already put in place so that we can systematically make sure that our principals implement all of this over the next twelve weeks before we have to put this in place at the middle school level. So it doesn't surprise me that some of our teachers, if not most of them, aren't comfortable yet because we're, we're just rolling this out now, and they're not going to face the youngsters for twelve weeks. Now, the, the kids that we currently have Tuesday through Friday, we have teachers already working on this technology. They've gone through the professional development, and they're also going to help us scale it up. So we're all anxious, but I assure you, um, that all of us will work to make sure our teachers are prepared in a systematic way.
As long as we guys can find a way to take it to the teachers, uh, some way to do that because they, they've got a lot on their plate. And, and to have to go out and take a course and, yeah, that's, that's, that's just my only. How do you guys want to do that? That's just a concern that I have.
No, we're going to get them into the buildings in, in a measured way. We're not going to bring them all in together. My principals are already working, as are my colleagues at the elementary and high school level. They've already brought people in, or they'll bring them in a little at a time. The last thing you want us to do is to bring a hundred staff members in on the same day. Trust me.
I agree, but that's not what I'm hearing. I don't think that's what Dr. Latif is hearing either. People are saying they're scared because they're not trained, they haven't seen the equipment. So. But, but just, what, what if you guys just fix it, okay? Does that work?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm done.
Okay, so I'm going to, um, did you have a question on the same issue? Or we'll go to Ms. Zargarpur, then I got Wallen Williams.
Okay, so two things. One, are these concurrent trainings content-specific? Because people who teach PE or music or art or chemistry are going to have one way of having to do stuff. And then an English teacher, a math teacher, a social studies teacher are going to have maybe other things they can do. So is that, is there differentiation between the trainings?
I would think that the, I think some of the training would be universal, but then we would adapt it to the content. I think, I think most of the high school people are going to be bringing in people and letting them experience. Because you can be trained on something, but for me personally, it takes a couple times till I start to feel real comfortable with it.
Okay, this is not a high school question, but, um, so some of, uh, the people in the audience who are watching, um, just messaged me. They are elementary teachers. They don't have any training. They don't know of any training. They have not been told of any training, and they have to go in next week. So could somebody tell them where they're supposed to look or what they should be expecting? Also, if you are, um, just because this is my area of expertise, if you are an elementary specialist, you teach music, you cannot teach in person the same way you've been doing online. So that's fundamentally different. If you're an art teacher, you can't teach the same way because you're going to have to do what, you're going to have to plan your lessons with the art supplies that your kids at home have, not at the stuff you have available in your school. So, and PE, what are, they have to be like ten feet apart. So, so this concurrent model is going to look different for those people versus the kindergarten teacher, her, him or herself. So, um, but I'm getting panicked messages going, "Can you ask? Can you ask?" So I did.
Ms. Goss, um, and I don't know if you want, um, anyone else to assist from professional learning, from professional development?
Sure, I'm, I'm happy for, for, um, Lamarr Cologne and, um, Mrs. Taylor to, to add in to this. So, uh, Mrs. Zargarpur, um, if, if we have a, those teachers are emailing you that they have, or texting you that they have not, um, received any information, um, in the communicator or, um, through their, you know, in any other way that we've pushed out that messaging. Um, again, I, I, if you would encourage those teachers to please reach out to us directly because, um, we have, uh, pushed out a number of messages more than once, um, out to teachers. Uh, we've sent it to principals multiple times. We've spoken to, to principals. We certainly don't want teachers feeling panicked about going back, um, next week with no training. Um, they, they should have been in training. Um, we started, uh, the training, uh, pushing it out weeks ago. Um, so we certainly want to make sure that they, they have all of the supports that they need. Um, we've trained the ITCs, uh, so, um, we would certainly want to work with the elementary level associates and the principals as well. Uh, Mrs. Cologne, uh, and Mrs. Taylor, um, maybe you could also, uh, help folks, um, understand the communication that's gone out. We've put it out on social media. We've done a number of things to ensure that teachers are aware of all of the, uh, training that's, that's being offered to teach. We are expecting for them to take.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, I'm going to Ms. Wall next.
All right, I'm, I'm, I recognize it's really late now. Hopefully this won't be a long question. But it, as Mr. Bixby touched on this, and this is a question that I'd had kind of in reserve, but, um, I was curious what lessons, um, we have learned from our special ed department that has been in the building since September eighth, um, with students that you will be applying, um, as you prepare for the eventual return of general ed students? I, I'm assuming there's some good lessons that have been learned from how that's gone with our special ed students, which, you know, typ- typically would be a more difficult population. But, yeah, what, what lessons have we learned that we're going to be applying for fifty percent return?
Mr. Mulgrew, if you would please, uh, call on one of the principals?
We have one, Dr. Walz. That's a great question to ask. Um, at Patriot, we have about forty-six students who are in school every day. And the number one thing that we found has been successful with them is routine. At this time of the day, this happens. At this time of the day, this happens. And, and the, the scheduling of a routine and the physical barriers on the floor and the, the identification and the reminders of four people in the restroom. This water fountain doesn't work. You can only fill water bottles there. Those types of things they've been able to adjust to, and it's, uh, it's allowed them to have a routine. Uh, Ms. Wheat that was on the, the board there at the beginning of the video, she's an ID teacher. She's done an outstanding job of incorporating the technology and the routine for the kids. That camera that she had on the, she had it about five days, uh, when they shot that video. So I know there was a concern about training and how this works and how that works. It, it is able to be done. Uh, it takes a little bit of time, but the, the biggest thing is the routine for the kids. That's the number one thing we would take away from this. Hope that answers your question.
That's great. So I'm assuming then when you start bringing in House A in January or February, you'll do the same kind of thing, like, "Heads up, guys, this is our new routine. This is how we're doing things," and just move from.
Yes, ma'am. And at the two places that we visited, that was the number one takeaway from both principals. Um, you have to remember, it's only twenty percent of the kids. It's not going to be everybody. And then everybody has a place to be. So if my seat is here in the lunchroom, that's where I sit. I don't go somewhere else. I have an assigned seat. And it, it took them about five days, they said, and the kids settled into the routine and they were fine.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for that feedback.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so, of course, I, I look forward to as we, um, get closer to having students return to the building for high school, um, having a, another update at that time and more information on lunch and how the staggered bus arrival is going to impact our first period and, and things of that nature. One of the things that was not covered this evening, um, that I hope upon your return, because I definitely will be asking for this, um, is that we can discuss a little bit about how student discipline will be handled. Um, the difference between student discipline at a high school level for our virtual students versus our in-person students. Um, the type of conversations that we're having with our t- you know I'm asking this because it's always, it's my thing. The type of conversations that administrators are having with, um, different staff in the building, right? Because one teacher can perceive a student's reaction one way versus another way. What type of, um, guidance that our students are going to get, um, and our teachers are going to get to deal with that, that type of situation, right? Um, like Ms. Wall just said, or, like we all know, you know, you were saying you visit a school. It may take five days for an ex-student. It may take one day for another student. Or, you know, these type of situations, I'm very interested to see how we're going to, as a school division, um, have, have these handled at a high school level. Because I know high school's already very interesting. It's sort of its own unique thing. Um, and then, um, I, I am curious to know too, um, Ms. Zargarpur brought up a very good point. I know that we do have lots of training available, but I think one of the things that we don't hear about in the public is when our teachers are going to get trained, not necessarily through modules. The same thing we're asking our students to do is learn virtually, but when they're going to get that hands-on training. Um, and Mr. Gilfoyle, maybe you can speak to this. Um, initially, or at least at the last meeting, maybe I misunderstood. I thought each of our schooled, schools were ordering their technology equipment. Are you now stating that we did like a bulk order? Um, because I'm really confused about that. Or you just happen to know delivery dates? Like, how, how does that work? Because I was under the impression that each school was sort of ordering the technology that you need that they, um, you know, the cameras and things that they needed, and that would indicate to me they would may, may arrive at different times. But now you're sort of saying that like a blanket arrival for elementary is an X days or, how, how did, is something different going on?
Mr. Gilfoyle, if you could just respond on essentially the overarching things that are ordered centrally and why, please?
Sure. So, yes, with regard to the cameras and the headsets, we, those were all centrally ordered. Um, and that we have purchased well more, uh, plenty for every instructional individual in the school division. And we're managing all that centrally in terms of the shipping and the distribution. It'll be coming straight from the distributor right into each school, and we know down to the day where they're going. Um, we are, uh, daily, uh, prodding those deliveries, uh, strongly. Uh, and so we know exactly where they are and when they'll be delivered. Um, and so, yeah, we will have a number delivered tomorrow. They'll be on the doorsteps of those schools. Um, and then again, um, we prioritize K-three, um, as well as all of the central purchasing for all the laptops as well as, um, a number of peripheral supports, um, that you all have, uh, approved through the cares, which I know will be a, another board update this evening. But all of that has been purchased centrally and managed through my office.
Thank you, Mr. Gilfoyle, and thank you again to all of our principals who showed up tonight. Um, I know it's late for you guys. You're early risers. Um, I look forward to, you know, an, an update as we move along, maybe closer to having our students return in the building. Greatly appreciate all the effort that's going into everything that you have to do and the coordination with the public. And again, while we're just on the topic of high school, just encourage everyone on all aspects to have some patience. Um, Mr. Mulgrew, you spoke about thirty-some days. I think maybe we're at thirty-one instructional days. Maybe, maybe, maybe. Um, and I, you know, it takes thirty days usually for a habit, so, um, I, I just caution everyone to give everyone just a little bit of patience. Students, parents, parents, students and teachers, staff. Always encourage people to reach out to the staff and their teachers if there's questions or concerns. I've heard nothing but great responses. Um, and we still do have that three-day policy on inputting grades too, correct? It's like, I think it's once a week or every three days, something to that nature.
Something of that nature.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, outstanding. So I'll, I'll wrap up. I, um, I want to thank all of you for coming tonight. I, I can't thank you enough. Um, the entire, I mean, our school board meetings are like the highest rated TV, uh, for the last seven months. And everybody is watching us and they're all watching you. As, as principals of our largest schools and our most, you know, all our schools are important, but of our high schools, the public is watching. They, they call us. They tell us about great videos you guys are putting out there, great, great communications that principals are doing. And, and it's really critical. The work you're doing is inspiring confidence in the public as we march towards reopening and bringing students and, and folks back in the buildings. It is critical that you continue to inspire them, and, and we can't thank you enough. I'm going to take a minute to sort of embarrass one of our principals here and, and, you know, and I, and I have to apologize. But it's because of where I come from and what I, and what we do back there. But I have to make a comment here. Dr. Bishop is from my hometown. He graduated from Austintown Fitch High School, which is the rival high school of Boardman High School where I went. And, um, and we had a conversation of, of, a while ago about, um, you know, I, I called and I said, you know, Dr. Walz has done, you know, one, one of the great things Dr. Walz and, and Spark and, and Mr. Iman has done is it's made, um, our high schools the best robotics high schools maybe on planet Earth. Uh, we win regularly awards. Uh, we do really terrifically, you know, when it, whether it's Woodbridge or Forest Park or, you know, Battlefield, Patriot, we, we do amazing work. And, and, um, and I, and I can't thank all of you for doing that. And, you know, as we talk about sports later on tonight and, and our clubs going and, and the robotics, I did talk to Dr. Bishop, and maybe he can come to the mic and just talk a little bit about, you know, he had the best, well, his high school had the best speech and debate program in the state of Ohio. state of Ohio, regularly. And I, while I have you all here, as we move forward, you accepted the challenge Dr. Walz led on with robotics. And I'm hoping maybe we can, we can, as we build out more opportunities for our high school students, consider building out broader, more robust speech and debate programs, which which would rival what I think Dr. Bishop would share with all of you is some of the, you know, gold standard for the nation's speech and debate programs. So, sorry to embarrass you there, Dr. Bishop, but that's what we do from when we're from Youngstown, Ohio. So, yeah, excellent. Thank you all very much for coming. I think we'll move on to the next agenda item. Have a great evening, everyone. We will move on to, what are we on? 1708, update school board's Status of CARES Act expenditures. This item is on for Ms. Jackson and the board to get an update on where we are on spending of the new $15.9 million. Dr. Walz.
Thank you. We'll go right to Mr. Wallingford, please.
Thank you, Dr. Walz, Dr. Lutief, members of the board, and Dr. Walz. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing you to two folks who work deep in the bowels of our organization. Kathleen Addison, Supervisor of Budget. She's also Acting Finance Director currently while our Finance Director is home recovering. And then Mr. Renee Kapassin, he's our Supervisor of Accounting Services. He's been with Prince William County Schools for about a year. And prior to that, he worked for Prince William County for approximately 20 years. Next slide, please. So, the agenda for the evening, this should be about a 15 to 20-minute presentation. First, a couple of items on internal audit and something referred to as the single audit, or we have here the federal audit. Revenue update, I'll be doing that. CARES Act, I'll talk for a minute about that. And then Kathleen Addison will go into a detailed discussion of the CARES Act and how we've spent some of our money. And then finally, I'll do a brief update on budget, the coming budget season and our timeline. Next slide, please. Mr. Kapassin, you're on. So, Mr. Kapassin appears not to be available. I'll continue on with the internal audit. This definition you see is, and Renee, if you're out there, if you're having trouble technically, just jump in when you can. Internal audit, this is the definition of internal audit. We've got, we got this from the Institute of Internal Auditors, IAA. They're the governing body of internal audit in the United States. Internal auditing is an independent, objective assurance and consulting activity designed to add value and improve an organization's operations. It helps an organization accomplish its objectives by bringing a systematic, disciplined approach to evaluate and improve the effectiveness of risk management control and the governance process. Next slide, please. So, in contrast to internal audit, there's something called the single audit. It's also most currently referred to as something as uniform guidance or the uniform guidance. Before 1984, audits for federal programs were actually the criteria for those audits were developed by each federal program, and there was no coordination. So every year there were dozens of audits that were taking place, guided by different bodies, and the audits were being done by different people. In 1984, those audits were all brought under a single program referred to as Circular A128. Okay, this was the initial implementation of the Single Audit Act. And that Single Audit Act was for states, local governments, and Indian tribes. After A128, the Single Audit Act was increased, some of the controls increased under OMB Circular A133. That is what most folks know as an A133 audit or a single audit. And that is for organizations, state, local governments, and Indian tribes who expend greater than $170,000, $750,000 a year in federal funds. One or two more points I want to make about the single audit. The CARES federal funding that we're about to talk about will be covered in this single audit, in the current year audit, fiscal 20, which is currently taking place, fiscal 21, fiscal 22, and fiscal 23. Control testing, compliance testing, and financial statement testing will take place over the next four years. And that testing is done by currently Cherry Becker, our current external auditors. Next slide, please. So, brief revenue update. The board has heard me speak about potential revenue losses in the form of sales tax and our enrollment reductions. And so out of the generals, excuse me, the special session of the General Assembly mid-October, when they finished in mid-October, we learned that our $5.5 million sales tax shortfall was going to be held harmless by the General Assembly. What that means is a five and a half million dollar reduction that we were fearing we'd have to deal with has been, we've been held harmless for. Okay. The second bullet you see here on this slide is a $15.9 million enrollment shortfall. There's been a great deal of talk in Richmond, both by VDOE and the folks in the General Assembly, that we might be held harmless. The result of the special session was that we were not held harmless. And the the reduction that we will experience, which is about $15 million, will be deferred until January. And the one point I want to make here is that while we weren't held harmless by the special session, when the General Assembly reconvenes in January, there will be discussions about whether or not local school divisions across the state will be held harmless for their enrollment reductions. Next slide, please. So CARES Act, a couple of key points about the CARES Act. This, I believe, is the third or fourth version of the CARES Act, the one we refer to as the most current one that's dealing with a variety of COVID-related issues, not just funding to localities and local school divisions. So I just want to hit a couple of high points on on the the three major funding sources that we are receiving funds for through the CARES Act. The first is something referred to as the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. You've heard me use the term ESSER in the past, E-S-S-E-R. Okay, that is the $9.3 million that we received much earlier in the year. That spending deadline is September 20, 2022. That would be fiscal '23. The criteria for spending funds and the spending deadline are both far more relaxed than they are under the CRF funds. And we'll get to that in a minute. The second and much smaller funding source is something called the Governor's Emergency Adoption Education Relief Fund, also referred to, commonly referred to as GEAR. Small amount of money that the governor got as part of the CARES Act that he and the staff at VDOE have provided to local school divisions in the form of grant funds. The spending deadline on that is also September 30, 2022. The criteria for spending is the same as the ESSER money that I just mentioned. Finally, the Coronavirus Relief Fund for states, localities, and school divisions, referred to as CRF. That is the part of the CARES Act that has provided funding in the amounts of, at this point, $5 million, $20 million, the $3.2 million that you've heard us speak about that's going to the BOCs on November 17. And then, most recently, the $15.9 million that we received through the Virginia Department of Education. Next slide, please. Now, this is just a slide that details those sources. ESSER 9.3, ESSER Satisfying Gear, just shy of $1 million. It's about $890,000. Then you see the CRF funding sources. The first one, you recall $5 million from the county. Then we received $20 million from the county. The $15.9 million that we most recently received that you approved at our October 13 joint board meeting. And then finally, CRF funding that will go to the BOCs for approval on November 17. And that's that last amount, $3.2 million. Next slide, please. Kathleen?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Chairman Lutief, members of the school board, Dr. Walz, ladies and gentlemen. I will continue the presentation regarding the CARES Act uses. The first award noticed to Prince William County Schools was announced through a VDOE superintendent's memo dated May 1. The award was $9,324,329. The award period is March 13, 2020, through September 20, 2022. The allowable uses of these funds are outlined in the CARES Act and include, one, purchasing educational technology for students served by the LEA, which is Local Educational Agencies, that aids educational interactions between students and their classroom teachers; and, two, other activities necessary to maintain operations and continuity of services and continuing to employ existing staff. The funds provided, $5,6,093, which was used towards continuation pay for our temporary and substitute staff through June 30, 2020. Also, $4,83,880 for digital equity, providing 9,498 devices to our students. Third, we are required to provide equitable services to private schools within Prince William County. This amount is $234,356. At this time, these expenses have been reimbursed by VDOE and are reported in the FY20 financial statements. The expenses are subject to both the single audit and the external audit, which is currently taking place. The ESSER Satisfying Gear funding. The purpose of the Elementary and Secondary School Relief Fund, otherwise known as ESSER, provides emergency relief funds to address the impact that COVID has had and continues to have in elementary and secondary schools. VDOE awarded set-aside funds to programs and activities that included special education services and support, social, emotional, universal support, and structural delivery supports, cleaning, sanitizing supplies for schools and school buses, facilities upgrade and protective equipment. The purpose of the Governor's Emergency Education Relief, as known as GEAR funds, is to support LEAs that have been most significantly impacted by COVID as they continue to provide educational services to their students. The VDOE GEAR Set-Aside Fund supports VISION, a program for Virginia initiative to support outside of school network. With the assistance of several directors and staff, the Office of Financial Services submitted a consolidated application to VDOE on August 14. After review, VDOE announced on October 2, Prince William County Schools was awarded $897,711. The award is on tonight's consent agenda and will be presented to the Board of County Supervisors on November 17. The award period is through September 30, 2022. The Office of Financial Services will be meeting with private school staff within Prince William County in the next few weeks, since there's a private school participation requirement. The amount of this is $24,580. Prince William County Schools received awards in the following five categories. $330,388 for special education services and supports. This funding provided materials for parents and students learning through virtual or face-to-face instruction. Materials included sensory items, reading and math hands-on materials, devices, supplies, social skill programs, and online licenses. Materials were provided for pre-K through 12th grade parents in a drive-through format at three locations across the division. Second, $64,608 to the Office of Financial Student Services to support the Behavioral Emotional Screening System. Third, $415,215 towards VISION, the initiative to support outside the school network. $50,000 for cleaning supplies, and $37,500 for facility upgrade and protective equipment such as plexiglass and safety barriers. Next slide, please. Allowable uses under the CRF funds include, one, to improve telework capabilities of public employees, and two, to facilitate distance learning. The Board of County Supervisors budgeted and appropriated $5 million on September 22 to support digital equity. This funding provided 11,627 devices to our students. The period of the award is March 30 through this December 30, 2020. The Board of County Supervisors also budgeted and appropriated $20 million on September 22. Once again, the period of this award is March 1, 2020 through December 30, 2020. The $20 million in CRF award provided, first, $15,509,450 towards digital equity. This equates to 36,068 devices for our students. $1,044,000, which is 100 gigabits of school network upgrade. Third, $60,000 for Wi-Fi in our school parking lots. Fourth, $140,000 for Zoom licenses for our teachers. $109,200 for closed captioning for our students. Six, $1,685,992 for the Office of Special Education to purchase materials for special education teachers who are providing services in person and virtually. These items included various online licenses that address pre-K through 12th grade needs, assistive technology, reading programs and materials, math programs and materials, various sensory items, and many different types of hands-on materials that were individually packaged according to student and teachers' needs. They, the materials were provided in a drive-through format across the division. And finally, $1,100,000 to the Office of English Learners. At the last school board meeting, the contract with Lexia was approved. Lexia will provide online learning resources to our EL students, Division Y. Next slide, please. VDOE Superintendent's Memo dated October 9 announced a CRF award to Prince William County Schools for $15,906,398. On October 13, both the board, our board and the Board of County Supervisors accepted, budgeted, and appropriated this funding. Private school equal services is not a requirement of this funding. The period of spending is March 1 through December 30, 2020. So this December again. The CRF funds awarded to Prince William County Schools must be spent on allowable uses. One, PPE, supplies and equipment for staff and students for the use and safely returning to and attending school for in-person instruction. $356,250 was allocated for plexiglass to support 60,000 safety barriers. Two, pupil transportation. This may include bus upgrades and purchases due to capacity restrictions, extra route runs for social distancing. $1,540,000 was allocated to purchase 1477 passenger buses. Third, technologies to support distance learning. Additional student and staff devices need to fully implement virtual instruction and the the remote environment. $8,378,877 was allocated to purchase 8,746 computers for our teachers and academic support personnel. Also, $3,054,820 was allocated for peripheral support. This includes laptop cases, sleeves, power cords, surge protectors, extension cables, H D M I cables, headsets, and conference cameras. Fourth, emphasis on the student population. $2,476,450, which was allocated, was allocated, of which $436,000 to the Office of English Learners to provide 47 professional learning sessions with experts in the field of concurrent teaching and digital, digital learning to educators and leaders during November and December. And I think this is what Ms. Goss was, I'm speaking to her earlier. $1,915,450 to the Office of Student Learning to support all students in a concurrent teaching model. The majority of the funds will support learning in both virtual and in-person and includes eBooks, music lesson software, as well as math and science support. Approximately 25% of this funding will be used to support safety enhancements for in-person learning. $125,000 to the Office of Professional Learning. The need for instructional professional learning across the division has shifted and intensified due to the pandemic. The Office of Professional Learning is currently planning, delivering, and implementing critical professional learning that focuses on teaching, learning, and providing feedback in a concurrent, virtual, and face-to-face classrooms to meet the needs of our students. Finally, $100,000 was allocated to purchase 100 air purifiers, 100 filters, and 50 replacement The school board poll vote on October 7 supported a request for additional Prince William County CARES funding for audiovisual equipment and to enhance virtual learning. The resolution will be presented to the Board of County Supervisors on November 17, and this will go towards purchasing approximately 8,000 conference cameras and 8,000 headsets. For the past few months, the Office of Financial Services has met with directors and their staff and private school personnel and discussed the amount of funding, allowable uses of these funds, and the grant deadlines. The Office of Financial Services reviews all COVID-related transactions to ensure eligibility and appropriate coding. Next slide, please.
Kathleen, thank you. So what you see here is simply a recap of all of the detailed information that Kathleen Addis just went, went through. Thank you, Kathleen. That was very good.
You're welcome.
A couple of points I want to make here. First, the, this is a slide that you've seen. This slide has changed over time and grown as we've gotten additional CARES, C R F awards and the estimated total need column. That first column has changed over time. This, this is an estimate as of approximately the end of June. Okay? The second thing I'd like to mention is that we actually have two awards that are pending B O C S approval, both the 3.2 million dollars and the Esser set aside and gear funding. Both of those go to the B O C S for adoption on November 17. Finally, one thing I'd like to mention is this, this slide shows some of, some of the expenditures that we feel we need to make to get reopened. But I also want to mention that if you recall, in May, we set aside or deferred about just shy of $17 million in capital projects. If you take a look at some of these items, you'll see that we have very little or almost no expenditures, for example, P P E. What this slide does not intend to show is that we've only purchased about $400,000 in P P E. In fact, we've purchased a dollar's worth of P P E, but those funds have currently come from that deferred project account. One or two other thoughts. Kathleen mentioned several times, October, 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 on those awards. With the exception of the first award, the CARES Esser money and the, and the Esser set aside and gear money, each of these amounts has to be spent down by December 30. And it is an astonishing short period of time to actually spend, oh, in the range of 40 or 45 million dollars. Kathleen and her staff and finance have been running extraordinarily hard and, you know, working and collaborating with directors and some of my peers on senior staff to make this happen, to make it happen appropriately, and to prevent us from running into problems in single audit or with the federal government after the expenditures are made. It's a very time-consuming process. So this, I, one more thing I'd like to mention before we're finished and before I take any questions would be, Mrs. Jackson, and I spoke about this topic several days ago, and I just wanted to thank you for putting it on the agenda. I think this is a very important topic as we move forward into the rest of the school year. Thank you. Oh, next slide, please, Jason. One last question that was put to us, and that is the coming budget timeline. And this is, this is a generic timeline. It doesn't lay out the specific dates for meetings, but what it does do is it shares with you the general timing of what will happen. The Revenue Forecasting Committee that I'm part of, that Lisa and I sit on, will begin meeting in the next week or so with folks like John Lehman from the Department of Taxation in Richmond, who does their forecasting for revenues. We'll meet with N A D A, the Blue Book folks, to talk about automobile purchases, the local home builders associations, and other local businesses as we develop our revenue forecast for the coming, for the coming budget year. And we'll also, in early, excuse me, mid-December, mid to the third week of December, we'll be receiving information from that revenue committee and from the folks at V D O E that will help support our effort towards developing revenue forecasts for the budgets for fiscal '22. Next slide, Jason. Thank you very much.
Mr. Stevens, can I see the whole screen with the other members? Any questions from the folks here? Mrs. Argarpur?
Yeah, I'll make this really quick. On slide number 10, there's something listed as air purifiers for $100,000. I thought I was told we weren't going to be getting any, so what, what is this particular purchase? Explain, please.
Sure. The air, air purifiers for $100,000 is an air, an air purifier for each one of the clinics in each one of our roughly 100 schools. And some supporting filters, like Kathleen mentioned, we have to buy the filters with the device.
Thank you. And then there was something that came up, a couple people have asked me about, and I'm sorry, I don't know the name of it, but there was a news report on Channel 4 that was talking about some little COVID detection system. And in that report, they said Prince William County Schools and DC Public Schools purchased this, but I don't know what it is. So anyone, aha. Thank you.
Mr. Chiroki's approaching the mic.
Mrs. Argarpur, what that news article talked about is our H V A C group, our mechanical operations group, have been looking at ways in which we can continually monitor the quality of the amount of fresh air that comes into our schools. Known, the CDC indicates one of its paramount mitigating strategies is adequate ventilation. And the product that you saw is a sense, it's called Senseware, and it's a product that ties into our building automation system where we can monitor via computer controls. And we're able to monitor air particulates that are in the air to ensure that the air is filtering appropriately. So what you saw was just a, a company that was promoting a product, but is a product that we have at least been exploring and investigating, but not on any large scale as we're looking at many technologies that are out there today.
Thank you.
Ms. Jessie?
Just a general question I wanted to ask. For P P E equipment for schools, with all the various budgets that you've provided for us, are principals having to use their own monies or are they being provided with all the P P E equipment and everything that they need?
Mrs. Jessie, two things have happened with regard to that. The first is, we provided a supplemental allocation several months ago to schools and departments in the amount of about $2.5 million. Okay? That allocation, schools and departments are using to purchase P P E through the warehouse. We've also provided some plexiglass barriers and some other items to schools that have been purchased centrally. Not as much of that, but we've also purchased inventory into the warehouse, well in excess of what's going out into schools at this point. So we're, to answer your question simply, we are providing additional funding to schools to purchase P P E through, through our warehouse.
Now, I was told that the plexiglass barriers for the desks were provided for special education, kindergarten, preschool, are you providing plexiglass desks, kinds of items for the kindergarten and for those schools? Will they, will, I'm told that they were, those, those plexiglass dividers came to them. Are they going to receive plexiglass for kindergarten and preschools from the warehouse? Or will they have to pay for them?
They've already received some plexiglass. They'll be receiving more. We put in an order for 15,000 individual plexiglass barriers. We'll be receiving those in the next couple of weeks. Those costs, those, those barriers that we're going to be receiving are the same ones that we received earlier this year. Cost, I, I feel the need to say this out loud, the cost we initially paid was about $24 apiece. We renegotiated and got those knocked down to about, I think it's about $4.75 apiece.
$4, wow.
Yes, a substantial, that's why I wanted to say it out loud, a substantial reduction on that cost. And, and those, those items will be covered by the supplemental allocation that we provided, that, that $2.5 million.
Well, that will be coming. The professional development, two, on slide 10, 2 million for, what are we paying for? I, I know you itemized that. Are we paying for consultants? What, what, it's a huge amount of money. What?
Kathleen, can you respond to those specifics? Yeah, I know you detailed some of them earlier, right?
Yes, sir. $436,000 to the Office of English Learners to provide 47 professional learning sessions. These sessions will happen during November and December. And then also, another $125,000 to the Office of Professional Learning.
How much?
$125,000.
Well, wasn't it 2,476?
Yes, ma'am. $1,915,450 went to the Office of Student Learning. These funds will primarily go to eBooks, music lesson software, as well as math and science support, and then also to support safety enhancements for in-person learning.
Okay, so that, this is not a professional learning activities. These are materials.
Correct.
Okay, so that, that, that made more, makes more sense to me. For the buses, you said you were, what, what are you paying for buses? I'm sorry, just kind of repeat that.
I think it's about $110,000. It was for 14 buses. There are 77 passenger buses.
So you bought additional buses?
Yes, ma'am.
Will the buses have plexiglass to protect the driver?
I don't believe so, but that is something we could certainly find out. Maybe Al Chiroki knows the answer to that. I don't off the top of my head.
Well, if Al's going to come up, because one of the things that I learned really from Al, that, you know, these tier-one teachers can opt out and they can be, you know, at home and teach from home, but tier-one bus drivers and cafeteria workers, they, they can't do virtual teaching. So they're, many of these people who have medical conditions are going to be in a situation where they're going to be forced to work in a modified schedule. So the safety of those people is going to be very important, since the doctors have said they shouldn't really work because of their medical condition, but we can't, they, they can't virtually drive, I guess, that's the best way of saying it. So, but it does create a safety issue. So I wondered about plexiglass barriers, because I think on regular buses, you know, for, in the regular situations, that these buses now have plexiglass. When COVID first came, became prominent, remember, there was a bus driver where this lady really spat on the bus driver. The bus driver got COVID and, and passed away. And so all the buses, I think, now have barriers. So I'm just wondering if that's going to be something for bus drivers.
Ms. Jessie, I can respond to that. There was a state superintendent's memo several months ago, very early in the game, that informed all Virginia public school divisions that the use or mounting of plexiglass in our buses was actually a safety violation due to the federal agency that regulates, and I want to say it's the National Traffic Safety Board, may be the agency, because it's not, the bus is built with many safety features, and by adapting a piece of equipment to a bus that has gone through numerous safety tests, they, they're not promoting that. So we had, we were able to answer that question. Many of our drivers asked because they saw that there were schools that were improvising throughout the country, and the state superintendent provided us direction. So for us, you know, that was one of the primary reasons that we are providing all of our drivers who drive regular ed and special education buses, the ability to be fitted with an N95 mask, to have a face shield, and all the appropriate P P E and distancing to the best of our ability, knowing that they cannot be virtual and they do need to work, we need to provide the safest environment for our drivers.
Anybody else? Ms. Wall?
I'm just looking at my notes here. I had a question about the, so there was discussion about the 17 million that was set aside in capital projects. And then it looked to me, or at least how I heard it, and maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, that, Mr. Wallingford, you were saying that we primarily used deferred funds to purchase our initial rounds of P P E. Is that, am I correct?
We use that, it was, it was, it was about $16.8 million in deferred capital projects. We've used some of those funds to purchase P P E initially, that's correct. We've also used those funds to allow for the purchase of, of the microphones and, and headsets that we hope to get CARES funding to cover at 3.2 million dollars. And there have been some other smaller items, some other smaller dollar amounts, I think primarily P P E related kinds of things that we've fronted with those deferred dollars. The hope is we can backfill some of, if not much of, those funds that we've used from that account. For example, that 3.2 million dollars, we hope to backfill that account.
Okay, thank you. That was my question was, my follow-up question was going to be, can we backfill it? Can we use the money that we get through CARES Act, et cetera, and put it back into those capital projects? Okay, thank you. The other question I had is, I still don't quite understand the VISION from slide eight, and I wrote it down to support outside the school network. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that? What, what is this? Or what is?
Well, VISION, VISION is just the name of the grant, but I think Ms. Annis- But I think Ms. Addison can probably speak to the specifics of that more. Or if not, Mr. Guilfoyle, maybe can speak to that topic.
Sure, I can jump in.
Thanks, Matt.
So that's really the funding for student internet access at home. That's what that came down to. That was used primarily for those hotspots, the take-home hotspots that kids can take home and be able to access the internet from, from home, using those cellular devices.
Okay, thank you. That is much, much more clear to me. That's great. I had another question about the cameras. My understanding was we already purchased, I don't, I can't remember the amount of $8 million worth of cameras and headset equipment. But then somewhere along here, I heard that we were still waiting on some money to be approved, that we were going to purchase 8,000 cameras and headsets. So I was a little confused, and please correct me with my understanding. We already used CARES money to purchase the cameras, correct? Or are we still waiting to purchase?
I think this is one that maybe Matt and I can tag team on. The $3.2 million, that is the, I think that was the final column on that recap slide. That $3.2 million has provide, is going to provide for headsets and cameras. Kathleen Addison, when she was going through this, the $15.9 million, the IT funding, the $8 million amount that she referred to, she also mentioned that there might be some headset purchases coming from that funding. So that may be the confusion that you refer to.
I see. So looking at slide 11, it's the last two CARES allocation columns is what you're referring to?
I don't have the slide in front of me right now, but I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, so portion, the $3.2 CARES allocation that's coming, and then a portion of that $15.9 million was, went towards cameras as well, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Jason. That full $3.24 million, that amount, we've listed here as CARES because we are hoping the BOCs will provide that funding, to try to be clear on it. At this moment, okay, at this moment, we don't have that CARES funding. At this moment, we've purchased devices through our deferred capital projects account.
Okay, thank you. That's good clarification. And then my last question has to do with the deadlines. I know some of the allocations have December 30th, 2020 deadlines. And then some of them have 2022 deadlines.
Actually, if, Jason, if you can put up slide number 11, I think that will help as I explain this. So this is, this is as confusing to us as it is to you, because we've gotten one, and then another, and then another. But what you're going to see here on this recap, the first, the second and third column, the CARES and ESER funds, and then the ESER set-aside and gear funding, those are the two amounts that have spend-down dates of September 30th, 2022. Okay, that provides us a lot more flexibility, and it gives us time to make decisions, that kind of thing. Those funds are effectively spent.
So those are the first three columns?
In fact, cashes out the door. Each of the other four columns, the five, the 20, the 15, and the $3 million, each one of those has a December 30th, not December 31st, a December 30th spend-down date. And if you recall, as Kathleen was going through her detail, each one of those allocations, we were provided budget sometime in October. And so it's an important point that you raise, Mrs. Wall, and that is that we've had to run extraordinarily hard to try and get those funds spent.
Yeah, 5 million, 20 million, 15 million, and 3.2 million. That's a lot of money to spend in a short amount of time. So you're saying the CARES ESER, the 9.3 million, and the ESER set-aside gear, 89, 897,000, those have 2022 dates, but all the rest have 2020? Just to make sure I have an understanding.
You're absolutely correct.
Okay, okay, yeah, that's a lot of money in a short amount of time. Thank you. I think that's all my questions.
Jason, can I take a look at, see who's at home? Ms. Jackson, do you have any question? Ms. Jackson?
Um, well, Ms. Wall just asked my question about payback for the PPE. But I just wanted to say, this year's pandemic brings challenges in building the budget. And it is more, there's like all kinds of expenses that we're not used to spending and various sorts of money. So just thank you very much for taking the time to update us. Ms. Addison, that was very detailed. I really appreciated that. Mr. Wallingford, I'm very grateful for your experience and knowledge, especially during this unprecedented time. I just have one follow-up question, and given this is my first pandemic, and the budget season is going to be very unique and difficult. What is the plan to communicate, you know, with the boards? I don't want to miss a chance to advocate any needs, like any changes or any new information that comes in and from your various meetings. Like, what's the plan to keep us in the loop?
So if you're referring to additional funding sources for the pandemic, we, I think we've been pretty good at notifying you as we've received awards and notifying you as we were planning on, on spending those awards. For example, the last, the last $15.9, I think you were notified at the time we received it, and then when we decided how we were going to spend it. I think this is a two-part question. So if we do receive more funding, and there is a question about, you know, the elections have, you know, the national elections are over, the Democrats and Republicans will get together again and start talking about heroes and heels. They each have their own name. And there is the potential we may receive some more money here in the future from the federal government. If that happens, and when it happens, the board obviously will be made aware immediately. As we move into the budget season for fiscal '22, okay, there are several questions. Like I mentioned in the, in the presentation, the Revenue Forecasting Committee is just about to begin its work here in the next week or so. And I would expect that we will notify you just as we would in prior years as things move forward. If there are any, again, abnormal or astonishing or anything different from the norm, we would make you aware of that as it was happening.
There is the changes in the funds coming in. Thank you so much, Mr. Wallingford. Thank you.
Absolutely, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think we can, I don't see any further questions. We can move on to the pandemic update. Dr. Walz?
Thank you. Good evening again, Chairman Latif, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update on health metrics and our return-to-school building plans. Since school began, PWCS has reported more than 130 positive cases of the COVID-19 virus. Some of those cases have affected individuals currently working or attending school in person, resulting in a number of quarantines. And many of those cases have been for individuals working or learning virtually. It's important to note that as we prepare to bring students back for in-person learning next week, had all those cases been in-person cases, we would have had people quarantined in various times at 71 schools or offices in our division, which is more than half of our total schools. We continue to monitor local health metrics, and the trends are not positive as COVID cases grow locally, regionally, and nationally. Last week, Prince William County entered the red on one of the three primary core indicators. PWCS total number of new cases per 100,000 persons within the past 14 days was above 223 as of Monday. Anything above 200 is considered the highest risk for that particular primary indicator. It is my pleasure to introduce Teresa Polk, Supervisor of Student Health, who will share more information on the health metrics. Mrs. Polk?
Good evening, Chairman Latif, members of the school board, and Dr. Walz. And thank you, Dr. Walz, for your introduction. I will present a brief update on the health update now. This update will just provide you with some information in terms of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Core and Secondary Indicator data, data from the Virginia Department of Health Pandemic Dashboard, and comparison data from the last school board meeting date and today's date, which will, which will include both daily and weekly calculations. Next slide, please. This slide shows the CDC Core Indicators by comparison. And as you can see, we have the information there for the week of October 21st and as of today. And this shows you the core indicators for our particular county, Prince William, the total number of cases per 100,000 within the last 14 days. And in October, on October 21st, we were, we had 188. And now we are up to 234.4 in terms of the total number of new cases per 100,000 students, I mean, per 100,000 persons. And this is over the last 14 days. Next slide, please. This shows you the CDC thresholds for the core indicators. And basically, because of the change, we are now in the red for the number of new cases per 100,000 persons over the last 14 days. So that is the highest risk of transmission in schools. And as you can see, the others remain in the moderate and the low to moderate area for the risk and risk of introduction and transmission of COVID. Next slide, please. This slide shows the CDC Secondary Indicators by comparison. And this is for Prince William and the Northern Region, which we are part of. Now, this slide focuses more on the percent change of new cases per 100,000 during the last seven days compared with the previous seven days. Again, we show where we were as of October the 21st and where we are today. And we were minus seven back in, on October 21st. And as of today, the percent of change for new cases over the last seven days is 19.6%. Next slide, please. This shows you the CDC thresholds for secondary indicators as of today. And again, it just shows you that we're in the higher risk of transmission, being greater than 10% for the last seven days. And the others are much lower. And this shows, you know, the percentage of hospital, inpatient beds, intensive care beds, and the existence of localized community and public setting COVID outbreaks. And that answered that one as no. Next slide, please. This slide shows the Virginia Department of Health Weekly Transmission Extend. And this is the burden and trend by region. Week ending October 17th, we're, again, we are in the Northern Region, and the burden is moderate, and the risk of transmission at moderate community transmission. And as of the week ending October 31st, again, we remain in the moderate burden. However, the, there is, the trend is going up, it's increasing somewhat, okay? Next slide, please. And this slide just is the, the Virginia Department of Ed and Virginia Department of Health Guidance for Schools. And so we remain in the moderate or high risk. And this, these slides are there just to show what schools may use to consider that, what they may need to do based upon where we are. And like, as I said, we are in the moderate to high-risk range now. And this gives you some information that can be used to make decisions about bringing students back. Next slide, please. And this slide shows the consideration from the FACE guidance. It goes from lowest to highest. Again, we are in the moderate to high range, so we are in FACE 2 for mitigation guidelines to consider. And then it shares with you some examples of actions that need to be considered. So this just kind of gives you a little bit more explanation of things that you, that you have to take into consideration as you, as we bring students back to school. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Why don't, why don't we take some questions on this before we move on to anything else? I think, I have a quick question here on slide three, and this jumps on to sort of what Ms. Wall brought up two weeks ago. In slide three, we are still in that moderate risk of transmission in schools based on the implementation of three to four strategies correctly and consistently. It's still circled, meaning we're not able to implement all five strategies correctly or consistently. So have we made any progress in this regard?
Well, I, I would say that we definitely are making progress. I mean, in terms of the five mitigation strategies, in terms of consistent and correct use of masks, certainly, I know you are aware that a certain, a large number of staff were identified as needing the N95 mask. And I believe the majority of the staff members that were identified have already been through the FIT testing and received what they need. Other staff, certainly, I know we had a presentation earlier this week by Mr. Crowe, where they shared with the principals, as well as the other members of our school health resource teams, the PPE that's available and what they would be able to order from the warehouse so that everybody would have what they need. So I think that is, I think that's working well. The school nurses are working with the building principals to ensure that the staff have a good understanding of how to appropriately don and doff, that is, put on and take off their PPE. Certainly, you know, we know that students will be required to wear masks, you know, particularly if they cannot maintain the distancing and as they move about in the hallways, that kind of thing. And I know most of our students that are in school now, the majority of the students are coming to school with their mask on. And, you know, certainly, we do have some students who may not be able to wear a face covering. And if they can't, that is, that is acceptable, if, you know, depending upon their particular situation. The social distancing, I think is, you know, the, the signs are out. The schools have all of the signage that they need, and that should be up in the majority of the schools. So I think that is something that will continue to, the schools are continuing to make sure they have everything in place for that. Hand hygiene, respiratory etiquette. I know that they've got hand sanitizing stations throughout the schools. Certainly, the school nurses are going to be working very closely with staff to ensure that, you know, when possible, we want students to wash their hands with soap and water, as well as staff. But if, you know, during the times they may not be able to do that, they will have the ability to utilize the hand sanitizer. Cleaning and disinfecting, that's Mr. Shiroki's area. But I know we work well together, and his custodial staff, from what I understand, are doing a great job in terms of, you know, taking care of the cleaning, the things that need to be done. And I believe with, it's just happened the election that tomorrow, some of the school, well, today, I guess some of the schools were doing some major cleaning because they had, those were voting sites. The contact tracing is a primarily, primarily a health district responsibility. However, we are working collaboratively with the Prince William Health District in terms of, you know, gathering the initial information that will be needed when we are notified that we have either a staff or a student member who has tested positive for COVID. So I think that those mitigation strategies are working. We, I would just say, we need to really continue to focus on it and to remind everybody and to reinforce the importance of wearing the to reinforce the importance of wearing the face covering, staying six feet apart, and of course, washing your hands.
I was going to add, Dr. Latif, you get me tonight instead of Mrs. Heenner, I'm standing in for her. I did also want to add, the reason why that circle remains where it is for our presentation to you this evening, is still the concern about the six feet of physical distance, and that we cannot guarantee that in all situations, as we look at the numbers of students that could be returning to school in some buildings.
You know, at what point, I mean, so are we ever going to get to that? I mean, you know, because, so for example, we're taking kindergarteners in next week. I'm assuming we have probably, I don't know, let's say, 90 divided by 12, 5, 7, say 7,000, 6,000 kindergarteners? Does that sound about right, across the division? Half of them are wanting to come in hybrid, half of them will be on another day, so that's 1,500 kids across 100 schools. That's like 150 kids or so per school, or, I mean, actually, less than that, I'm sorry. I have to do the math differently. But based on the number of kids coming, because I'm doing the high schools, I can't remember how many elementary schools there are, but can we not guarantee the six foot if we're pre-K and K? I mean, that's really where we should be at by now, right?
Well, it's about approximately 60 of the schools that bring that number back. And then, because it's pre-K and K. And then, it's not evenly distributed from school to school. So, you know, we're going to make every effort to do that, but we'll see who ends up actually coming. The other thing is, you would have to change any number of teaching assignments and classroom rosters if you just tried to figure out some way to, for those eight days, guarantee that they would all be in, that they would all be six foot apart and separate out into more classes.
Okay. Fine. And then, just last, there's a-
Dr. Latif, if you don't mind, I'm sorry if I could just interject very quickly.
Yeah, sure, sure.
That, when you're looking at that chart too, please understand that that is a pre-K-12 perspective. So, we can't move the circle just because we're only initially bringing in two grades. It reflects on if we were to bring all of our, so as we phase more kids into the building, that six-foot distance is what cannot be guaranteed.
So, are you telling me we'll remain at this part, then, as far as mitigation for the whole time? We're never going to move into green on this?
That's a difficult question to answer, Dr. Latif, because all factors have to be considered. And we have to use the metrics we're given in order to make recommendations. So, it's a constant, ongoing assessment of all the factors involved.
Now, Mr. Iman, doesn't it have something to do with the physical space available in some of the schools?
That is correct, Mrs. Jessie.
Some of our schools have very large rooms, and then there are other schools that have very small rooms, and small areas, or cafeterias. My cafeteria was very small, it was always overcrowded. So, the newer schools have larger cafeterias with dividers. So, I think some of those things are not going to change.
Right. But, I mean, I think, can we, so as you point out, Keith, this is for K through 12, but can we, for the K, we're probably at six feet? With the number of kids coming in, in the classrooms, where are we there?
I mean, we'll just have to see who shows up, and how each school manages that. But we're certainly going to make every effort, but we won't know until they come.
Well, we know how many are coming, though, right? Because it's Monday.
Well, we had quite a few people on the, students that were, you know, that had extenuating need to come back in, that there were people that changed their mind that day. And for the most part, it was to continue virtual. But we had some who are doing, did the opposite.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, great. And so, then, you know, I'd like to just point out, there's, you know, in some of the VDH guidance and the documents that I've been reading, you know, one of the guidance documents, and I think it's important for everyone to know that, and I'll get the link to you, but the guidance documents include, and I know they're going to be updating, so if you go to Slide, and I understand the VDH is looking at this to get better alignment with the CDC, but Slide 7, on the guidance for schools, you know, they continue to say, you know, the indicators, so this is from, straight up from their document, "The indicators serve as a starting point to make decisions on what to do in schools, but should not dictate the decisions that school districts make to best serve the individual communities." And so, as we pointed out two weeks ago, you know, this is just one of the, you know, few of the metrics that we're looking at as far as going in. But the CDC continues to maintain that your ability to mitigate and manage the mitigation is still the guiding principle and core indicator for how we decide to go in. So, I just would like to, you know, continue to, you know, emphasize the importance of that.
Yeah, that's, you're absolutely correct. The other thing I want to mention is, we cannot do the six feet, we will not be able to do the six feet on the buses.
Sure, sure, got it. Okay, fantastic. Any other questions on the guidance, the health metrics? Ms. Wall.
So, I understand what you're saying, Dr. Walts, but I just, I want to point out that I believe the language says, "to the largest extent possible," and that is contemplating that it's not going to be perfect all the time. And I fear that we are making the metrics more stringent than they are intended to be, or that they, even that they are. Because the guidance isn't six feet at all times, ever. It's three feet at a minimum, and six feet whenever possible, to the largest extent possible. And with that language, I think it's pretty clear that we can meet that.
Right.
So, you know, it's not going to be perfect all the time, but I think what we're doing here is setting up an impossible standard that we're never going to be able to meet. And anyway, that's my worry, but I just wanted to kind of point out that I think we've gone beyond what's required.
Okay, any other questions on this?
Hi.
Ms. Jessie.
I just want to remind the board that we're, that we are surging with this COVID. And I think that, you know, I've gotten emails from a few people saying, "Let's not promote fear." But I think, you know, we need to be cautious and respond to what we see once these kids get in school. And I think we may find that we can change in a way where we can have more kids in school, but I think we need to be cautious, because right now, we're in a surge, and you can see that in Prince William County. And thank you for the presentation, Mrs. Polk.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. I just want to point out, Ms. Jessie, as you point that out, that's really, that's critical and that's important. But remember, the pandemic is unfortunately not a passing season or a transient phenomenon. Whether we open now or a year later, cases and quarantines are inevitable and will happen, as Dr. Walts pointed out at the beginning of his discussion, that quarantining will be a possibility. And so, the most critical aspect of this entire effort we're doing is our ability to mitigate, because that's going to be the only thing we can control. And so, this is with us for years now. And as we pointed out in the Audit Committee earlier today, it may have been pointed out at some point during the high school presentation, we need a plan for next fall. You know, do we do a virtual school and a virtual set of teachers? Do we do, and that's running independent? Do we have live people coming in with live teachers? And so, as we strategically look at the future, we must recognize that this is not a transient phenomenon. We're going to have continuous surging, and we're going to have to move on. And whether we open today, or tomorrow, or next month, this is something we're going to have to deal with and succeed at. And I think that's important to remember.
I agree with you, Dr. Latif, but some of this is going to require some physical plant kinds of considerations. And I think we need to plan to get all of our kids back. I'm not saying that we don't plan to get them all back, but at this point, there, some of these mitigation strategies will require additional physical plant considerations and investments. And I think we always, always plan to get our kids back, but I don't think that we should be so anxious to get them back, that, I think I'd rather err on the side of caution. But at the same time, I want all these kids back in school, because what we talked about earlier, about these kids dropping from A to F, is real. Is real. You know, we talk about best practices. Best practices, lecturing to kids, talking to kids, is the worst teaching strategy ever, and we're forced to sometimes because of the methods. Some people are better at doing project-based learning and interactive kinds of things, but it's a real difficult task. So, I don't want the audience to think that I don't want kids back in school, because I want them back in school, but I want them safely. But when we plan, we're going to have to plan for some real physical plant kinds of things. Woodbridge High School has absolutely no windows. I told someone, I'm not sure COVID could live in Woodbridge High School, because it's so dark, and we have no windows in that place. So, there are lots of things that need to be done, but I think we need to be safe for our kids and safe for our students. But at the same time, I understand what these parents are talking about. I understand, and I understand it's real. Thank you.
Ms. Argarpur.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I'll be really quick. On Slide 3, it talks about the CDC thresholds for core indicators. And, you know, I've had to kind of stop and think about this a little bit, in that there's two green colors, there's a dark green and a lighter green, and the lighter green says, "Implemented all five strategies correctly but inconsistently." And I would say, at this point, the only thing that's going to be inconsistent is probably the distancing, and that's it. That's, everything else is done. And so, I don't think we're, I don't think that's a bad thing. I think that's what we're supposed to be doing. Also, this CDC thing is telling us how to get back in school, not how to stay out of school. There's nothing on here, even when it says highest risk. If we're implementing zero strategies, we should not be in the building at the highest risk levels. But we can still implement all five strategies, even if we've got higher COVID numbers in our community. And I think the statistics are holding up at the moment, I don't think anything's changed, if someone can inform me, that the rates of infections are lower inside the schools because the mitigations are so good and so necessary. So, I, this is where, my brain isn't worried on this level. I've said before, tell me when I really need to worry about something. If we can, everybody's wearing a mask, everybody's washing their hands, everybody's keeping their distance as best as possible, we're doing our contact tracing, and, you know, we're getting better at staying home when we're sick, right? I think this is, this is showing us the possibilities. So, my two cents.
Thank you, Ms. Argarpur, and that, you know, just did, echoes sort of what I think it's really important Ms. Wall brought up about, it's not a mandatory six feet, right? It's to the best of our possibility we can do. And I think that's also important. So, as we circle those five, I mean, I think we really need to look at, look at that and see where we are, and continue to try to do the best we can. So, I appreciate all your work and everything you guys all have done. This is, you know, again, a first for all of us, and absolutely really challenging and tough to do. But I, I think, you know, as we point out, this is something we're going to have to do, and Ms. Jessie, you're right, we have to get back to in-person. And, you know, at this point, you know, our schedule is such that it'll be one month short of a year, you know, of these kids getting back in person. So, I think we have been cautious. I think the Division is doing everything they can to try to mitigate. We've received a lot of monies to work on this mitigation, and these are the things we can control, we just unfortunately can't control the virus. And Ms. Argarpur points out, and I think it's really important, because, Dr. Walts, you bring this up many times, I think, what did you say at the beginning? We have 130 cases so far in the school division? What was it? What was the number? Was that what you said? Was it 130 or something?
It was 130.
Yeah, 130 since the beginning of school. But if you, if you use the criteria of incidents per 100,000, because we have about 100,000 people, a little more than that, if you include all our teachers and students, in the last two weeks, it might be 15 or 20, it might even be less than that. So, if you're looking at incidents per 100,000 within our school community, you're at 15. You're not at 180 or 200. So, that just tells you that, you know, the work that we're going to do is, and this has panned out nationwide, you know, schools have not been found to be sources of outbreaks on a regular basis, other than some anecdotal cases. Is Ms. Argarpur?
Right. The other thing I want to point out, too, is the language in which we use to speak about this is really important. I hear people talk about outbreaks all the time, but by the Department of Health standards, an outbreak is two unrelated people both getting COVID in the same spot. So, like, there's five people in my house, if I catch COVID and I give it to my family in my house, that's not an outbreak. If Dr. Latif and I both get COVID here, then that's considered an outbreak. Those are listed on the Virginia Department of Health website, they're tracked, and they're monitored. So, thus far, and you all can correct me if I'm wrong, but within Prince William County, even if we've had to quarantine a class, there has not been additional transmissions inside those classes. It's been the, somebody was positive, and then we quarantined, and nothing else happened of it, unless I've been misinformed. But I think it's really important to frame it and what things really are, and understand, like I said before, tell me when I need to panic. I can't, I can't worry about every moment being a potential, I don't know. I think we need to be really positive and figure out how to live with this, and when things change, we will, we will correct course. But right now, I feel like our language and how we discuss things is very, very important. Always being cautious, of course, always. I mean, we have to be, but also realistic, too. And understanding that the way we talk about the transmissions is also important.
I just want to add that, the way we talk about it, I think that when people are fearful, they shouldn't be made to feel like they're panicking. And I also think we need to be cautious in our view that because the kids are at home, and they're not, they're virtual, because one of the pieces of research out of Harvard on the 50/50 model is that when kids are in the four-day cycle, like they are in our vulnerable program, they're there every single day. But when you have the 50/50, where they're going to be home, that the community spread from home can come back into the school. I just think that we have to be cautious, and we have to do what we think is right for our kids and for our teachers, and to keep them safe. But at the same time, we don't panic, but we don't make people feel guilty. You know, I got a couple of emails saying, "You guys are just fearful, fearful, fearful." No, you're not. It's our responsibility, because the moment we put these teachers and kids in harm's way, we're going to pay for it. And I think every member of this board knows that. And I think each one of us has different points of view, but we're not all over the place. I think we all want kids to get back in school, we all want them to learn at high levels. And so, I commend every member of the board, and I accept every point of view. Thank you.
Okay, great. Dr. Walts, you can move on.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Polk. It's important to note that should multiple primary indicators or secondary indicators enter into the highest risk category, we may enter Phase 1 guidance, which is the most restrictive for allowing in-person teaching and learning. We will continue to review and share local health metrics on our COVID dashboard at www.pwcs.edu, and make any adjustments to our plans to return students to the school buildings if needed. At this time, I am not making any changes to our current plan to implement the 50% hybrid model as scheduled and voted on by the school board. PWCS will be conducting surveys beginning November 16. PWCS will be conducting surveys beginning November 16th to gather feedback from parents, students, and teachers about their experiences with virtual learning in the first quarter. These surveys will provide PWCS with information to further refine virtual and hybrid learning as needed moving forward. Many parents and guardians have asked to have an opportunity to update their selection for their student's preferred attendance method in the third quarter. As such, we will provide another opportunity from January 4th through January 8th to update their parent view selection if they want to make a change for their student to attend in-person or virtually in the third quarter, should health conditions permit us to open for the dates the school board approved at our last meeting. Only those who plan to make a change would need to go into parent view to do so. We continue to prepare for the return of our students to our school buildings. Thanks to the IT staff working hard every Sunday this month, the network upgrade is now complete. And the 100-gigabyte network is available to all schools. Headsets and webcams are being delivered this week to schools with priority to pre-K Day 3 and all other grades by November 12th. Additionally, the Division is expected to be fully one-to-one with computers a month earlier than planned and will be fully implemented by winter break barring some unforeseen circumstance. Also, some of our students are currently participating in out-of-season conditioning for sports, following several safety guidelines, including social distancing. Winter sports, including basketball, gymnastics, indoor track, swim, dive, and wrestling, are scheduled to begin as early as December 7th. And some student clubs have begun to meet as well. As with in-person learning, athletics and in-person activities may be adjusted based upon changing health guidance and/or pandemic health metrics. Thank you and stay safe and healthy.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. Fantastic. So we will, I think that wraps up the, all of our agenda items. We're up to Board Matters. I would ask the school board members, if they choose to do Board Matters, please keep to the time limit. We're getting very late here if you're going to choose to do them. Make sure the time's on. We'll start with Ms. Argarpur.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Over the past couple of weeks, I've been meeting with different groups of people, parents, students, who've been sharing their opinions and concerns. Also, teachers reach out all the time. So just trying to convey those concerns and issues that they have to the Division and make sure that they get their answers. I did get a chance to sit in on Yorkshire's. Earlier this week, they did a kindergarten back to the building presentation for their kindergarten parents. And I was able to see how hard they worked to make sure that the distancing was set up for the classrooms. They have everything that they need ready to go. And the parents seemed really excited. So I was grateful to be able to just sort of sit and listen in on that. And the last thing, making this real short, I'm really grateful that we had full board support on the, the calendar. The one group that we, we do have questions about is the Sikh community. I know a lot of us say Sikh, but I've been corrected before. It's the Sikh community. When I originally spoke with one of the members of the community, that he had indicated that their holy day, there's a couple that they can consider, but the one that's the biggest is for Guru Nanak. And he had told me that that day is on April, I think, the 14th, which is in that timeframe of spring break. And I just want to publicly say that if we need to look at the calendar again, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it for, for the next calendar time. But with this April date, it means that we, that you're, you're still able to get that time off. And I will just end with a number of ways to say peace. Sahitha, peace, shalom, salaam, namaste, unidad, uba. I don't think that came out right. Uba. Washi rika. I wish everyone peace and thank you so much. Huh? Oh, I hate that. Like what? Hallow, hallow. Everyone have a great night. Thank you so much.
Ending. Ms. Wall.
I don't have a lot to say. Just, I'm thankful that we could hear from the high school principals today. I'm thankful for the staff members who prepared a lot of slides for us today. A lot of hard work and extra effort went into that. I really appreciate all of the efforts for answering questions and staying up with us really late to help us. I know we're all on one big team. We all have a common goal. It doesn't seem like sometimes it, it, it is that way, but I know that it is. I know that it feels counterintuitive to be talking about opening schools when we have a surge in cases again. But, you know, and some say, well, shouldn't we be watching and responding to our local, local metrics in a, in a really careful way? And that's true, we should. Those are good questions. But I do wish to say that it is true. What we need to remember is that right now, schools don't appear to be the place where there is a lot of spread happening. With the efforts that we have in our schools, they're as good as hospitals. They're excellent. The materials and the cleaning, the distancing, everything else. I don't know if there's any better place to work than if you have to be in person than in, than in a Prince William County school. I feel very confident in that. I do feel that we have put resources and energy and time and planning and thinking into how to open our schools, understanding that the real concern is that as this goes on and on, we are going to have a more difficult time balancing the immediate safety concerns that we have right now with the much longer and greater educational concerns that we're going to create. So I understand the balancing act is very difficult and everybody solves it slightly differently. And in some cases, maybe very differently. But we just need to keep the long end goal in mind, which is students need support. They need teachers. They need to be educated. We need to figure out how to do this. This problem is going to be with us for a very long time. And in the meantime, children are growing up. When you're five years old, one year of your life is 20% of your life. It's not, it's not insignificant. And so I would just encourage everybody to keep working hard on this. Keep working together. Keep thinking strategically. Keep thinking about the future and put the students, you know, in that proper perspective, what they need and what our teachers need. I'm proud of our principals who came tonight. I'm proud of all the middle school principals and teachers and high school principals and teachers and elementary school principals and teachers and all of our central staff, everybody who's working so hard. I know it's been a heavy lift. I really appreciate the 14, 15-hour days, the seven-day weeks, the foregone vacations and everything else. I just want to say, you know, if we keep our focus on the students, I think we'll, we'll find our way through this.
Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I'll be very brief. I'm sure a lot of people had back-to-back late nights given last night. So exhausted, but I do want to thank our high school principals who came out and stayed very late tonight, having to get up quickly early tomorrow and get everything back going again with their schools. So I want to thank them for coming out tonight. I want to thank staff for preparing, as we mentioned, all the slides, the presentations tonight was a lot of information. But it's, you know, I think it's good to get it done at one time versus like three or four meetings a week. So I'm happy about that. And, you know, like I said, next week, we'll begin phasing in more kids to school. I think we've done a great job as a school division preparing for that with the proper safety and protocols and mitigation. I myself am a parent of a kindergartner. I have been supporting hybrid. I will, my wife and I have made the decision to send Jack to school starting next week because we personally feel in-person instruction is vital. So we will be going and sending my son to the school. And I want to thank everyone. People had made their choices and we will see. I think we will be having a very successful implementation as we had leading the way in the Division in the Northern Virginia area, bringing in our special needs and ELL learners first. So again, I want to thank all of our leaders, our elementary principals next week for that, starting that process with the kindergartner and pre-K students. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Ms. Jessie.
Thank you. I'm not going to take a great deal of time. I met with the Northern Virginia cohort, I guess we could call them, from V S B A. And we shared plans and we are doing great. It was a sharing of ideas. I think we all have a different slant. Everybody's concerned about safety. As a board, I don't think that we have a, someone said we're split on the board. We're not. We just have different ideas. I want to thank Dr. Walts and his staff for putting together all these presentations. I think it's time for us to leave them alone and let them do their job. These principals know better than we do how to run their schools. I, I go back to this old military thing that my husband says is not really an military quote, but I say that it is and that is respond to what you see on the ground. So I would suggest that after the kindergartners and preschoolers are in there for a while, that we bring in the elementary principals. But instead of talking about what we think is going to happen, let them get back and report what they are seeing, the good, the bad, and the ugly. I think we're going to find some good things happening. I also wanted, I'm not sure if I should tonight, just, Mr. Tim Snead is going to be my recommended parent on the Sustainability Council. He is a parent at Rockledge Elementary, very active in their PTA, but was extremely active at Kilby. He's new to Rockledge, but he's not new to schools and I welcome him. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Jackson.
Hey, thank you. These past few weeks have gone quickly. Thank you to Dr. Bishop for extending an invitation for me to listen in on his parent information session on Zoom. I spent some time at Piney Branch in Cedar Point yesterday. And I want to thank all the principals and staff who prepared the schools to be election sites. And also thank you to all those who continue to email me. Thank you to all the staff who started in-person instruction next week and those who've been in-person since the start of the year. And thank you to all the support staff, from bus drivers to food service to custodians, who've been working tirelessly. I know this budget season will present challenges, but I am very grateful for the slides presented today. On a note regarding inclusive practice, for someone who has hard of hearing and has a son who has hard of hearing, I want to thank all those who've worked so hard to consider accessibility, including the technology needs at our schools and here at the Kelly Center. This mass world is extremely hard to navigate for many of us and I'm very thankful. And lastly, the numbers continue to grow. Please wear your masks and practice social distancing. Our kids are watching. Let's show them that we prioritize their face-to-face instruction. As I said last week, we can plan, prepare, and strategize all we want. But in the end, we must come together as a community, listen to each other, and exercise selflessness. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'd like to thank Supervisor Franklin for standing up her Racial and Social Justice Committee. I'm excited for the school Division to participate in that. I'd also just like to, again, shout out Mr. and Mrs. Eckenrode, as well as their two sons, for all of the work that they're doing on creating the desks and having them distributed to our students, not only at Featherstone, but I'm also aware that they are reaching out. Other schools have reached out to them so that they can either get templates or have them assist in building desks for students. I can't express to you how proud it makes me to be a board member knowing that we have staff who go above and beyond, not just our teachers, but our administrators. Everyone plays a role in this school division. Again, I am also proud for Prince William County School's ability to lead the way and having our students return to buildings to learn. I know that we brought in our special education students a lot sooner than other divisions and the way we did so. I'm proud of our slow, methodical, and very well-thought-out approach to bringing students back into the building. And I, and I think it is wise when we're in the middle of a pandemic with something new, that we take our time and continue on the path of, of doing it in a slow way so that we can correct any errors or lead by example, however you'd like to look at it. I would like to re-emphasize that returning to students to the building is just that. They are learning now. Their teachers and our, and our staff are working really hard to continue to educate our students. And when they return to the building, they will be returning utilizing Canvas. It doesn't go away. It's not just seeing a teacher face-to-face. It's still use, use of technology that will still be present. And I think that often gets left out of the conversation and gives parents and people the, and the impression that they're going to go back to teaching the way that they were and that's just how it's going to be when they go back into the building. I know everyone doesn't think that way, but I think it's a very important thing to remind families that we will continue to use Canvas. We will continue to use the technology. And I think it's a wonderful thing. So with that, that's all I have to say. So I hope everyone has a good Thursday, since it's a Thursday now.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Again, echoing, thank you for the staff, for all the hard work. These are long meetings, but, you know, there are some school boards that meet daily. And we're fortunate not to do that. You know, we are, I think at some point, we're going to have to move from the word pandemic to endemic. Endemic means this is with us for a while. And there is no indication that this will disappear or some miracle will happen. The only thing that will happen is our ability to live with it, deal with it, and move on with it. And whether we get a vaccine or not, it's still going to be endemic and we're going to have to continue to take precautions. I, I urge the administration to start planning for next school year, how best we strategically plan to open schools if everything stays exactly the same. We can't continue to not open. And I think it's important for us to, to start that planning. And again, looking at other school divisions across the nation who have gone in, successfully gone in, looking at what we've done with our special ed has been incredibly successful. Absolute model for all of Northern Virginia. All of you, every single one of you working all these long hours, our administrators, our teachers, our Herculean effort the special ed teachers have done since September 8th has been absolutely incredible and deserves our utmost respect. And they are true heroes and I have, you know, and we need to celebrate that. And also celebrate your success as administrators for making that happen so safely. And I have no doubt you all are going to be able to do this with kindergarten, pre-K, first grade. And as we roll back into, you know, the buildings, it's going to be critical that we continue to do it the way we've done it. And I think the board is very proud of all the efforts that have been made, very optimistic about all of these things and, and really firmly believe that the most important, absolutely, through the pandemic, through an endemic, is our own ability to mitigate. We cannot control anything else. But as Ms. Wall points out, you know, there are very safe places in this country. And, you know, if you were to remove, you know, bars, restaurants, malls, and, you know, just based and looked at, you know, areas where schools were open, there hasn't been a source of outbreak or community transmission in a significant way with just schools. And so as we think about moving forward, you know, you know, I've urged state government officials to, to consider that, you know, like, you know, we, we need to be, you know, controlling our bars and restaurants more than, you know, we should be consider, you know, close those, but continue to push to open schools because that's really important. Because that is a priority. Our students' education is absolutely critical. So with that, I will, I thought I was going to just end tonight, but I've gone over time. The meeting is adjourned.
This October, get ready for exclusive young learner programming created by Prince William County School teachers for children in preschool through first grade. Tune in Monday through Friday at 6:00 a.m., noon, and 6:00 p.m. for educational programming to support our youngest learners during this unique school year. Discover PWCSTV on Comcast Channel 18, Verizon FiOS Channel 36, or at pwctv.com.